Okay, good evening, everyone. We are going to call our meeting to order and welcome you to our meeting this afternoon. We're gonna have a long meeting tonight, so everybody kind of hang in there. The first thing is our roll call by our city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The records shall reflect that all members are present.
Okay, if you'll all rise, we're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Please join me in honoring our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. And the next thing on our agenda is the approval of our agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
Okay, we did have a closed session today, so I'll let our city attorney, Darryl Piper, bring us out of the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council did meet in closed session on item CS1 on today's closed session agenda. No action was taken. There is nothing to be reported.
Okay. The next on our agenda is our consent calendar. The following recommendations or the recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. And any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk's secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. We have eight consent items this evening, C1 to C8. And so I don't see anything from the audience out here that has pulled anything. Is there anything from... Okay.
I'd like to pull C7, please.
C7, okay, C7. And, okay, Councilmember Green?
I'd like to pull C3, please.
And C3. Okay, I would entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar then? Okay, so move it in a second. Okay, please cast your votes. That passes unanimously. So then the next thing we'll do is we'll go to item C3 in the consent calendar, Tribute to Margarita Murrow at 110 South Citrus Avenue, and that is Councilmember...
And Mayor...
What?
Sorry.
You had something? Councilmember Green?
I apologize.
Apology accepted.
Yeah, that was me. And I was just hoping that we could get a presentation on exactly what's going on. Our Public Arts Committee does a whole lot of work in here, and just kind of wanted to point out what we were going to be adding to a building in the near future in our city. So take it away.
And Mayor and council with us, we have Theron Dykman, our Director of Recreation Services, and we have Emelda Huerta, our Management Analyst.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. In February, a public art proposal for a mural at 110 South Citrus Avenue was submitted to the Recreation and Community Services Department. A public notice was posted for February 22nd and March 27th, and no comments were received. The mural is by Daniel Toledo and is supposed to be painted on the side of the wall facing the alias seen on the slide. The Vista Village Business Association and surrounding businesses were notified of the mural by the applicant. No concerns were noted. The mural pays tribute to silent film star Margarita Fisher-Pollar, who owned the Ranch of Buena Vista Adobe. She and her husband, Harry Pollard, and MGM producer, owned the Adobe from 1931 to 1951. The artist will finalize the colors but will be using sepia tones and muted pastels. There is no direct fiscal impact associated with this recommendation. This concludes my report. I am available for any questions.
I just wanted to thank you so much for letting us know what you're doing and, you know, keeping a little bit of Vista history within our art. I like the diversity of art that we're displaying there in downtown Vista. So with that, that was my only question.
Would you make a motion to approve it?
Please, I move that we approve the item as displayed on the calendar.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is second. Cast your ballots in a second. That motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item C7, the Stormwater Trash Order Implementation Plan and Cost of Service Analysis Study Ward of a Contract. And so Councilmember Rigby has brought that up, wanted to pull that.
I actually would appreciate the staff report being read aloud, if we could.
Tonight, we have our city engineer, Greg Mayer, and our sanitation engineer, Elmer Alex, with us.
We're actually gonna have our stormwater manager do that for you, since he's most familiar. He's on crutches tonight, so...
Sorry. I'm so sorry.
He's carrying his notebook, too. Tricky.
(Inaudible)
(Next page, we... Read this.)
I'm John Nodich, the Stormwater Program Manager here at the City of Vista. I'm gonna read the statement of the subject for the agenda report this evening. A stormwater trash order implementation plan is needed to comply with Order Number R927-007. This is issued by the San Diego Regional Water Quality Control Board, otherwise known as the Regional Board. And this was issued on June 2, 2017. The order requires municipalities, including the City of Vista, to control trash from entering the storm drain system and surface waters, such as natural and channelized waterways. The plan must be submitted to the Regional Board by December 2, 2018, describing how the city will demonstrate compliance with the order. The plan will recommend locations for the installation of trash capture devices within the storm drain system and consider monitoring and maintenance requirements of the devices. Trash reduction activities will also be identified in the plan. These activities may, but not necessarily include enhanced street sweeping, anti-littering outreach programs, enhanced field inspections, revised municipal code and development standards, and organizing community cleanup events. Implementation of the plan will commence when the order is incorporated into the next municipal stormwater permit anticipated in the third quarter of fiscal year 2018-19. Developing a plan and conducting a cost of service analysis concurrently will be both cost efficient and time efficient. On March 2, 2018, staff issued a request for proposals, or an RFP, for preparation of the plan and concurrent completion of a cost of service analysis. The RFP was released and advertised on the city's website via the city clerk's office and the E-Bid Board. A non-mandatory pre-proposal meeting was held on March 12, 2018, and proposals were due on March 22, 2018.
I think that's a good point to stop at right there.
Yep.
I won't make you go through all the rest of the discussion on who the different respondents were and how the process was done to select one or will be done. I think it's important, and the reason I wanted to pull this from the calendar and have this read publicly was because what it does, what it is, it is an edict from the San Diego Regional Water Quality Control Board, which is one of the strictest control boards in the state, if you can imagine that. And what it does is it puts the burden on the city to make sure that the storm drains remain clean and free of any debris. And some of the debris that gets caught in these is inherent in our environment. You're looking at twigs, or leaves, or carcasses of critters, or something like that. But when we drive around our city, we see a lot of trash in our city. We see people in... I see people in apartments who are cleaning their cars out on the weekend and just leave their trash in the gutter, and they don't take their trash with them, or they throw trash out their car windows when they're driving down the street, and they don't take their trash with them. So these are some of the things that are getting caught in the storm drains and are eventually being sent out farther down and are affecting the watershed, which is one of the reasons that the Water Control Board has mandated this, is because we can't allow that to happen. So I think it's important for the community to know that this is coming at us from another governmental agency. It is going to increase costs in our community. But there are some of these things that we have control over not allowing to go into our stormwater drain. And one of the things in here was through organizing community cleanup events, and we do a lot of these in our community, anyway, through the local group, Only Losers Litter, through the I Love a Clean San Diego, that they come through regionally and do events. So I just want to encourage the community to step up and be vigilant. When you see trash lying about, please pick it up or ask whoever threw it to pick it up, and participate in some of these cleanups that we have, that we do frequently create cleanups. So I just wanted to have this out there publicly so that people can hear it and have a discussion on it. So I appreciate you coming down, and I am so sorry that you had to come on your crutches. And I'm hoping somebody can help get the books back up there so he doesn't have to do crutches and books.
Maybe they should just wheel him in his chair.
Right? So I want to say thank you for coming down here, and I apologize for how much trouble it was for you. But I think it's important that our... This was on the consent calendar, but I think it's important that the community hear what this is and what we're going to be doing, and how everybody in our community plays a part in this particular process. So with that, Madam Mayor, I will move that we approve C7.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, please cast your votes on that issue. That passes unanimously. That brings us now to our discussion items, or public hearings, actually, and there are three public hearings this evening. And just a reminder, I want to remind everyone that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. So no clapping, no yelling from the audience. You know, just behave yourself and be... We'll be nice to you if you be nice to us. So the ordinance was adopted to allow the public input and to facilitate city business without disruption of the meeting. Applause is appropriate for items listed on the presentation portion of the agenda only. This is also listed on the agenda cover sheet. So with that, we will go into our next public hearings. And our first public hearing is to receive testimony regarding planning case number P170203, The Quick and Clean Car Wash. And the public hearing is now open. And before we hear from the Community Development Engineering, I think Joe Green brought this forward, so maybe would you want to have something to say about it?
I know we have some speakers on the item as well. I did appeal this project. I feel that it's not the best use for the land and not customary, really, for that area. And it, with having 18 car washes already within the City of Vista, I think that we could find a better use for that particular land. So, yeah, I wanted to bring it in front of the council here, and hopefully some community members showed up to talk about it, and, you know, maybe as a council, we can, you know, review the plan that's before us and maybe make a decision to, you know, find a better use for this land that will benefit our community as opposed to plopping car wash number 19 in there. So with that said, I'll allow you to give your report. Thank you.
Okay, then I'm gonna turn it over to the Community Development and Engineering Director, John Conley, and he's gonna introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor and council. With me this evening is Michael Ressler, our Principal Planner. He was the planner who processed this application, and he'll be giving the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, the project before you tonight is an appeal of the Quick and Clean Car Wash Project. The application number is P17-0203. The subject site is addressed at 1350 South Melrose Drive. The site is located on the east side of South Melrose Drive between Sunset Drive and Cannon Road. The site is 3.47 acres. It's one legal lot, and it's currently vacant land. The site has also been developed with a 1.16 acre graded buildable pad towards the center of the site. Surrounding land uses include residential to the north, agricultural to the east, a question center to the south, as well as vacant land to the west across South Melrose Drive. The general plan land use designation for the site is neighborhood commercial. Uses allowed within the neighborhood commercial designation would include commercial uses, banks, gas stations, as well as restaurants. The zoning for the site is C1, which is commercial. The C1 zoning designation permits uses, including commercial, retail, as well as restaurant uses. The proposal before you tonight includes a request for a special use permit inclusive of a site development plan, as well as a comprehensive sign program for the construction and operation of a quick and clean car wash. The proposal includes construction of a 6,229 square foot drive-through car wash facility, including landscape parking lot and site improvements. The proposed car wash will include complimentary vacuum facilities. Hours of operation would be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and the operations would require two employees on site. The submitted site plan indicates the 6,000 square foot building would be located along the setback along South Melrose Drive. Other site improvements include 41 vacuum stations, a remote pay station, as well as a centrally located vacuum enclosure. Access to the site would be provided by a new 40-foot wide driveway along South Melrose Drive to provide right-in and right-out access. Off-site improvements would include modifications to the existing median outside of the site in order to provide left-turn in but prohibit left turns out of the site. In terms of parking, the code requires 10 parking spaces for automated car wash facilities. The proposed site would provide a total of 41 spaces on site. In order to develop the site, the plans indicate construction of a series of retaining walls with a maximum height of 10 feet. All the retaining walls have been designed to be plantable walls. In regards to landscaping, the site has been designed to maintain 72% of the site dedicated to landscape improvements, which exceeds the 15% required by code. The submitted floor plan indicates the car wash building has been designed to maintain a 24-foot wide by 180-foot long car wash tunnel, as well as equipment room, two offices, and restroom facilities. Architecturally, the proposed building would be one-story, maximum height of 24 feet. The building has been designed to maintain a two-tone brown masonry block exterior enhanced with tower elements, metal canopies, trellises, as well as storefront windows. Here's an image depicting the proposed vacuum stations, as well as the associated canopies over the stations. Here's a perspective of the site looking south on Melrose Drive. And here's the same perspective incorporating the landscape improvements along South Melrose Here's a perspective of the site looking north on Melrose Drive. And here's the same perspective with the incorporation of the landscape improvements along the setback of South Melrose Drive. The project also includes a comprehensive sign program. The sign program includes individual channel lettered window or wall signs, excuse me, along the north, south, and west elevations. The program also includes a 10-foot-high ground sign located along the Melrose street frontage. Staff has reviewed the plans and visited the site and feels that the proposed use is consistent with the neighborhood commercial designation for the site. In regards to zoning, the project meets all requirements within the C1 zone. The project as conditioned is consistent with uses within the area, and staff feels adequate queuing and onsite circulation has been provided. An acoustic assessment report has been prepared by WJV Acoustics. A third-party review is also performed by Helix Environmental Planning. The conclusion of that document indicates the noise levels associated with the proposed projects are not expected to exceed the city's noise level standards at adjacent property lines based on zoning designations. This project went before the Planning Commission on April 3, 2018. At that time, the Planning Commission approved the project with three additional conditions, including additional enhancements to the west elevation of the car wash building. The vacuum station and associated canopies be painted a complementary color to the car wash building itself, and the final species of material spacing for the landscaping along the slope be reviewed and approved by city staff. An appeal was... Of the Planning Commission's decision was filed on April 3, 2018 by Councilmember Joe Green. With that, staff is recommending the City Council adopt a resolution granting a special use permit inclusive of a site development plan and a comprehensive sign program to construct and operate a car wash facility on the subject site. That concludes staff's report. The applicant is here to provide the City Council a presentation, as well as the acoustic engineer will follow the applicant with an additional presentation describing the acoustic report and the conclusions of that report. Staff is here to answer any questions you might have tonight as well. Thank you.
Okay, do you want to hear the applicant? Okay. Everybody?
Okay, then I'll call Michael Scarborough.
My name is Mike Scarborough with 3K1 Consulting, 11811 North Tatum Boulevard in Phoenix. I'm here this evening discussing the Quick and Clean Car Wash on Melrose, near the intersection of Sunset. As discussed in staff's report, we... Well, I guess let's step back for a second. As part of the process, we did have an opportunity to meet with neighbors. And in our neighborhood meeting, we were able to meet with approximately 12 neighbors, plus or minus. During that neighborhood meeting, the majority of the issues that were expressed, and I see some familiar faces here this evening, a few of the issues that were addressed at that meeting were noise, light, traffic, the things that we run into on almost every commercial project that I work on. I don't work exclusively on car washes, but I do a fair amount of them. And at that meeting, we committed to the neighbors that we would work on some hedging and some landscaping in order to visually change the way that the site would look from the surrounding neighborhood, especially those to the northeast, east, and southeast. In addition, we indicated to them that we would work on a noise study in order to reduce and/or mitigate any issues from noise. And then in regards to traffic, the driveway that's there is existing today. It's gonna be slightly modified, but we are gonna be utilizing that drive that exists today, and then also making some improvements out on the median. So stepping all the way back in the early stages of the process, we met with the neighbors. We listened to what they had to say in terms of issues that they had, and we implemented those into the plan. And in fact, those same issues and conditions carried forward through staff's recommendation to Planning Commission and Planning Commission's ultimate approval. Since Planning Commission's approval, we've made some additional modifications and provisions on the site plan that we think will help mitigate or further mitigate some issues and concerns. One of those being, there was a concern raised regarding traffic on northbound Melrose and whether or not that traffic would have an adequate ability to turn right into the site, given the speed of traffic on Melrose. So we've opened up that drive and flared it a little bit in order to allow for passengers coming on northbound Melrose to make that turn at a little bit greater speed than they would have otherwise been able to, just to help further along their ability to pull onto the site. One of the other issues we heard in discussions since Planning Commission was that the exit end of the tunnel, the driveway, used to come straight out to the prop, out to the and intersect the entrance drive. We've pushed that towards the northeast. That again was done in an effort to make sure that that gave adequate room for any car that may be coming on site, for a full car to be on, full car or two to be on site before a car was trying to exit. It really forced that driver to make sure they took a look at what they were doing versus just pulling into the drive. Now bear in mind, the site plan as originally presented was fully vetted and reviewed and approved by your traffic engineering group and your planning group, and there were no issues. But we've made these provisions in order to help further mitigate some issues we've heard along the way. One of the other items that we heard in regards to the site plan specifically was, you guys have an incredible amount of vacuum opportunities on your site. And my goodness, how loud is all these vacuums gonna be? The sound consultant, Mr. Van Grogan, will be in here in just a few minutes, but he will describe to you that the primary noise generator on a car wash site, the noise generator on a car wash site, is the blowers at the end of the tunnel. We understand that the vacuums are many, and we also understand that the vacuum enclosure was originally proposed to be just four-sided, three sides of masonry with steel gates. Having met with members of the community, members of staff, and listened to some of the other concerns, one of the ways that we can help further mitigate, although at a small level, but still mitigate the noise issue, because the primary noise is the vacuum blowers, is to fully enclose that vacuum enclosure. So the vacuum enclosure will be fully enclosed, roofed, and basically inside of a building. So the noise that's generated from the vacuum producers would be limited, if at all, from public. One of the questions we've heard regarding the site again is the number of vacuum opportunities just in general. Why so many? The reason we have so many vacuum positions on the site is because customers like the ability to know that they can get in and get out. The fewer the vacuum stations are, and you've probably seen this at some of the other facilities, if not in Vista, outside of Vista, that when you have limited number of opportunities for vacuum, customers tend to stack up on site waiting for a vacuum position to open. And it actually ends up really making the site congested and not operate at its best capacity. By having ample opportunity and room for customers to pull in and pull out and know that they don't have to wait, it actually helps circulation on site, and it gives the customer also the ability to sit there for a few more minutes than normal and do that final touching and detailing of the vehicle that they'd like to complete without feeling rushed because someone's standing behind them in their car saying, "Let's move In regards to the landscape plan, as staff indicated, one of the comments that was heard at Planning Commission was, "I love how much landscaping you're providing. It's amazing. I'm really, really concerned about whether or not it's viable at maturity. You have so many trees that you're planting on site on that slope that at some point those trees are gonna eat up each other, and they're just not gonna be viable. I would much prefer you to put together a plan that meets the intent of the landscape ordinance, but really gives the ability and viability of those trees to flourish and be forever trees." And so what we've done on this plan is we've updated the base plan with some of the changes we had just previously discussed site plan-wise, but also reduced the number of trees, but then also brought in the hedging that would be present on the north, northeast, east, and southeast portion of the site. The hedging's intended to be at installation somewhere in the 42 to 48-inch tall type height scenario, and those would probably grow up and be maintained somewhere in the six-foot to eight-foot range. But if you're at the lower part of the canyon looking up at that site, the site would essentially be not visible because of the grade change and then because of the verticalness of the hedging that we're doing around the specific site, the visibility of the site would be very, very minimal, if at all. The other thing we did was, in that our project already connects, would already be connecting the sidewalk on the north side of the property all the way to the south side of the property where there is not currently sidewalk today, part of the conditions of approvals that we would be doing those improvements. We also went ahead and upsized the trees along that sidewalk in order to provide a more pedestrian-friendly shaded walking environment as you're going up Melrose. Again, not required by code, but something we heard as we were discussing the project in the community and thought that that would be a nice thing to bring forward. The previous perspectives provided a site plan, or I'm sorry, perspective, that showed the new plantings we were gonna do from a tree standpoint, but really didn't illustrate the ground cover that we were intending to have out there. So we updated the building perspective to show that we are gonna have green ground cover along the slopes on the Melrose side as it wraps around to the south and the southeast, the whole project. But visually, from the main thoroughfare, I wanted to provide you with an updated building exhibit that showed the green ground cover. If you recall, in the one in staff's presentation, you still saw, as it exists today, the dirt with the storm erosion control. with the storm erosion control facilities on it. One of, again, trying to hit on the issues we've heard from residents previously, this isn't really a viable location. It's not a project we'd like to see with residential nearby. We've heard that before. We've addressed that issue before. We've developed in those areas before, in some cases where we are 10 feet from residential, in other cases where we are nearly as far away from residential as we are at this location. So just some examples. Again, the, and the, this has a pointer. This is the car wash facility. This is residential. This is a project in Phoenix that we completed. Car wash facility, residential. In fact, this guy's pool is right in line with the car wash tunnel. Car wash facility, residential. Car wash facility, residential. Car wash facility, residential. This is probably more similar to the situation we have here in Vista in terms of some spacing from residential, but bear in mind, we have residential right here across the street. Car wash, residential. Car wash, multifamily. Now, I don't show this to you because I'm just trying to illustrate that we have developed new residential, which it's clear that we have. What I'm also presenting to you is that in none of those situations, in any of those cases, do we have any level of violation from the cities in which we operated in. We don't have issues from the neighbors. We don't have issues from city staff or planning coming out and saying that we've got noise issues, we've got light issues, we've got hours of operation issues. We have been a fantastic operator, and we've been successful in situations that are significantly closer to residential than this project is in here in Vista. In terms of the drying system, and I don't want to jump on Walter's toes here, but I'm going to, it's going to be a little bit out of sync in terms of how the information's presented to you, but the information he'll present to you is that the original drying system we had proposed meets all of the requirements from a sound study standpoint for the city of Vista. It also meets it from the county's perspective. And not only was it reviewed, not only was it generated by our sound expert, the city was making sure that the sound study was done in accordance with their requirements and asked that we fund a third party to review it that the city chose. The city chose a third-party reviewer. We paid that third-party reviewer to do the, or we paid the city who paid the third-party reviewer. Either way, the third-party reviewer reviewed the sound study. The sound study was deemed appropriate and acceptable. So you've got two sound engineers, one I hired, one the city hired, and the city's environmental staff, all having reviewed the sound study stating that it meets all the requirements and that there should be no, I'll let him use the technical terms, but the noise is not an issue. However, again, trying to be proactive and work through some of the issues that we have been presented, one way that we can mitigate that is to go to a different drying system. The drying system that we would propose would be a ProtoVest. ProtoVest is a design air dryer that runs at considerably lower decibels, decibel levels than the one we had already proposed and had been approved in the sound study. So not only do we have a perfectly acceptable situation from a technical standpoint, because I'm sure you're going to hear from members of the community, it doesn't matter, it's not what I want, but not only do we have it a perfectly acceptable situation from a sound study standpoint, we've gone a step further and significantly decreased the noise generator on the site by leaps and bounds by implementing the system. And we're willing to have that, we would prefer to have that stepped as a part of With that, John, can I pause mine and let Walter come in? I'm happy to answer any questions at this point, but we'd like to have our sound experts come up and give you some information as well, if that's appropriate.
Okay. Maybe have questions of him before he does that?
Nope, see, none? Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we're going to talk about the noise study. We're going to go over the applicable standards, go through the process of how we determine what the standards are, determination of the existing ambient noise levels in the project area, and go over how we demonstrate a compliance. As Michael indicated, the original sound study, which was submitted February, was based upon a dryer system that is louder than what they are now proposed. So this presentation will initially discuss the findings of the original acoustical analysis and then talk a little bit at the end about the modifications to the proposed plan with the changer in the dryer system. And then we'll go from there if there are any questions. So here we have the project site plan, as we've all seen before, showing where the cars will pull in, they will circle around and come through the tunnel. The dryer, you know, north is to the left here, so the dryer is within the northern portion of the tunnel. Here we have the project vicinity, picture of the surrounding residential area. So the first question that needs to be answered are, what are the standards that apply to the project? The applicable standards are provided in the city of Vista municipal code for the zone property that was within the city or the San Diego County standards. So the standards are all based upon zoning designations. So with that, you must first determine what is the zone designation of the subject property, and also what are the zoning designation of the adjacent parcels? So the subject property is zone commercial, as both Michael Ressler and Michael Scarborough had discussed. The other nearby parcels, you have a commercially zoned property across Melrose Drive, you have residential zone properties to the north, and you have city agriculturally zoned properties, which are also ag-residential, to the west, as well as some county zoned properties that are to the east of the project site. Okay, so one thing to point out here, the city, the standards that are in the city of Vista's municipal code were taken directly from the county of San Diego's noise standards. So the standards are one and the same. And so we must, we're also going to focus on, the standards are broken up into daytime versus nighttime standards. So we have, daytime is considered 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., nighttime, 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Since the proposed hours of operation are 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., we really only need to look at the daytime standards. The daytime standards for the commercially zoned property are 60 decibels. For the agriculture and residential zoned property, they're 50 decibels. One thing to point out here is, as I go through this presentation, and we talked about decibel levels, what we're really talking about is what's called an hourly LEQ, which is an energy equivalent level, which is essentially, what's the average noise levels over any given hour? The municipal code states that the sound level limit at a location on a boundary between two zones is the arithmetic mean of the two respective limits for the two zones. So in this particular situation, we have the project site, which is a commercially zone, so the standard that it would apply there is a 60-decibel standard. The adjacent properties, both agriculture and residentially zoned, are 50. Those are the daytime standards. So therefore, the applicable standard at these boundary property lines would be a 55-decibel hourly average standard. So the municipal code, and again, I'm going to reiterate that when I say municipal code, I'm not only referring to the city of Vista's standards, but the county standards, since we have county zoned properties to the east, they're one and the same. This language that we're going over that is applicable is in, found in both the city of Vista's municipal code as well as the county standards. So the code states that if the measured ambient noise level exceeds the applicable limit, the allowable one-hour average sound level shall be the one-hour average ambient noise level plus three decibels. So what this is, it's pretty clear what it says, but if the noise level in the project area or at the property lines already exceeds what the standards state, then the standards are then to be raised to that existing level plus three decibels. So what is the existing ambient noise level? We know that the project site is on Melrose Drive, which is one of the busiest streets within the city of Vista. So it has relatively elevated existing ambient noise levels due to traffic noise exposure. Here are some of the existing ambient noise levels based upon an extensive ambient noise level survey that was done over the course of several days, just kind of giving you a rough indication of what the noise levels are. Additionally, since the original noise study was done, we did go back and take some additional ambient noise measurements to document what the noise levels are on some of the county zoned properties. So the pointer, a noise level, ambient noise level measurement was taken at this location at the end of Naval, and the noise level there was approximately 53 decibels. Another ambient noise level measurement was taken at this location on Naval, and the ambient noise level there was 49 decibels. And then a third county zoned measurement was taken at that location at the end of Fern, and the noise levels were 52 decibels. So then the question is, how loud will the car wash be at the adjacent property lines? And to go over, how did we determine what the car wash noise levels were at these property lines? We're going to go over, as Michael mentioned, that when you're looking at car wash noise levels, the dryers, the blower dryers at the exit really are what drive the noise levels. The other components inside the car wash do make some localized noise. They are typically, is much less noise. It's enclosed within the enclosure. When we're analyzing car wash noise levels, you look at the blowers, because that's the thing that dominates the car wash noise levels. Last thing we'll talk about is how vacuum technology has come a long way. So we're going to talk about the equipment inside the tunnel versus the equipment outside the tunnel. As I just mentioned, the noise sources inside the tunnel, the dryer noise is the car wash tunnel noise. Another thing that, when we do this analysis, my point here is that during peak hours of operation, the dryer may stay on constantly. So, you know, we're looking at an hourly average noise level. I wouldn't argue, for the sake of trying to demonstrate compliance, well, we're only expecting three cars through per hour, and thus we're going to manipulate the average like this. When we're demonstrating compliance, we're going to assume that the car wash dryers are on constantly. That is unlikely to be the case, but it possibly could at any situation. You know, maybe a Saturday, sunny Saturday, you have a constant line of cars coming through, so the dryer more or less will stay in operation. So we approach the analysis by assuming that the dryers are always on. How did we come up with the noise levels? We measured the noise at an existing facility that used the exact same blower. Again, this is all based upon the original blower system that was proposed, and we reviewed manufacturer-supplied noise level data. So the original acoustical analysis submitted in February was based on a PECO wash 15-horsepower dryer system. One thing to keep in mind is those dryers are set back within the tunnel, so while they are still loud or are audible, especially straight ahead, the tunnel walls typically provide substantial shielding to noise-sensitive receivers. And the noise levels were modeled based upon the noise levels that we determined from measuring at an existing facility and looking at the manufacturer-supplied data, the distance from the dryers to the receivers, and the amount of shielding provided by the tunnel. So, again, these noise levels were determined based upon the previously proposed blower. And I'll kind of go through this quickly because really, we changed this, so, but I'm just demonstrating that the original blower system did comply with the standards. As Michael mentioned, it was reviewed by the third-party Helix Environmental, and they came up with the same conclusions, that the dryer noise level would be approximately 59 decibels at the residentially zoned property north of the site, about approximately 59 decibels at the agriculturally zoned property, and 61 decibels at the undeveloped commercially zoned property west across from Melrose. As Michael mentioned, they have proposed a new dryer system, just to further reduce any potentials for noise concerns. The proposed ProtoVest dryer system with silencer, noise levels associated with this equipment are 19 decibels less than the dryers that we analyzed for the acoustical analysis. So again, 19 decibels less than the dryers that we demonstrated met the city's noise standards. Noise levels would be significantly lower than noise level standards and significantly lower than the existing ambient noise levels. So I want to put the 19-decibels reduction into perspective. For a lot of people here, I'm sure, you know, what is 19-decibels? What does that even mean? A couple points to kind of put this into perspective. At a distance of 20 feet, the new proposed dryer will essentially be the same noise level that the previously proposed dryer system would have been at a distance of 200 feet. The standard dryer system, like the PECO system that was originally proposed, is six times louder than the new proposed dryer system. So let's talk about the equipment outside the tunnel. I know at the planning commission meeting back in April, there was a lot of discussion from residents of the concern of the vacuums. It was one of the topics that continued to come up, was that vacuums are loud, and how could you have this many vacuums? So we'll talk about the vacuum noise level. One thing to really keep in mind is, this is not your older coin-op car wash vacuum. So on the left here, you see an image of what I think a lot of people think of when they historically think of what a car wash vacuum is. You know, you go to those coin-op ones and you throw in 75 cents, and it's extremely loud. On the right is a picture of the system that is being proposed for this project. The noise-producing equipment is centrally located, and the acoustical analysis demonstrated that even if it was not enclosed at all, it would still comply with the city standards. But the applicant has proposed to fully enclose that. So the noise levels associated with the vacuums, you really don't even hear it outside of a few feet away from the hoses. The modeled noise level at the various property lines, again, this was without considering the enclosure, was 38 to 46 decibels. The enclosure would reduce noise levels by a minimum of 15 decibels, and vacuum noise levels would not be audible off-site of the subject property at all. And keep in mind, existing ambient noise levels play a big part in that. So then the final question here is, with the new dryer system, what would the noise levels be at the adjacent property lines? Here you see a diagram showing what the noise levels would be. Again, this assumes that the dryers are on constantly. These are what the noise levels were modeled to be at these various points on adjacent property lines. And let's take another look at the existing ambient noise levels in the project area. So you can get a quick comparison of what is the noise level now, and what is the noise levels associated with the dryer system. You can see that the existing ambient noise level at all the locations is significantly higher. Therefore, the project would not exceed any applicable city of Vista or San Diego County noise standards, and would not result in an increase in noise over existing ambient noise levels in the project vicinity. That said, I could answer any questions anybody may have.
Questions sound here? Do you have one?
I just have one question for him. I have other things I want to say, but, so my understanding is, to double sound, it's 10 dBs, right? And or to half would be minus 10 dBs?
10 decibels is generally perceived 10 decibels is generally perceived by a human ear as a doubling of distance. Correct. So to go from, the change in 20 would essentially be having it and having it. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Green.
So it looked like, from your last slide, and maybe I'm confused, but it looked like what you were saying is that with a car wash, it's going to be 20 decibels quieter than without the car wash?
No.
Was that...
No, no, no.
You were going back and forth between the two, so...
Sorry for the confusion.
Okay.
So when we look at this slide, this is what are the noise levels that would be produced by the car wash by itself?
Without the ambient noise included?
There was no noise at all.
Okay.
And then this slide shows what is the existing ambient noise. When you take two noise levels that are greater than 10 decibels apart, and you add them together, there is no change in the higher-decibel noise level. So if I have 50 decibels, and I add 40 to it, the total is 50.4, or thereabouts. So adding a noise level of, say, 40 to a noise level of 63 will not increase the noise level of 63 at all.
So the surrounding neighbors won't hear your car wash at all?
So I would never say that they will never hear it. There's an important understanding in the difference between ever hearing it. It's possible that you could stand outside and hear some feature of the car wash at any given time, but when we're talking about the LEQ, the average hourly total of noise, because the existing ambient noise levels are what they are, the project noise levels would not increase that from a measurable perspective.
And you would think that since the vacuums are all enclosed, if the people have their cars inside there, the noise from the cars and the patrons, you know, say they're blasting their music on a Saturday morning, vacuuming or cleaning the car out, it's going to be sheltered by the enclosures, per se? Or is that not factored into your noise?
Yeah, I mean, those are variables that I really can't analyze.
Can't factor, can't account for?
I mean, somebody could be doing that, driving up Melrose, too.
Of course. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions of him? Okay. That's the last question. Do you want to speak, or do you want to hear the speakers now? Speakers? Okay. Hold them. Get them here. Okay, so I'm going to call the speakers, and what I'll do is I'll call one, I'll call two, or actually, two and three, and then if you'll line up over here, it'd be great. And then remember, you'll show courtesy, and we'll appreciate that. And so we will start with Claudia Falk, followed by Tanya Freeman, followed by Dexter Freeman. And for the record, if you'll state your name and address when you come up to the speaker, to this microphone.
My name is Claudia Falk, and I live on Fern Place, 1357 Fern Place. And I'm in the little valley to the east, I guess, of the car wash, proposed car wash. And I've lived on this street for 31 years, so I've seen a lot of changes. When Melrose went through, obviously, the noise level increased quite a bit. And now that it goes all the way through, we do get a lot of traffic in there, and I, you know, I'd always hoped they would put trees or something to muffle some of the noise. And I really appreciate Joe Green for bringing this back up again. Obviously, like I said, I've lived there a long time. It's a very peaceful little valley. I love waking up in the morning and hearing birds and things, so of course, I am concerned about the noise level. I'm not sure when they took the noise ratings for, maybe during the busy times, when, you know, people are like between 6:00 and 8:00, when people are going down Melrose, and 3:00 and 5:00, or whatever, in the evening, which it does, the sound volume really goes up then, but other times it's pretty peaceful and quiet, so I can see there'd be a fluctuation. And I really appreciate that they did do all these tests and stuff, but I was concerned when this was considered consistent with the current commercial uses in that area, as there's really nothing in that area yet, so it kind of makes me wonder what's coming. And then, is there anything that you can do to mitigate the noise level if it does exceed what volume you're, you know, the levels that are acceptable? And the other question I had was, is there any research done into noise flow patterns? Because due to the, you know, the buildings and the tunnels and things, which ways are the noises really going to aim out, you know, more one direction than the other? So I was wondering what kind of impact it would have in the area. And I realize it's a very awkward parcel there. We watched the dirt added, and it's a very small shape, and I appreciate the fact that you want to put something commercial in there. We're just concerned that that might not be the best project for the area. Thanks.
Thank you. Tanya Freeman, followed by Dexter Freeman, followed by Darren Weaver.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Tanya Freeman, and I live at 1228 Naval Place. Thank you for the honor of letting me speak before you tonight. If this car wash were proposed in an appropriate part of town with no impact to the surrounding area, I'd be comfortably at home right now, tucking my kids in bed. But to summarize, this project is incompatible with the area and inappropriate. I want to reiterate that this project should never have made it this far. I'm sure you've seen my email. Developers should have done their homework to see what they were proposing with their business and the impact that would have. And government documents are both easily accessible and transparent. The county general plan outlines noise and nature-sensitive areas associated with a proposed site. The area above is shaped like a bowl. Noise does not dissipate, it echoes. The general plan outlines noise restrictions and building requirements, as you've already heard. The city planners should never have signed an exemption to this plan that clearly did not apply. In multiple documents submitted to the neighbors, it cited CEQA Guideline 15332 In-Fill Development Project. However, this project did not meet those requirements. Section A says the project has to be consistent with the applicable general plan designations and all applicable general plan policies, as well as applicable zoning designations and regulations. Approval of this project would not result in any significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. One thing that wasn't mentioned during this meeting was the fact that we have concern about runoff to the neighbor and to the neighboring creek that feeds Lake Calavera, which is a nature preserve. The car wash plan clearly violates the City of Vista's general plan and County of San Diego's. The general plan, because it is riddled with traffic, noise, public safety, and environmental issues. Furthermore, North County general plan outlines the importance of preserving the area adjacent to the project, which this project would not do. The City of Vista's general plan policy, LUCI Policy Number 3.3, requires visual and acoustic buffering between non-residential and residential land use, which includes sound walls, which is not part of this plan. The project is adjacent to properties who, by nature, are outdoors. We cannot pack up our orchards and merely bring them inside when it gets noisy. According to OSHA and the CDC, it clearly outlines the danger of repetitive noise at lower levels to nearby workers, workers that you would find in the surrounding equestrian center, nurseries, orchards, including mine and farms.
I need you to wrap up.
Sure. There is no noise mitigation with this plan, and I urge you today to do the right thing and reject this project. It is not a good fit for our area, and ultimately, everybody in the area would suffer, and we're just trying to benefit Vista.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Dexter Freeman, followed by Darren Weaver, followed by Kim Cameron. If you state your name and your address, please.
Good evening, Vista City Council. My name is Dexter Freeman. I am 10 years old. I live at 1228 Naval Place, Vista, California. My first time doing public speaking, I spoke before the planning commission about this car wash project. I asked them how much noise 41 vacuum cleaners make, and I got no answer. If this car wash is open seven days a week, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., I won't get to sleep in anymore. When I've moved here, I moved to a nice, quiet place where I could play outside and relax. If you pass this, you will take this all away from me. And Vista already has 17 car washes, not including at gas stations and dealerships. And even then, a typical gas station self-service car wash has only two vacuums. Now imagine waking up to the sound of 41 vacuum cleaners. Sound travels in this area. Before you say that they won't get used, let me ask, why would you plan to build 41 vacuum cleaners if you don't think all of them will be used? The car wash noise would be a nuisance. A nuisance is an unlawful interference with the use and enjoyment of land or an act, condition, or thing that is illegal because it interferes with the rights of the public generally. Also, at any time, cars could line up at Melrose waiting to get in. This will block traffic. Melrose is a 45 mile-per-hour road. Having cars turning left to the car wash without a light is dangerous. Someone could get hit. This is a safety issue. Let's talk about the location and proximity to the creek. I have had this scholastic news handed out. Turn to page three of it, which is already on the cover. Look at the, I, look at the heading "Pollution on a Stick." The top-right popsicle is made from polluted creek water. If the soap and car fluid runs off into the creek, it will be the same. It will get polluted. Even worse, this creek lets out to a nature preserve. Do you really want to do that to our environment? In summary, this project would cause safety, traffic, noise, and environmental issues. That would bring more problems to the community than any benefit that it would provide. Thank you for your time.
Nice job. Well said. Darren Weaver, followed by Kim Cameron, followed by Victoria Beenan.
My name is Derek Weaver. I live at 1285 Naval Place. We are probably the closest property to this project. Just as a side note, I do karaoke at their brewery once a week, and I'm more nervous doing this, following two professional public speakers.
You could sing it.
Yeah. Not well. The one thing that I took note of, as I listened to the project planner talking about all the different accommodations that they're having to make for this project, if you have to make that many different accommodations, the project doesn't belong there. We moved into our house about eight years ago. We had a nice row of palm trees that segregated our side, our west side of the yard, from Melrose. The road noise was there, but visually, we had trees. San Diego Gas and Electric decided that no trees could exist near power lines, and they took all 16 of our palm trees down. So we have no coverage to a mountain of dirt that is essentially like looking at the top of that wall, which makes no sense at all, because the low point of Melrose is actually straight across eye level from our backyard. We cannot escape this car wash, no matter what they plan around it. And we're not the only ones that are in this bucket. We have some other residents here that live at eye level from it, from across the valley. So unless they can grow 200-foot-tall trees in their backyard, nothing's going to be able to obstruct that from their view. And our area has horses, we have hawks that live in the trees, it's very much an outdoorsy, natural area, and I'm just fearful we're going to allow a project to go in that will never be able to be reversed, when there's plenty of other land elsewhere in Vista. Perfect for a car wash. How many of our residents are here?
You have to talk to us.
I'm sorry. Well, then I would ask, how many residents are here that are opposing this? And this is only a fraction of who lives in the valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Cameron, followed by Victoria Beenan, followed by Lori Spalding.
Hi, my name's Kim Cameron. I live at 1470 Fern Place, Vista. And I live southeast of the property, and my house is on a hill, so it's basically level to that, but we have the equestrian center below us. So all that sound travels. I've lived in my house for 45 years. I never complained when Melrose went through. I never complained when Aegis went in, literally six feet away. And I was, I'm for the storage container thing that's going to be built on the other side, because it's going to be at least quiet. I mean, anything but a car wash right there. I don't, I don't want to wake up every morning at 7:00 a.m. hearing that and hearing it all, all day. And sure, they say there's no noise, but if you Google "car washes near homes," there's issues, even though you have all the reports and all the decimals. So you could put in a 24-hour drive-through fast-food place, and I wouldn't complain. You could put in, you could knock that heel down, and on the additional adjacent parcels that are all for sale, you've got 15 acres, you could do affordable housing. I don't mind that, but just not a car wash. It's a horrible spot for it. So I know there has to be development, and it's all got to grow, and I'm fine with it, but not a car wash. And I, and when we went to the developers' meeting, I begged not for a car wash. I mean, we all did, so that's just me. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if they do, if you have to do a car wash, can there be the noise wall? Because that would be nice, if we had, if we got stuck with it. I mean, if some of you have to vote yes, can we mandate a wall? Because it's just, I mean, if they want to impose on the neighborhood with a louder business, then they should be generous enough to put up a noise wall.
Thank you, Kim. Thanks, Kim. Victoria Beenan, followed by Lori Spalding, followed by, it looks like Douglas Beenan, but he doesn't want to speak, but he's in opposition, so I'll just put him aside, and then after Laura will be Michael O'Dear. Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, state your name and your address, please.
I'm Victoria Beenan, and we live up on Sunset, 1147, not really near the car wash, but we do walk down Naval and Fern, and it's a lovely, nice, quiet area. I had some questions that I didn't feel like were addressed particularly. What time of the day were there noise studies done? Were they done at peak rush hour, or were they done in, you know, weekends, or were they done in the morning, in the evening? I'm assuming they did it at peak noise hours, and I believe one of the other women brought that up. They didn't say when they did it, so you might want to ask them. What day or month was it done? Was it done, you know, in the midweek? Was it done on Christmas vacation, or was it done when school is in, down at Rancho? All of those things changed the noise level. Is there an example that they could give us of what that noise sounds like? Like you're right next to the vacuum cleaner for, you know, an hour, or what like that? And I couldn't tell from their picture which way the tunnel went that's drying the cars off. Where's the exit where most of the fans are going to be? Is it up on the north end of the property? Is it on the south end? Okay, so they come in from the south, and they drive out on the north. Okay. And as far as traffic, the apartments down the way, I think they're the wind drift or on one side of the street. Oh, Shadow Ridge Heights, there's accidents there all the time, with people trying to come out and turn left, and other people from the other side trying to turn. So you really should look at that. There's, there's accidents there all the time. So it was the hour, the ambient noise, the plants that they're putting in, the trees and all, they look really wonderful on paper. Who is responsible for maintaining them and making sure that they don't die? What type of plants are they? Are they going to benefit our native wildlife? And that valley is just chock-full of native wildlife around there. Are they going to be native plants? Are they going to be dead plants? Because if the property owner doesn't take care of them, because they're not really here, and we only have two employees on the property, who's maintaining the grounds? Example of the noise tunnel. Oh, what other ideas did you have for the property versus a car wash? The fact that there's only two employees there, I don't know, for jobs in Vista, I would think you would want something that had more noise and yellow, right? And it doesn't really fit the neighborhood. How about a nice nursery? You could have an exotic plants nursery there.
I need you to wrap up.
I think that was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Laura Spalding, followed by Michael, it's like Thiceard, and followed by Caroline Thiceard.
Hi, my name's Laura Spalding. I live at 1476 Fern Place, which is the equestrian center on the map. My family's lived there for close to 40 years, and we, as Kim, my neighbor, said before, there's several areas in this area that are for sale, and there's something that would, there's got to be something that would be much better for this neighborhood with all those, that somebody could plant something that was more appropriate to the neighborhood. A car wash just doesn't seem to be yet. When I... When I spoke to the planning commission, I mentioned that I was concerned about the runoff with, if we have heavy rains or after that, what's that landscaping on the side of the hill going to be like? Because I'm like, right below it. And anything running off is going to come right in, right on top of me. And I too have a question about when the noise studies were done. Because I don't believe, the one point he said was like right at the top of my driveway, was 52 decibels. And I don't think my, my driveway is that loud, except for at the high peak hours during the day. Normally, it's very quiet. So, those are the questions I have. And again, I just want to say, a car wash, anything else, we'd be fine. But a car wash, this doesn't fit. There's, there are drive-through car washes, there's one on Sycamore and Melrose, there's one on Buena Vista and Melrose, there's one on Hacienda and Melrose, all of those at gas stations. If it were me, and I was going to get my car washed at a drive-through, I'd definitely go someplace where I could get gas. I just don't see this being right for the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, followed by Caroline.
Hi.
State your name.
I'm Michael Thieserd, and I live at 1465 Fern Place, which is right at the end of Fern. It basically has a bird's eye view of that lot. And I agree with Councilman Green that there, there should be a better use for that area. We can argue about noise and so on, you know, I, you don't know when they took the data, you know, was it, what time of day? Did they take it over 24 hours or a week? You know, how do they really determine what those noise levels were? I don't know. So you could probably play games with those and say whatever you want. But specifically, I just did a quick internet search on quick and clean, and in Scottsdale, I had, I got this off the Better Business Bureau in Scottsdale, and they have a D-minus rating, because they did not respond to any complaints to the Better Business Bureau about that business. So, you know, who do you want there? That's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Caroline?
I'm his wife. I live at the same address, 1465 Fern Place. My name is Caroline Thieserd. And, you know, all this stuff has been talked about, so I'm just going to speak personally. We moved to that neighborhood because it was so quiet, because it has a rural feel. I understand, again, as Kim said, that, you know, progress happens. I don't think that a car wash fits. I think there are other businesses that possibly could provide more jobs, that would be more suited to a residential neighborhood. When that, you know, we assumed nothing would go in there when we moved in, because the way, there was nothing along Melrose, there were no lots. So we were really surprised when we started hearing the beep, 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 beep of that lot being graded. And we've kind of followed the progress to see what's happening. We weren't able to make the meetings, or we would have been there. But that was incessant noise. My husband built a pizza oven from scratch in our backyard and a patio, and we were not able to use it the entire time that that lot was being graded. Because the way that it is with that hill being up above and us being down below, the sound just shoots directly into our household. We had to leave our windows closed that entire summer, and still, it was grating. You know, it was painful. So, it's really sad to me that the house that we thought we'd retire in, we might not be able to stay. And it, you know, it might not be worth much after all this. The blowers are my main concern. I did also some research. I have some articles here from a particular car wash in San Luis Obispo, where 50 neighbors complained, neighbors who were right next door. I don't think it matters in terms of decibel level. I think when you hear a blower, you hear a blower, even if there's already, you know, traffic noise. It's an, it's another noise. It's not a normal noise to the neighborhood. So, and then my other question would be about the landscaping on the backside of the hill. You know, what that's going to look like if there were fewer trees. And again, if there could be a wall put up for noise, you know, maybe that would be okay. But I just, personally, I'd rather just not see the project at all. I, you know, we were graded, you know, our, our neighborhood was one acre minimum agricultural. And it's just sad, so. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. That's the end of our speakers, so we'll go back to our council. And we'll start with Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody that came out for the meeting. I mean, it's, definitely got all your emails, letters, and we're definitely listening. And, you know, someone mentioned something about the changes that were made. I mean, to me, that is a positive thing, because that means that the developer is listening, and your input is making some changes. So, I think that's a good, good thing. This is how democracy is supposed to work. My opinion is that we, as a governing body, really shouldn't be in the business of deciding how many businesses of a certain type should be allowed in a city, unless there's, you know, outstanding reasons, such as, you know, it's a liquor store or something like that. I mean, I think there's health reasons for, for certain businesses that we have to limit. But for a business like this, it isn't creating any, any of those issues. And the market should decide how many is too many. And I'm assuming this business, since it's a large business, large national business, or at least regional business, they've probably done their homework and know that this is probably going to work. Back in December, we all seemed to think it was a pretty good idea. On December 13th, this was approved 5-0. So I know that this is coming up, because we are, again, listening to our neighbors, and we want to be good neighbors to the county. And I think that's why we made these, the developer go through all of this testing and make the changes, you know? As they showed us earlier, the original product met our requirements, but at the same time, they went ahead and agreed to spend extra money, because I understand it's a more expensive system to have the quieter dryer. I did some of my own research, and, because I didn't quite understand the DB system, because it's kind of confusing, it's a, it's logarithmic and all that, so. And I had not, hadn't been to college in a long time, so. But the 10 dB is, is a significant drop, it's double, and they're, they're claiming 19 decibels. So that's, that's a really large drop. And I grew up in Vista, so I know what Melrose was like. I remember when it was a dead end, and I remember riding motorcycles and horses out there in that area. So I know we've seen a lot of changes. And it makes me sad, too. You know, I mean, I, like I said, I've been here all my life, and, you know, it's, it's, it is progress, but sometimes progress is change that we don't want to see. I do appreciate the fact that the developer is going to extend the sidewalk. Again, another thing that we asked them to do, so this is going to be a good addition to the city, rather than just doing the sidewalk in front of their business. They're going to, they've agreed to extend the sidewalk so that it connects all the way through. And I know the water runoff is something that was a concern of people's, and that's going to be, that's addressed by state law and our, our city ordinances. But I think to point out something, because someone mentioned something, I think that's, that's important, you know, I said, well, what if we do all this, and it's still like loud, right? So, I'm asking a question, but I believe on the conditions of approval on page 20, it does say something about if we, we determine that it is louder than expected before their actual approval is done, right? Basically, we could require them to, to run tests before it actually gets approved, right?
Yeah, so in situations like this, where we have a land use that may generate some noise, and we have a report that substantiates it, we will test it or have it tested at the time of opening to confirm that it meets what was projected in the noise report. Under a use permit, we can modify an operator's conditions really at any time to make sure that it is compatible with the neighboring properties.
Could we make that condition, because this was asked? If, for some reason, it can't be modified, you know, by adjustments that they're making or what have you, and is still not satisfactory, that a wall is required at that point?
That's within the purview of the city council.
If that's going to actually reduce the sound, the noise? You know, at this point, you know, like I said, none of us like change. I, I live on the other side of the freeway, and it's very rural where I live. I live on half acre, but, you know, recently, we had to approve a sewer annexation right across the valley from me. And so I know that that's going to be something coming soon to, as a neighbor as well. So I definitely understand the plight that you're in. But that's all I have for, right now.
Councilmember Franklin.
Thank you. Councilman Aguilera, Deputy Mayor, I agree that we should require a verification of the decibel output at the property line, once the installation is complete. And I don't want to spell out which particular mitigation measure should be required to solve the problem, but I think it should be the developer's burden to mitigate until the project produces less, the, the amount that's approved or less. So I would agree with that. I really, I want to also join you in saying thank you to all of those who came tonight to share their opinions about the project. The concern was raised about stormwater runoff, as well as runoff from the wash activities We're going to have an impermeable surface at the top of this pad. Are we satisfied that the runoff from that impermeable surface is going to be captured and correctly detained on site?
Yeah, so the, the project design has two sort of drainage systems. One is the car wash system itself, which recycles all the water within the system, so you don't have soapy water going down the drain. All the site drainage goes into detention basins on the site that are surface basins that capture all the water and treat it, and then let it out slowly, so that it doesn't exceed what the current drainage level is from an undeveloped site. That's what the state law mandates. They provided a technical report that details all those calculations as part of their application, and it's been checked by the staff. So, we're comfortable with the engineering design meeting the state's requirements, and that the stormwater will be addressed, and won't be greater than it is today, nor will it be more polluted than it is today, based on the engineering design.
So we don't have reason to believe that there will be an erosion issue with the grade on the, the slope on the?
There's erosion control in place today. They'll have to include additional erosion control, along with the installation of landscaping. That's subject to a one-year maintenance period that the city monitors, and then, of course, it's subject to the maintenance of the applicant under the use permit. We can revisit that at any time.
Our, we, we have a landscape agreement as part of the development plan here, right?
That's correct.
In perpetuity, that will require the developer, the owner of the property, even if it's transferred, to maintain irrigation of the plantings, and to also maintain them in a satisfactory condition?
Per the plan that's in your attached packet, correct.
So if a future owner of the property was to allow the plantings to die, what actions would the city take?
Code enforcement would approach the property owner and indicate that they need to replace those plantings, or they would be fined. If that didn't occur, then we could pursue legal action against the owner under the use permit, or reopen the use permit.
Okay. And what kind of legal remedies exist if there is runoff that's, either pollutes or wasn't properly designed to capture?
We have the ability to find the owner under our code, and we also have the ability to notify the state regional board, who's a much more powerful enforcement mechanism.
Did the project meet all of the California Environmental Quality SEQA provisions that govern this kind of a project?
The infill exemption was used based on the fact that the project is zoned commercial, so it is consistent with our general plan. There were no indications from the technical reports of any significant impacts from traffic, noise, air quality, et cetera. So, there may be some impacts from the project, but they're not considered significant, and that's what allows us to utilize the exemption.
And there was also a question that was asked several times about the time of the day of the noise study. Would you mind coming and addressing those concerns?
So, ambient noise level measurements were conducted over the course of a few different days. Originally, the, for 63 decibel at this property line, that noise level measurement was conducted over the period of 24 hours. So we have, and this is all in the original acoustical analysis, we have 24 hours worth of noise level measurements there. So...
Is that a peak noise, or is that an average?
It's an average for every individual hour. So it's broken up within, in every hour, as required by the standards of, of the city and the county.
So it's not based on peak volume?
Well, if you look at the hours that have the peak traffic volumes, you will see some slight verification, so, or variation. So one thing to keep in mind is that a doubling of noise, or essentially the same as doubling of traffic, only results in a 3-decibel change in noise level. Over the course, so when I, when we look at the 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM noise level, the hourly average over that, the period of time that the car wash would be open, this site only had a low of 61.7 at the hour of 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and a high of 64.4. So really, there's only about a 2, 2.5 decibel fluctuation. So, and all of the noise level measurements were done midweek. Midweek is when you have your higher traffic volumes. The other sites that were, we would call short-term noise level measurements, those were done on a, so, those were done on a Tuesday. And we did two noise measurements at each location, one in the morning hours and one in the evening hours. So, we couldn't possibly be at each location during the exact rush hour, just the nature of doing it. So I'm the one that did the noise level measurements. So I started at 7:50 AM, and I went through sites 1 through 11, and then I came back for the afternoon ones at 2:30 PM, and finished my last evening one at 6:20 PM. So, I, I think it's pretty indicative of what the noise levels would be even at peak hours. So those numbers you see up there represent an average of the two. For, when you look at the two noise level measurements that were done in the AM versus the PM, there's typically maybe a 1, 1.5 decibel, sometimes less than 1 decibel difference between the two. And again, this is all in the acoustical analysis that was submitted for review, if you would imagine you have access to it. So, yeah, we don't, we don't try to hide anything. Nothing was done on a Sunday while nobody's at work. This, I don't work on weekends either, so, I mean, this, these were all done midweek to document what is existing ambient noise levels.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You know, I would just point out that with the significant scrutiny that this project has received, obviously, I've taken time to meet with both folks who are proponents of the project and those who are against it. And I have been impressed that the developer of this project has been willing to make significant... of this project has been willing to make significant changes to accommodate the concerns and to remediate for the concerns that have been raised. I've heard a number of concerns here. I hear the concern about the sound, and that's a legitimate concern, and we've obviously had significant discussion about it. I think there, there has been some generous obertures to reduce the sound output, and I think we have a, we have a system with approving a special use permit to enforce the projections that have been, have been made in their compliance with the maximum sound at the property lines. I think the issue of the water runoff, being more familiar than I was four years ago with these issues, it's probably the most strictly regulated part of building anything in California, is controlling the water, particularly any kind of polluted water. So unlike the streams in Taipei, we've made significant efforts to prevent pollution, and I think this project is compliant with all of those requirements. I certainly know that the car wash that I use frequently at the intersection of Sycamore and Shatter Ridge, the water is recycled and used on-site, smells pretty awful, but that's one of the small concessions we make for a better environment, so I'm happy to do that. Although I was apprised during this that there's some failure to treat the water properly at that location, that might be the reason for the smell, so hopefully, it's not a part of every car wash, which I know it's not. There's some other backstory to this project, which I think is really important for us to consider here. To begin with, we've been praised, rightfully so, for our design review process. We've asked folks to come to us at the beginning of these processes for design and seek our approval. That did happen about, what was it, 18 months ago roughly?
The land sale came before you for review in December of 2016.
So it wasn't a design review that we did, but we, we had the land sale issue.
That's correct.
And we agreed to enter escrow in an agreement to sell the land.
That's correct.
To the car wash at that time. And I, one of the concerns I have here is, you know, I'm, no one's in love with a car wash. I like to get my car washed, you know, but it's not a work of art, never has been or ever will be, but it is a service that we all utilize. At the end of the day, it's not my business as a councilman, as I agree with the way Councilman Aguilar put it, it's not my job as a councilman to decide what kind of a business, unless it violates the moral standards that we've established or public safety standards. It's not my job to tell you whether you can build a gas station or a car wash, or as long as it complies with the zoning. And this is a project that's completely in compliance with the zoning on this site. But we've, we've allowed a businessperson to invest significant sums of time and energy, and also, the city has invested significant sum of time and energy on something that we've had much longer than 12 months to understand, and we, we gave a go-ahead on it. At this late point, to be the kind of city that pulls the wool out from underneath somebody, pulls the rug out from underneath them at the 11th hour, doesn't, doesn't sit right with me that we're doing the right thing to be a city that's good to do business with. I, you know, part of my personal ethos in life is be a man of your word, and I want the city to be a city of its word. That's not the only consideration here, but it is an important consideration. Another very important consideration is the fact that we approved a budget that considered the revenue from the sale of this property, $1.2 million, as a capital improvement funding mechanism for improvements that are currently underway at Paseo Santa Fe. We literally, what is it, a $1.1 million obligation, $1.2 million? So we, every dime of this revenue is already spent on approval of this council. If we change our minds for some reason, then we've got a $1.2 million problem. And I, for one, don't view it as an emergency that we change our mind, and so I wouldn't be in favor of spending emergency reserve dollars, and there really is no other way to come up with $1.2 million. We just don't have that kind of discretionary money available to us here at the city, so it's going to create a financial car wreck if we change our minds here, because we've, we've literally already obligated and spent the money. We're just waiting for the transactions to all-clear. So, that said, I understand there's, there's a desire to see something else, but I think we've got somebody who has been willing to work with us, and I want to thank Councilman Green, because a lot of these improvements to the project, had you not brought this back to us, might not have occurred. We've really made some significant project, progress working with the developer because of this opportunity tonight, and we have seen some really significant offerings, like completion of about 100 feet of sidewalk that wouldn't otherwise be complete, which is an improvement that we don't have funds to, to complete ourselves. So, that's, that's where I'm at. I would really appreciate the opportunity to hear from all my colleagues on the project.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Conley, when we talk about LUCI, the acronym LUCI, can you tell us what the L-U-C-I stands for, please?
That's the Land Use and Community Identity Element of our general plan.
Land Use and Community Identity, thank you. The other question, just for edification, clarification, general knowledge for everyone, this is here before us, because they do request a special use permit for this operation. Can you, in very plain terms, explain why this wasn't allowed to just be built like other businesses might be, but why they have to have a special use permit?
Sure, we require special use permits for any type of land use that has potential to impact the surrounding neighborhood, and it's typically used as a tool to regulate the operation of those uses, to make sure that conditions are imposed, to make sure that it operates in a compatible manner.
Thank you. And I do appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and the speakers, and I appreciate the quick, quick and clean car wash people for their very thorough presentation, and all the information that you gave on the noise levels, which, in my perspective, isn't really all the issue that we have with this project. And I'm not a fan of limiting businesses, as my colleagues know, and I'm not saying I don't want another car wash in Vista, but we have to look at this location, and the reason that they're asking for a special use permit is because of the potential impact on this neighborhood. And this property and this business literally butts up right into residential area up against homes. And I don't care what you call anything on your noise abatement, you're going to hear this, you're going to hear this car wash, you're going to hear the noise from the car wash, and not just the vacuum cleaner blowers or the dryer blowers. You're going to hear the people, you're going to hear their radio going as they're doing their, as they're cleaning their car, as they do in the neighborhoods as well, at 7 o'clock in the morning every day. And, and that, that's a lot for a neighborhood to have to absorb. And so I'm not saying I don't want another car wash in Vista, I'm not saying we need to limit it, but there's a reason they're here asking permission to do this, and I don't think that this is the right place for that. This is a residential neighborhood, this is something that will potentially impact the neighborhood quite negatively, and once it's a done deal, what do you do going back? Just say, oh, never mind, we're going to rescind our special use permit, tear it all down, and off you go up the road. And, and I appreciate that the applicant brought in pictures of other areas where you've done this in neighborhoods, although I have to tell you, that was not germane at all, because we haven't heard from the people and what they felt the impact to their neighborhoods were. So, to me, your, your pictures really fell flat for me, but I appreciate that you were attempting to talk about how you fit into the neighborhoods. I think that we should, I'm, I'm all for holding out on this property until the right thing comes along, and I think that retail is coming back, there are other areas, other areas of industry that we might want to look at having here. I don't think this is the right project for this location. There are lots of other locations in Vista, if you find another location, I'd probably be supportive, but I am, I could not be more strongly opposed to this project than I am right now, because it does not fit in with this neighborhood. And when we talk about community identity, and we talk about the impact of the neighbors and the residents right there at the, at the line, that's who, who I, that's who I answer to. That's what we have to think about, is how does this project benefit our community? What is it doing to enhance this neighborhood? What, what positive impact is it going to have versus a negative impact? So I'm, I'm in opposition to this. Thank you for coming, thank you for the information you've provided, and I appreciate the time when we met last week that you provided, so, but I am not in favor of this project.
Councilmember Green.
I agree with every single word that my fellow councilmember, Amanda Rigby, just said. I think the biggest deal is exactly what Councilwoman Rigby said, is this project is incompatible with the area. Additionally, I think that there is a safety concern. I think that left turn cutting across Melrose there with no light, people are trying to slow down, hang a rye, somebody slows down behind them, like, we're going to create additional safety concerns because of that left turn going in there for this particular car wash. So number one, I think that it's completely incompatible. Now, I wanted to address something that the other councilmember said, is that we approved it on a 5-0 vote on 12/13/2016. I was elected in, on that day, actually, and sworn in, and this was an item that was on the consent calendar, and it was basically presented to me like, hey, car wash is going in on the consent calendar, we approve all those in one motion. My first meeting, you know, I blame it on ignorance, I apologize, I didn't catch it then. I'm assuming my other councilmember, Rigby, didn't pull it, because she probably didn't think she had any support for it, I'm not really sure why, but truth is, is that it was never brought before us, and I feel like it wasn't brought to where we said, hey, community, this is what we're doing, how do you feel about it? And we've had all these people here who've said they didn't support it, I haven't had anybody come up to me who supports this project. I'm out in this community all the time, I hit tons of different events all across town, I drive this area all the time, and I haven't spoken with one person who said, hey, you know what we really need is a car wash right here in that particular location. So for me, I adamantly oppose this project, I appealed this project, because I do think that it is our job to control the landscape of our community. I do think we only get one shot to get this right, and I think if we put a car wash in this location, we're getting it wrong. What ideas do I have for it? How about a nice restaurant? How about a retail center? You know, how about food? I mean, something other than a car wash. The whole thing of, hey, we have to have a special use permit because this is going to impact the area, yeah, it might fall in line with our general plan and our codes and stuff, but the special use permit scares the junk out of me, because, yes, there's going to be an impact, there's definitely going to be an impact, and to say it's 60-decibel levels all day, every day, and you're not going to hear this when they turn it on, Dexter says he sleeps in on Saturday mornings, all right? And Saturday and Sunday mornings at 7:00 AM, when they're playing their music and, you know, doing their cars, you know, totally unacceptable. And I've been selling houses in this area for over 20 years, got my license in 1997. Yes, I own a real estate and mortgage company, I'm extremely proud of it. I've sold houses up and down Sunset Drive, Naples, Fern Drive, all through this community. I know the people that live there, and I was contacted by several people I've sold houses to in here and said, hey, what the heck, man? We don't want this in this particular location. So that's why I brought it forward. I listen. I'm elected so that I can make sure that the concerns of the citizens are heard. We're bringing it before your council right now. Whatever their vote is, is going to determine what happens. We can't control what the five members of this council vote, but we can show up, we can talk about our concerns, and we can decide, hey, you know, what can we do about it? So I do oppose it, and we'll see how the council votes, but that's why I oppose it. Hopefully, you guys understand why I appealed it. I do feel like we have the ability financially to recoup. If we based our entire budget off of one car wash, we are extremely irresponsible, and I don't think that we did. So thank you so much for your time, and if you're going to call for a vote, call for a vote.
Councilmember Franklin had something to say.
I'm, I'm open to a discussion about where we're going to come up with $1.2 million, but that is extremely germane to our action in front of us right now. We have a $1.2 million shortfall for an obligation that we have. I'm, I'm open if you want to have a discussion about it, but I can't vote to create a $1.2 million shortfall without knowing how we're going to address that.
Just, I think the developer wanted, did you want to speak again?
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we, we have a pretty strong portfolio, and maybe we can have our finance people come up and just say, hey, where would we get that money from? Do we have liquidatable assets in some type of bank account? We could pull it out. The other thing is, is this isn't money we're throwing away. We still own the property, we can still sell it, you know, they can decide to sell it. I mean, they, they can come with a, they can still buy it and, and build something else on it. I'm not saying we're just throwing this away, this is a commodity that we have, and it's our job to make sure that we get it right. So I'm not throwing it away, I might be postponing it for a little bit, and I think that we have some bridge funds somewhere in our $280 million portfolio that might be able to sustain us until this is rectified. I'm not our financial department, I'm not our financial analyst, I don't know what account it would come out of, but I guarantee that our, if we deny this project, our city's not going to shut down, and we will be able to find the money, and we will also be able to get it back and inevitably sell this, you know, or maybe they'll still buy it and put something else on it, you know, you never know, but I'm not saying I'm not selling the land, I'm saying I'm not putting this project on this lot. I will develop this lot, but I won't develop it with this particular project.
I think, did the developer, would you like to say something?
Mayor, members of council, thank you for letting me speak one more time here. I didn't mention earlier in the presentation, because I thought I'd have an opportunity to come back up, given, again, why I'm here right now, but we've been, we've, we've been told multiple times that there's no, there's no support for this project, there's nobody that wants us in Vista, that's just not the case. We have a petition here signed by 77 members of Vista, who have all said that they're urging city council to approve the car wash. So the concept that we've got members in the audience that aren't here in support of it, and we have council people who are...
Would you hand that to the clerk?
Absolutely.
Now, so we can look at it. Don't mean to cut you off, but...
But indicating that there is...
Why wasn't that presented prior to tonight's meeting? Why wasn't it in the agenda packet?
I just received it from my consultant, literally 3:00, 3:30 this afternoon. Also, in addition, we have a letter of support from the developer of the mini-storage immediately west of the property on the other side of Melrose, who's also in support of development on this property as a car wash and is looking forward to the investment and the future growth of Vista and the area. So I wanted to address the concept again, that there is absolutely no support for our project in Vista, that's absolutely not the case. We have, in a very short period of time, we're able to ascertain or receive 77 signatures of support. In addition, one of the comments that you folks have bounced around here this evening is, well, in the event that the sound is greater than what's advertised in our report, would we be willing to come back in and mitigate it? Obviously, I believe, obviously, the first answer is, I believe, we're obligated to. But the second issue is, we proposed or discussed the idea of a sound wall at the very initial neighborhood meeting, and what we heard from the residents at that point was, I would actually rather look at landscaping than I would at a wall. I'm already looking at a hill, I would rather look at landscaping, not a wall. So we discussed that early on in the process, and the discussion led towards the landscaping. If the discussion's leading back towards a wall or a future wall in the event that we don't meet the sound requirements, we're, we're open to that, it's something we discussed early on.
Can you do a wall with hedges on the, on the backside of it, so that from the back of the property, you see a hedge, and from the interior is the only view of the wall?
Absolutely. But again, it was, we're not opposed to it, it was something we discussed, and it just wasn't, it was more received to say, let's look at a landscaping option. look at a landscaping option. You know, what I envision is the Italian Cypress type. It's pretty. It's green. It's vertical. It's, it blocks visually, and so that's kind of mentally what I've had in my head when we were originally having those discussions, and that seemed to land a little bit better than a wall.
You know, and I heard you talk about reducing the number of trees so that some of the trees wouldn't overcrowd one another. One of the other things that we did talk about was that you were willing to put some larger plantings in so that they were more mature from day one, which I appreciate. I'd just like to see the landscaping designed in such a way that it's maximum, you know, preventage of sound leakage out of the property, so whatever is required for that. So, I'm hearing you say that you're willing to build a sound wall if that's what the neighbors want.
We're open to it. Again, it was originally discussed, and the concept of landscaping seemed to be better received, but yes, we would be open to doing that. Sound wall sounds a little bit overwhelming to me in terms of what that means when you say sound wall versus a perimeter wall. Is a sound wall in everyone's perspective something that's six feet tall, or is it something that's 10 feet tall? And do you really want a 10-foot-tall wall? It doesn't fit. So, are we willing to do some sort of solid wall, five, six feet tall with landscaping on both sides? Absolutely. If that's the direction council would want to go or the neighbors would like to go.
Well, I'm satisfied with the fact that the city has authority to come back and work with you once you've built the project. I think it makes total sense for us to come back and test the sound output. I think you've already made some significant, you know, changes to the project to remediate sound, so I, understanding you've heard concern from the community that didn't want to see a wall, I say, let's leave that as an option to remediate extra sound if it's required. But if it's not required, I wouldn't want to look at the wall either. I'd rather see just the landscaping.
Councilmember Rigby, did you want to talk again?
I just wanted to make note for the audience who did not get a chance to look at the signatures on the petition because it was not included with the agenda packet. All of the signatures on it, and I didn't count the signatures, but they all come from White Birch, Brookhaven Pass, Mountain Pass, Opal Ridge, which is on the very far side of Melrose over in Shadow Ridge. That is not a neighborhood that is directly impacted and up against this project. That's way down the road. So, I appreciate the petition, but still, I am looking at the people who are in this neighborhood who are going to be impacted by this. And I'm a little sad at my colleague talking about, we have to do this for the money. That is the worst place a government can be in, in a position like that, and we are not in that position. So, and when we start doing things and making decisions as a city council about the future of our city and the vision we have for the development and the growth, that is inevitable, but it still is up to us to decide how we grow our community. When we do that only by looking at the dollar signs of somebody coming into town, that is not the kind of council or the city that we are or that I want us to become. So, I don't look at that factor on this project at all. I still am looking at the fact that this already is an area, is a neighborhood that's been so negatively impacted over the years by so many things coming in with the high-density development, the destruction of a shopping center to make way for more high-density development. We're looking for something that's going to enhance this neighborhood and to bring some value and lift it up. And I have nothing against car washes. I use car wash. But that is not the use that we want for this location. We want to do something different here, and I am willing to hold out to find something different. And I just wanted people to know that contrary to what Councilwoman Franklin said, we're not in the dire straits that we have to sell this because it's all about the money. I don't believe that at all. So, I'm still adamantly opposed to this project.
Councilmember Green.
I was actually just gonna talk about the addresses that were on the petition as well, that they all are on the Brookhaven, Eastbrook, which is way down the road there by where Sycamore hits Melrose right there, kind of that little area right there on the border of almost Carlsbad, actually, that whole back area over there. The other thing is, yes, one of my chants that I harass my city manager with all the time is, people over profits, people over profits, people over profits. I work for people. I do want to make sure that we're fiscally responsible, which I've reviewed numbers. I'm a numbers guy, man. It's not magic, it's math, is one of my favorite things to say as well. And like Councilmember Rigby said, I think that this project isn't gonna bust us financially. I think we can recover from it, and I also think that we can find a better use for this land for our community, which is exactly what our job is, which, why this is in front of us right now, making the decision, because that is our job.
Councilmember Franklin.
Well, I can't say I'm happy about the motives that were imputed to my words, which were not my motives. I'm not, I'm not saying that we need to do this because it somehow benefits the city financially, but the fact is, we have been examining this decision for almost two years. I wish that this opposition had presented itself at the beginning of this project because we wouldn't find ourselves in the situation that we're in now. The reality is, we are in a bit of a financial situation where we are dependent upon these funds, and I invite either of my two colleagues who are opposed to the project to have a discussion with staff so that we can all participate in it right now about what our financial options are. But it's not the only consideration here. I am not in love with a car wash. I'd rather see some, I don't know what, but, you know, the other, the use, there was gonna be a Del Taco here or Starbucks, and at the end of the day, whatever we put there, it's one of the, this is the busiest arterial roadway in the city. The site does lend itself to a high-traffic business. That's who's gonna want to be attracted to buy this. Nobody wants to build a home there and turn off, you know, a street with, I don't know, 60,000 trips a day or something. I mean, or is it closer to 80,000, I think? It's irrelevant. The point is, it is a commercial property. It's zone commercial now. It's been zone commercial for a long time. I don't know what it is that's supposed to come along and be the perfect thing here other than perhaps, you know, there's just a desire to leave the land vacant, and I can't, I can't overcome that feeling from those who have it. But I apologize if ever in the past I've imputed a unsavory motive to any of anybody else's words, but, you know, in the House of Representatives, there's a rule against doing that, and I really appreciate it. You know, there is a financial consideration before us. There is, is a $1.2 million financial consideration, and to say it's not an issue and to not offer a solution or to even ask the staff that's here in the room, with the city manager, we got the, our finance director, if you want to have the conversation, offer the council another way to pay for our obligation. Let's have the conversation. I invited you to do that. Nobody took me up on it.
Let's not do that now.
Well, I mean, but we've got a $1.2 million shortfall for our capital improvement budget if we don't do this, so I just, I'm just asking, where's the money coming from? I understand we have $218 million, but, $280 million, excuse me, but it's all spoken for in different segregated funds. It's not money that we can break into and spend any time. It's legally impounded for different purposes. It's not all available to spend for this. So, have the conversation, don't have the conversation, but I have a hard time, A, breaking our word after we've worked on this project for so long, and B, believing that there's something that's gonna come along that's so much better. And I don't want to be an organization and a city that deals with people in a disingenuous way, and I think that's, you know, as an organization, which we are the head of, we will have been disingenuous with this businessperson and put him in a position where he's invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in this project that is gonna go up in smoke. I don't think that's the right thing to do. I just don't.
Let me just jump in here for a second, so, because I have, I've listened to all you guys talking, and it's hard to get in here. I see I have two more people that want to talk, but I feel, I feel like you do, Councilmember Franklin, that we had a pre-development meeting. They asked us if we would approve a car wash there. It was five to nothing. They went ahead and spent money to put this project forward, and so I believe that most of us actually met with the developers previously to look at the project and see. I think, I don't know if all of you did, but I did. I don't know if some of the other people, usually we have two. A lot of times, we'll have meetings with the developers, two, two-in-one meetings, two of us, two of us, so that we know, we see what's coming, and, you know, we ask for the sidewalk, we ask for some other improvements, and so, and we did on this. So, we've, it isn't like this is the first time we've seen it. We've been talking about this. So, I feel we gave our word to these people, put a lot of money into this, but I, and I, looking at that pad, I think, well, what else could go there that the neighbors would be happy with? I don't, for one thing, retail's not doing well. People order from Amazon. I know I do, but people, you know, retail stores right now are not doing well, so retail is probably not gonna go there. A restaurant, we had a restaurant in Starbucks that turned it down. Apparently, it wasn't a good, you know, a good fit for them. What might come in the future might be worse than, you know, and so, shopping center across the street that has the Starbucks in it now is struggles over there. It's like, there's a lot of vacancies over there. So, but I would say, I would like to put the wall in. I think that we should put that wall in, and that should be a thing, because I think that that would at least buffer that and then put some planting on the other side of the wall. So, I would like to, like, I, should I--
Is that a motion?
I would say I'd make a motion, but I look at all three of you guys that want to talk again. So, okay, so I'll make the motion, that we include the wall and approve the projects as recommended. So, then we'll go ahead. Okay, Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
I was gonna make the motion. I just want to, we got a lot of business to take care of this evening. I don't think certain minds are gonna be changed at this point, so let's, I'll second it.
Okay, Councilmember Green. Oh, you, I have, I'm gonna call, I'll call a recess if you guys talk. You can't talk from the audience. You have, this is, we have to use decorum here and respect. Councilmember Green.
Well, I don't know that what I would say again is gonna change any minds in particular. My question actually was gonna be for our finance director, Lauren. I know you guys don't want to sit here and listen anymore, but if the question for Councilmember Franklin that's holding him up from saying, hey, let's wait on this, is where are we getting the money from? It would be nice to know where and if we could get the money from somewhere to ease his concerns with that, because like myself and Councilwoman Rigby feel, there is money somewhere that could possibly bridge this, and if somebody could tell us, yes, there is, or no, there's not, and this is where it's from, or is that even possible?
I didn't make the decision on money, on based on money.
Well, that's what we were, that was the question that Councilman Franklin asked was--
Councilmember Franklin, do you want--
He would want to see where we would get the money.
Excuse me. Councilmember Franklin, is that something that's interesting to you?
I am not basing my decision solely on the financial consideration. It's also based on the years of investment in this project, and as, Mayor, you pointed out, we might have something that's not as good in the future. We may sell this property to somebody. The land that is on the other side of Melrose sat vacant, well, has sat vacant forever, but it's been for sale for 17 years, I think it was, and never was there a conforming use that came forward. We waited a long time. We have no idea what will happen. We need to sell this land to fund our CIP. So, we could sell it to somebody else, we could turn this project down tonight, and we could wind up with something even worse. We don't know. What we do have in hand tonight is something we've worked on for quite some time that we've given our word to be supportive of, and because we didn't have the concerns, concerns were brought forward by the community, and I think the process has worked because this business owner and operator has made substantial changes to his project based on our requests because of this review. We can't address every concern fully, but this is the, you know, the reality is, we all have neighbors, and they all have a right to the best and highest use of their land, and I understand we're in a different position here, but, I mean, I don't, I don't know that it's gonna sway me, but, I mean, it is a significant consideration here, but, no, at the end of the day, I don't know that it's gonna sway me, but I, but I think it's a significant part of the calculus, so.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to follow up on a comment that you made, I only met with the applicant last week, and when I asked why he hadn't approached council before, it was because he hadn't anticipated it would be appealed to the council, and he didn't think it was necessary to meet with us until it was appealed. So, this, when it, only after it was appealed was the first time that I saw all of the material on it. So, if you had other meetings with them prior to that, yay, but I did not. But the other thing I just want to say is, we hear a lot of talk about, this might not be what we want there, but we could end up with something worse. My position is, having a vision for your community is believing in something better, not expecting something worse, and I believe something better, something perfect can come for this property, and I'm willing to wait.
So, we close the public hearing again, and just one other thing is, the planning commission passed this project, you know, before he appealed it, and they all approved it so, also, so, anyway, so we're gonna call for the vote. That vote passes three to two. Do I, should I, um, recess? Go on to the next thing? You want to recess before we go on to the next item? You keep moving? Okay. Okay. Moving on. Our next public hearing is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding user fees for planning, engineering, and building, and fire services. So, the public hearing is now open, and Director Conley's gonna introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor and council. In the budget preparation in last fiscal year, we were directed to evaluate our user fees for community development and fire, and so we contracted with NBS.
That's what I was gonna call. We're just gonna wait a second until they clear out.
Madam Mayor, can we take that five-minute break?
Okay. Let's see. We'll take a five-minute break. That's what I was gonna do, because I figured they'd be-- Okay, we're ready to go back. Five minutes is up. We're going to turn it over to John Conley, and he's going to, Community Development and Engineering Director, and he's going to introduce this item again.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As part of our budget review last year, we were asked to evaluate our user fees, which are fees for service, primarily the public counter for planning, engineering, building, and fire prevention. And so we hired a consultant, NBS, Nicole Kissin, their director is here tonight, to provide the presentation on how the fee study was prepared and the results of that, and then I'll provide a little bit more input on the staff changes. I'm going to hand it over to Nicole.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Pleasure to be here this evening. I will take you through a very brief presentation on the, the project's purpose and scope and approach and so forth to the, to the fee report you have a copy of. Hold on a second, I'm having some difficulties with the, there we go. All right. So what a user fee study does is it, it really looks at the full cost recovery potential of individual-based services for which a fee is charged. The clicker is very slow. These are, these are cost recovery opportunities. They're implemented completely by City Council. They don't require any type of vote. And what we're not looking at here, I think it's important to clarify as we, as we go into this, is we're not looking at taxes, we're not looking at fines or penalties, and these are not development impact fees. These are really fees for plan review, inspection, regulation, requests for approval of a permit. They're called user fees or regulatory fees. We studied planning, engineering, building, and fire prevention, and I think it's also important to note that we studied the relationship between those departments as well as projects go through the development review process. And in fire, we studied sprinkler plan review and support to the building process. We did not study annual operational inspections of local businesses or state mandated inspections. We really focused on the sprinkler alarm, so forth permits. So really important with a fee study is that we comply with state laws and statutes that surround user fees. The methodology that we used to calculate the results you have in your report have been around in California for decades, 20 or 30 years. The methodology is very defensible. And the whole purpose of it is to produce the estimated and reasonable cost of providing services for each fee on the fee schedule, and then to open that up for cost recovery policy discussion and procedure, which is up to the City Council. The guidance that we're using comes from the State Constitution, Article 13(c), recently amended by Proposition 26. It really just defines the difference between a fee and a tax. And in order for a fee to be a fee and not a tax, it requires a cost basis, cannot exceed the estimated cost of providing service. And in particular, related to development fees, user fees, we also look at Government Code 66014, which also has that reasonable cost language in it, and it also talks about what types of costs can go into development-related user, user and regulatory fees. So, just skip through a bit. This is our process that we went through, the, the major steps in the process. We review the fee structure to see if there's any fee items on the list that are outdated or need to be updated, or could be more fairly structured. We look at fees that, that an agency may want to charge based on a deposit level versus a flat fee. There's, there's items specific to the way building fees are charged and so forth. So the first thing we do is we just sit down and we look at the list of fees. We work with several key data points, which are important. We work with the most recently adopted budget for operating costs and staffing. We do look at workload, a snapshot in time of how many of each item are processed. We talk with staff extensively about what the process is, the amount of time spent for each fee on the fee schedule. And then we also go through a process of comparing the outcomes to current fees versus full cost recovery versus the recommendations in front of you. When we talk about the estimated and reasonable and/or total cost of providing service, it's important to note what that, what that means in general in the industry. So we are looking again at 17, 18 adopted operating costs, salaries and benefits, services and supplies. And then there are some calculations related to identification of direct versus indirect types of cost, support costs that go between departments, and also technology needs and/or general plan update and maintenance needs. So that, that's really within this study what, what we've looked at in terms of what is the total cost of providing development review services. We look at, I already kind of went through that. We look at different types of time, direct time, indirect time. And one of the key components here is a fully burdened hourly rate. And we calculate that by department or division that we're studying, and that's a key component of how we, we calculate each individual fee for service. So the outcomes were, were pretty close together, planning at 149, engineering at 156, building at 158, and fire at 189, cost per hour. The, the time to complete, I talked about, we go through a process of understanding what is the service level provided for each fee in the fee list, multiplied by the hourly rate, equals the total cost of providing service. And from there, we make decisions about, do we want to charge that full cost of service or not? So this is, this is a summary of outcomes. This is a roll-up at the, the average annual outcome of the study. So what the study found was that currently there's approximately 2.5 million in fee revenue collected for planning, land development, engineering, building, and fire prevention, and nothing for routine maintenance and update of the general plan, as compared to 4.2 million in costs for those services. So if the city were, City Council were to adopt all fees in the list at 100% cost recovery levels, an additional 1.8 million or 1.76 million in costs would be recovered for providing those services, or a 58% current cost recovery level. Staff's brought forward some recommendations, which recommend about a 92% cost recovery level. That's about 1.4 million in additional costs recovered. Anytime we adopt a fee at lower than cost recovery, there's a lot of reasons why a council would want to do that. Obviously, the subsidy comes from, from other sources, most typically the general fund. And typically, some, some considerations about why to subsidize a fee, usually it would, it would be, is the request for which the fee is charged more of a public benefit in nature versus a private benefit, that would, that would drive the decision-making process. So the city's very in line already with, with routine review of fees. The best management practices that are out there are every five years, if there's significant changes in organization or economic environment more. I believe the, the city's fees are already increasing annually by CPI, and we're looking, we're looking for what the cost recovery policy is here for Vista. That's the end. I think you wanted to, John wanted to talk about some of the department-specific items.
So I just wanted to cover, there were a few items and areas that Nicole mentioned that we did not recommend 100% recovery. Those were primarily in an effort to either be business-friendly to businesses that are frequent permities, or smaller homeowners, property owners for single-family development. So just to cover a few of the changes here briefly, in the planning area, we added a few categories, particularly for things that we don't currently charge fees for. For example, the early design review that we take to the Planning Commission, or the preliminary reviews of zone changes and general plans that we bring to the council, so we will be charging fees for those. We're not recommending a full recovery for banner permits, which are business-related permits that they put up for special events. We had that at 25, we're slightly adjusting it to 35, but we're not going all the way to the recommended fee recovery. Also want to ask the council about temporary use permits. I had some discussions about the fee update with a few of you, and you mentioned some concerns about temporary use permits. These are permits for businesses or entities that want to have a private event on their own property and need to close off their parking lot for the day. The city allows you to have up to four of these per year. For a single event, right now, we charge $124. The recommended fee would go up to $373 for a single event, where we're offering the opportunity to get four permits at one time and pay a fee of $596. So those are fairly significant increase that would affect some businesses that frequently need to get those. These are typically for like parking lot sales and things like that. If the council's interested in leaving it at 124, we can do so. It's not a significant source of revenue, but it, yeah, it is an increase in fees. With respect to engineering, we added and modified a few categories just based on their permit processes and terminology for permitting. We reduced the recommended grading and inspection permits for single-family homes and accessory structures. In the building area, we added valuation tiers for larger, more complex buildings. We charge building permits based on building valuation, how much the building is worth at the time of construction or the estimate. Our valuation table only goes up to $1 million right now. We're seeing buildings that are exceeding that, and so we've added tiers for $5 and $10 million to get up to account for the complexity of those more expensive construction methods. We also have modified some of the miscellaneous flat fees in the building area for pools and spas, for patio carports, and for water heaters based on, those are frequently flown permits by single-family homeowners. And finally, in fire prevention, we added valuation tiers to reflect what we also did in the building division. And that completes our staff presentation, and we're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
We have one speaker. You want to hear a speaker first?
Michael McSweeney.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Michael McSweeney, Senior Public Policy Advisor of Friendly Neighborhood BIA. No surprise, I'm here to talk against a fee increase. And it's not because you haven't increased fees since 2002. I, I get it. But I couldn't come here and say, yes, we support this. I want to give kudos to your Development Services Director. I had some questions. He set up a conference call with Nicole and her associate. I still have a question. But what, what struck me, and you all know me because I've shared with you that my background before this position is I'm a general contractor. So I look at costs, and I noticed when I did the math that the overhead costs in some areas almost matches the cost of the service. So John runs the leanest shop in the city, and his administration is only 15 and a half percent. But I had a question, and if you could ask the consultant to reply. You know, you've got your division overhead, you have your city overhead. The city overhead for the engineering department is like two and a half times what it is for the others. I appreciate the fact that John, you know, gave me plenty of time to look over the study and set up the call. The one thing I would ask is, when these things happen, and we're going to add costs, because all these costs get passed on to the home buyer or the renter in higher home prices or rents, is, is there a way to figure out a way to offset these costs? So if, if the balloon has to bulge out over here, can we find a way to pull it in over there? And that would be my, that would be my ask, if there's a way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. McSweeney, for your comments. Always welcome to hear the BIA's position on things. But to actually answer your question, and I'm not going to get into the weeds of your actual question, but in looking at what we're changing here, we have actually eliminated a lot of fees and reduced others. So if you're looking at one side of the ledger sheet versus the other, I'm good with how we have reduced fees, because we did do the study to look at actual, our actual costs for doing these things. And so there were many instances where we reduced fees and some where we eliminated them completely. And, and as somebody who is not a fan of fees or taxes at all, I'm very pleased that we're in a position that we can do that. So I thank staff for your work on this, and I would like to move that we close the public hearing and approve staff's recommendation.
Councilmember Franklin.
Were there any specific fees that you had more of an issue with than others?
No, and to answer Mrs. Rigby's points, a lot of the things that are, are, really don't hit our industry as much as it is for homeowners and stuff. It's just being aware that, look, if things have to go up, you know, we're all in a housing crisis, nobody can afford their house or their rent, what are we going to do? So that's, you know, why I'm here.
I appreciate that. One of the things I always hear from the building community is they want us to increase the speed at which we work. And I think this is really about helping us do that. And, you know, I kind of joke sometimes with builders, because when things are going their way, they tell us we have the best development department in the county, and I know that that's the truth. But then when things are not going their way, I hear that we have the worst that has ever existed, and I know that that's not the truth. But, no, I ask them sometimes, I say, hey, give me the, give me the straight on it. What could we do better? You know, where do we shine, where do we not? And, and one of the requests would be, you know, always, and it's not just Vista, but how can we speed the process along, because time is money. Because time is money, and I think the hope here is that we can assist builders in improving the speed at which we work, and maybe that will, maybe that'll be in the homeowners' or future renters' best interest, too.
I've worked at the BIA for six and a half years. I've been through six planning sessions, and as a legislative person, we ask our incoming board, "Is it more important for me to fight against fee increases or things that'll save time?" I don't get to finish the question when they answer time. You know, not just to, you know, make John blush, but of all the cities that I deal with north of the 56, he's the best at being proactive. We have a monthly meeting with staff in San Marcos to go over things, and we've been doing this for four years. We've made some progress, things are a little better incrementally. I'm sure that, you know, if John said, "If you give me five more people, I can get things done in 30 days," I'd be down here saying, "Whatever it costs, give him the people." Because when you look at the cost to carry on some of these projects, and I don't, I'm not privy to people's pro formas, but I was in a meeting where the president of Cornerstone, when they owned the project over at College on 78th that they're building, is now Lennar, his cost to carry was $13,333 a day. So somebody, you know, calls in sick, and it sits on their desk, and it doesn't, and five days go by, that's real money! And that gets, and he said, and he said to everybody, and I think you might have been at that meeting, he said, "And we're in an upward market, and I just pass those costs on." So the person that gets penalized is the end user. So our job is to, you know, I can't say, "Yes, John, you're doing a great job raising those fees," but we understand, and if there's a way to make things go faster, and if it costs more, I can guarantee you, I would be up here to support that.
Well, this is what I would say, genuinely, we are open to suggestions for how we can improve our process, and appreciate, I know John appreciates the kind words, and the whole council appreciates the reputation that John and his team and the city manager and everybody here at the city have worked hard to earn, but we can always improve. I never take the attitude that great is good enough. So if there's any ideas you have for how we can cut costs or how we can speed things along, we are open to that and want to hear that and appreciate it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. So I second the motion.
And close the public hearing.
And to clarify, does the motion include keeping the temporary use permits at the rate they're at right now for single events, correct?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Please cast your vote. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, we have one more public hearing today, and this is a public hearing precede testimony regarding the vacation of street easement at 755 Beverly Drive. Public hearing is now open. Director Conley is going to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought I was done. I have Kim Cruz with me, our right-of-way agent, who'll be presenting this item.
I believe Councilman Green needs to excuse himself from the side.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. For your consideration this evening, staff presents a resolution to vacate a public street easement at 755 Beverly Drive. This street easement was originally granted to the city in 1971, and is comprised of two segments for the southerly extensions of Beverly Drive and Warmlands Avenue that were planned at the time. The street extensions were never constructed and are no longer required for future public right-of-way. This concludes the staff presentation. Staff, as well as the property owner, are available to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Franklin.
Move to approve and close the public hearing.
I have one speaker. I just, I just got the card here. So it is Santiago Hernandez. Is he here? Want to come up and, do you want to speak?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Philip Hernandez. My father, Santiago Hernandez, and I own the property across the street from 755 Beverly Drive, and we're opposing the vacating of 755 easement. The reason is that we are concerned the vacating, this would narrow Beverly Street driveway from our side even more. There's a barricade that we have to go around every time we go up to our house. Then it turns into a dirt driveway. We have spoken to the owner of 755 Beverly for us to put in an asphalt driveway or cement driveway to reduce the dust that is tracking onto the street. So we would like to keep the easement in place, and eventually, for the city, continue Beverly all the way to Belters.
Okay, thank you, sir. Council, Deputy Mayor.
So this is the property right here. There's part of the road that is used to get into the driveway here. There's a barrier right here, but the road is still able to be used, even with the vacation that we're proposing, the same amount of public right-of-way is still available to access that driveway.
So nothing will be removed?
Nothing, well, if this is vacated, the owner has the ability to make improvements in here for his own property.
There's a barrier right there. There's a barrier right now, right?
Correct. So there's no real direct impact to their access, it's still maintained on the public right-of-way that remains.
They can't keep him from getting to his property, right?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Rigby.
That was my question as well, but I wanted to ask, have we had conversations with this gentleman about this project, and what impact it may or may not have on his property and his access?
Before this meeting, he brought it to our attention, and we did have a conversation with him prior to the meeting, and explained that his access would not be removed or blocked off through the vacation.
Okay. And then if I'm seeing correctly, which that's really far away, and this is really small, but it looks like right where the upper left-hand corner of the yellow outline is, it looks like coming down Beverly, it's paved, and then it, right around that same spot, it hits dirt. Is that correct? Is that how we see that?
That's correct. That's paved up to the barrier, which is right here.
And I think the gentleman was asking about getting that stretch paved the rest of the way. Is that something that we can do?
So we have a pavement management plan that we follow, that we go through the city on a five-year rotation, and we do paving in areas that it's required. We can certainly look at this portion of public right-of-way during the next time that we do our paving rotation.
I would like to ask that we do that. We're making some change here, let's just see if we can finish it off here.
We'll look into it, for sure.
Okay, thank you. And can you please stay in touch with the gentleman about it?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming and speaking with us.
Councilmember Franklin.
Who's the owner of the, of the, looks like one vehicle width? That's the...
This property here you're referring to?
Put, yep, that little stripe right there, that seems to be in the right-of-way? That stripe right there, who owns that?
This piece here.
Is that city property?
That's city right-of-way.
What's that?
That's city right-of-way.
So that's city-owned property?
So this is, this is all right-of-way. We're vacating half of it for this property owner, per his request.
The city, the city has an easement on that property? That's the unhatched part of it, not the hatched part, but the unhatched?
Is that an easement, or is it in fee?
That's an easement.
That's it. Whose property is it? Is that 755, or is that the gentleman who just spoke to us?
If that portion was vacated, it would likely revert to that adjacent property owner.
Which would be the gentleman who just spoke to us?
Correct.
Okay, so, so it's our property?
It is.
It's his property? He says his, you say ours, or by person?
There is an easement over his property.
So it is his property?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so it's his property? So nobody can deprive him of the, making a road there?
That's correct. He has access into his property from that road.
So essentially, at this time, is a private driveway? No?
It serves no other property, so essentially, yes, that's probably the reason it's not paved.
Right. Okay. Well, I know, too, I had a chance to briefly visit with the property owner of 755, and they mentioned they might be interested in putting some concrete in, is one of the reasons that they wanted to do this. Was that your understanding? And the concrete was going to be where the right-of-way is, or asphalt, rather?
When they initially came in, they indicated they were interested in doing some further development of their property, and they wanted to vacate the right-of-way. That's what initiated this.
Okay. All right, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Do we have, do we have a motion already on this?
We do. Oh, did we have a second?
I can't remember. Motion and a second? Oh, okay. Okay, so...
What's the motion, though?
To approve the vacation?
Just the vacation.
Yes.
Nothing else, right?
That's correct.
What, what were you asking? Councilmember Rigby asked something to be paved. What was that?
Councilwoman Rigby asked for the remainder of the right-of-way here that is not being vacated to be paved, and I told her we would look into it.
Is that, is that city property, or is it private property?
It's city right-of-way.
City right-of-way, okay.
But you said it's private property, but there's a city right-of-way.
It's a public easement over a, over underlying property. So this owner owns all of this area, but we have a public easement over the portion that's shown.
Then we're responsible for the...
We were responsible, we are responsible for maintenance of it, correct?
Okay. All right. Okay, I'm good with that, then.
Could, could we allow the property owner? What's the address of the other parcel? Anyway, the other parcel, could we allow that property owner the legal right to build an asphalt driveway?
Sure.
In our right-of-way, maintaining our easement? Or do we want to go ahead and vacate it to him so that he can do whatever he likes?
Well, that's his choice.
We can't do that tonight because it's not...
You can apply for a vacation. No, it's not a publicly noticed part of this hearing, but that's typically initiated by the property owner, like this one was initiated by the property owner. We can also look into the city vacating the right-of-way.
I mean, that'd be my suggestion, is to give this gentleman his land back if we're going to give the property owner of 755 their land back. Maybe we need to bring that back and notice it, but that would give him full entitlement.
Sure, we'll look into it, absolutely.
If he doesn't want it, then we don't have to.
I can't promise, but I have to talk to our city attorney and see what we can bring back.
Yeah, it's a process, I get it.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Public hearing is closed, so please cast your votes. The motion passes with Councilmember Green excused. Okay, so moving on to the next thing, we have four discussion items this evening. Going into those, the first one is Bub Williamson Park Conceptual Design. Assistant City Manager Ellie Zimmerman will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, before you tonight is consideration of the Bub Williamson Park conceptual plan. Assistant to the city manager and project manager Tony Winnie will be providing the staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and city councilmembers. I'm here to discuss the outcomes of our three recent public design workshops on the proposed improvements to Bub Williamson Park, and the current conceptual design of the park as well. So first, a little history. One of the city council's goals for 2018 through 2020 is to improve existing park space and provide additional recreational amenities to residents. As a result, the city has $1.7 million in the current fiscal year CIP budget for improvements to Bub Williamson Park. The park project has been reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Commission three times, most recently on March 26th of this year. So Bub Williamson Park was chosen as a capital improvement project in 2015 due to the deficiency of public park space in West Vista, and the age of the park, and need for updates to the facility. The park was built in the 1980s and has not been significantly upgraded since construction. The next closest city parks are Breeze Hill Park in South Vista and Vista Sports Park in Northern Vista. The park currently has two softball fields, a passive-use area, seating, and restrooms. Here you can see an overall map of the area. To the north is Ruby Drive, on, to the east is Grapevine Elementary School. The dotted area is the perimeter of the existing park. Grapevine Lane is below Grapevine Elementary, and then Emerald Drive is to the west. There's also a secondary access point to the park on Huff Street to the south. So the city created a preliminary design for the park in March of 2017. The design previously included an outdoor lighted soccer arena, but after feedback from the community, it was removed from the project by the city council in August 2017. Here you'll see the remaining scope of the project on the screen. The major programming elements include remodeling the existing restrooms, a fenced off-leash dog area, new children's playgrounds, and ADA improvements to the site. So in an effort to solicit additional public input and ideas on the project, the city engaged ASR landscape architecture to conduct a series of three public workshops. The first two workshops were held on November 4th and 16th of 2017, and the final workshop on February 22nd, 2018. During the first two public workshops, participants were asked to review the proposed scope of the project and the programming elements, and then rank their top priorities. Based on feedback received at those workshops, city staff then asked city council at their December 12th, 2017 city council meeting, to determine what major programming elements were critical to the design going forward. So here you see where city council reinforced many of the concepts that had been deemed most important by the public through the first two workshops. As a result, the scope of the park now includes the following 11 program elements. I'm sorry, 12. Security enhancements, remodeling of these existing restrooms, access improvements for disabled individuals, new children's playground areas, off-leash dog area, new lighting and landscaping, benches, water, fountains, open space turf areas, a loop trail around the park, public art, and exercise equipment. The overarching goal shared by city council at that time was to activate a currently underutilized park and provide new recreational opportunities to the community. So after the second workshop and the December city council meeting, our design team was asked to produce two conceptual design options based on public feedback and feedback from the city council. Their task was to figure out the best way to integrate the design elements previously listed, raised at the two public workshops while taking into account topography, budget, and other issues. So here on this slide, you'll see the feedback that we received from the public. This is revisions to the conceptual plan that was presented to the public at those workshops. So as a result of that feedback, we shrank the footprint of the off-leash dog area, we added landscaping to the northern slope near the dog area, expanded passive-use space areas in the south of the park, added a sensory area to the children's playground, added landscaping to the upper slope near the playground, removed the amphitheater seating, which is a big concrete seating area near the playground area, added sidewalk connecting loop and lower loop trails, we moved the gazebo closer to the grapevine entrance, and then we integrated natural themes and natural colors throughout the conceptual design. So here you see the revised conceptual plan based on this feedback. To the west, which is on the left-hand side of your screen, I'm sorry, the north, this is the fenced off-leash dog area. There's an area for both large dogs and small dogs. Then directly above that, you'll see the children's playground areas. There's one area for small children, one area for older children, and then the sensory playground is directly below that, that I previously mentioned. There's also a swing set area and the two gazebos in the center of the park. The active passive open turf space is in the center of the design, and then the existing restroom stays in its current location, which is directly above the children's playground areas. There's an existing loop trail, it's concrete that goes around the park. As part of this conceptual design, we added an additional loop on the bottom of this design so that people have additional walking space, and we added... so that people have additional walking space, and we added a concrete walkway through the center of the park to connect the whole site. The play, or the parking area would also be updated with access improvements for those with disabilities. And then we also added an additional passive open turf space, which was the previous location of the outdoor soccer arena in the previous plans. So here is a list of some of the other ideas and concerns that we've received through the public as part of this outreach process. One is to add either full or half-size basketball courts. They're not a part of the current existing conceptual plan. However, there is space to accommodate a full or a half-court if city council wants to include that as a programming option. Walking trails. So a number of residents were concerned about potential development of the wooded area that runs along the western edge of the park. So no development has been proposed in that area, and the improvements that I mentioned would occur only within the existing park footprint. However, there has been interest in the community to create additional recreational opportunities such as a connecting trail in this area. Due to the limited funding available for the overall improvements, staff would suggest looking at making these improvements in a future phase of the project. Another issue that was raised was the hours of operation. Staff is proposing operational hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. currently. Currently, the park is open from 7:00 a.m. to dusk. The expanded hours would help us to activate the park as requested by city council, particularly after dusk and to put more eyes on the park. Overhead active-use lighting will be maintained to light the parking lot, dog area, playground, and passive turf areas during operating hours. Lower-level pathway lighting and security lighting would be used to light the park from dusk to dawn. Environmental review. Some residents have been concerned that stormwater runoff from the dog park might have a detrimental impact on the adjacent wooded area. However, the project will be required to meet state stormwater standards, which will require the project to treat any runoff before it leaves the site. Staff will conduct a full environmental review on the project once the design has been approved. The environmental review will look at stormwater and other criteria such as biological resources, geology, noise, and traffic to ensure that any impacts can be mitigated prior to approval. Operational controls will also be put in place to help prevent runoff from dog feces, including providing pickup bags on-site for patrons to pick up after their pets. City public work staff will also be removing any feces left behind multiple times a week and replacing the wood mulch base as needed to prevent any odors from occurring. Some residents that we spoke to asked if we could remove the vehicular gate from Huff Street and replace it with a permanent wall. We did check with the fire department on that issue, and they want to maintain access in the case of an emergency. However, the vehicle gate at Huff Street will remain locked. Pedestrian gates will be open to the public both at Grapevine and Huff Street to connect the existing sidewalks and improve walking access to the park. This is an effort to provide walking connections to both areas of the neighborhood and enhance use of the loop trails within the park. We're also looking at using CDBG funding to construct an additional 250 feet of sidewalk on Grapevine Lane to connect the park with the existing sidewalk that's there. Staff has also reached out to Vista Unified School District. We recently met with representatives from VUSD on-site to review the park conceptual plans, including Rafael Olavide, who is the current principal of Grapevine Elementary, which is adjacent to the park. As a result, we will be installing additional fencing that runs along the Grapevine Elementary fence and including a gap between those two fences to eliminate any potential conflict with students. There is also a significant grade change between the park and Grapevine Elementary so that students will not be on the same level as the dog area as it sits below the school site. We are also committed to ongoing maintenance of the dog area as previously mentioned to prevent any issues with odors that could impact the school. Okay, so I have some conceptual images I'd like to share with the city council on some of the improvements that have been discussed. First, this is the off-leash fenced dog area. As I mentioned, there's going to be areas for large and small dogs. There's, would be a gated vestibule entry, so you could take your dog off the leash and then let them go into the appropriate area. And there would be shaded seating for the patrons of the dog area as well. And here are some images of what that might look like. Here we have some graphical images of the children's play area with two play structures, a swing set, a sensory play area for children with learning disabilities, or the resilient surfacing for the children, and then also shade structures as well. Okay, so previously, I spoke about the, the natural color palette that we were trying to integrate in the site and make sure that the playground equipment integrated well with the surrounding area. This is an example of some neutral color palettes of other playgrounds that we might choose to use once we start spec-ing out equipment for the site. Here are some concept images of children that play in other playgrounds that also have that nature theme with the neutral color palettes. One of the things that was requested by the public is the possibility of integrating fitness stations around the park, so the conceptual plan does have fitness stations spaced off of the concrete walkway areas at different intervals. And then art was another component that was requested to be integrated into the project. Here you see one of our local kites, Defy, and then some of the signage that might also be integrated into the park design. And then finally, shade structures that, as I had mentioned, would be integrated over the children's play areas and the dog, the off-leash dog area. So next steps. If approved by city council tonight, then skin and designs and engineering drawings would be produced by the summer of 2018 with bid construction in fall of 2018. Staff would return to the city council with a revised budget in the winter, and then with construction beginning in either spring or summer of 2019. So the options before city council for consideration tonight, you have three options before you. One is to approve the existing conceptual design and authorize staff to move forward with the design and engineering contract. Two, you could modify the current conceptual design. Staff would then update it with the help of our consultant and return to a future city council meeting to share with you. And then three, we could leave the park as it is and reprogram the capital funds to other projects. We would be required to repay the CDBG funds that have been spent on the project design to date. So here we, a return to the conceptual plan. This concludes my presentation. Ms. Zimmerman and myself are available to answer any questions you may have. We also have Andrew Reese and Stephanie Hatton from ASR Landscape Architecture, our consultants who led the workshops here, to answer any questions you might have about the workshops or development of the conceptual plan.
And I have a lot of speakers here. Do you want to hear speakers first, everybody? Okay. Okay, so I'll call the speakers' names, and if you'll, I'll call three names. If you'll come forward, give your name and your address for the record, and then the others will line up over there. It will make it a little quicker, move along. Again, let's all show respect for each other, and no clapping and yelling from the audience, okay? So we'll start with Virginia Green, followed by Kimberly Cross Purdy, followed by Scott Kinghorn.
Good evening. My name's Virginia Green. I live at 599 Grapevine Court. I grew up right by the school. I'm thrilled that you're fixing the park. I think everybody who's dedicated themselves to improving our neighborhood. I'm deeply opposed to the hours. I think that 10:00 p.m. is exorbitant for a neighborhood. I do believe the park is for everyone. I always have. I've been in favor of a children's play area from the get-go. I'm neutral on the dog park area. I would like to say that I think you've put tremendous effort into improving our neighborhood, and for that, I'm thankful. So make a wise decision. I think number three is not an option. Number three is to put it back on the drawing board, and there's been far too much effort forward. So make a good decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Cross Purdy? She went home?
She's on a plane.
Okay. So Scott Kinghorn, followed by Karina Contreras.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Scott Kinghorn. I live on 535 Huff Street, the cul-de-sac area. The current conceptual design for the park is showing positive steps forward, and I thank you for allowing the neighborhood to assist with design elements. Areas of concern would be five-foot gate, five-foot gate fences. This will not stop crime element that wish to enter the park during non-activated hours. Current fences are six foot high. Chain link is easily vandalized and damaged. Bar fences last longer and provide greater security. We use them in our school systems. I would recommend those with six feet or higher. Hours, that's ludicrous. Keeping the neighborhood park open till after dusk serves no useful purpose, and would require costly lighting. Money better spent on securing the park. No other neighborhood parks stay open this late. Community parks, unlike neighborhood parks, may be open later to accommodate league sports, activities, and such. Extended hours will bring in the elements we are trying to keep out, the people partying, loud noises, and vandalism. This would bother other neighbors that live close to the park, causing dogs to bark past many people's bedtime. And cars and people would be, needed spaces in front of their homes would be taken up by more people parking and going into the park till late hours. Our petition specifically stated we were against extended open night hours, league sports, and use lights. Walls along Huff Street, not the gates, Huff Street Homes. That was recommended. Mary Rigby, Madam Mayor Rigby, agreed this was a good idea. It provides noise barriers, privacy, and security to the residents that currently share a chain-link fence with the park. Replace the trees along south fence line perimeter, which had been removed due to disease, and keep the park dogs on leash. We're good with that. Please honor decision made by the city council years ago to keep North Huff cul-de-sac closed to pedestrian and vehicular traffic. A word is a word. The neighbors have spoken with 18 signatures. Those are all people and neighbors along Huff Street and adjacent streets. Most of us brought homes here because, bought homes here because it is quiet, minimal traffic in the cul-de-sac. We have children playing in it. I work for Oceanside Unified School District. Oceanside Unified currently has park-school partnerships, which benefits both entities. The Grapevine School can have, help activate the park, perhaps with its own entrance gate to the back. Bub Williamson Park could offer educational elements as well as providing an activity element area, just, or just a meeting area. The park will be a great place for young and old to play, exercise, socialize, relax, and experience. Just to note, as Huff access petitions were gathered, neighbors still expressed deep concern to keep the hours dawn to dusk and no nighttime activity. We thank you for all you've done getting us here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Karina Contreras, followed by Deborah McGee, followed by Brad McGee. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Hello, my name is Karina Contreras. I live at 1228 Legan Avenue. I do not live in this neighborhood. However, I have fallen in love with Bub Williamson Park. I think that we've come to a point where the design looks a lot better than it used to. One of the concerns that continues to come up are the hours of operation. So for this being a neighborhood park and the neighborhood wanting to keep it a little bit more quiet, having it open until 10:00 p.m. is a concern. You know, I don't know who would be going to a park that is mostly meant for passive activity. I would, I would think that if you're going to a park that late, it might not be for the best reasons. So where it's, where it's at now is a lot better than what it was before, but definitely taking a look at the hours of operation, it's a huge concern, and a lot of the people that would be affected have continuously brought that up. Now, as far as the dog area, I am curious as to what the division between that dog area and the school will be, simply because, you know, when you have kids, sometimes they want to taunt the dogs a little bit. So I don't know if we've discussed how separate the dog area will be from the park. And there's still the concern, I know that we, that there has been discussion of some mitigation of any water that would be coming off the site, but again, we have to take into consideration that people treat their pets very well, and when pets are perhaps not at their peak age and performance, we tend to give them medication, and I don't know if that's been taken into consideration that, you know, if you do have feces and you have urine and it has certain medications, what kind of impact that would have on the riparian area. And, you know, just to echo the discussion on the car wash, I'm not sure what exactly the city is doing to really take a look at water quality issues. We're in a really important part of the watershed. All of this water gets fed through the aquifer, through the creeks, out into the ocean, and it's really a regional issue, and Vista needs to take leadership on that. You know, where's the vision for our community? And I ran out of time. There's a lot more to say, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Deborah McGee, followed by Brad McGee, followed by Mark Legman.
Honorable Mayor and members of council, my name is Deborah McGee. I live at 1577 Grapevine Lane. I just wanted to touch on the general plan 2030 and recite the Resource Conservation and Sustainability Element Policy 9.1, states continue to work with the Parks and Recreation Commission, citizens, organizations, volunteer groups, and community partners to identify and provide needed park, recreation, trail, and open space amenities that address changes in the city's population and demographics based on the park, recreation, open space, and greenway guidelines that were developed by the National Recreation and Park Association and pursuant to the Quimby Act. And following that is Policy 9.3, which states, "Provide parks and recreational opportunities in proximity to neighborhoods to promote physical activity and increase access to facilities." This has been quite a journey for our neighborhood, and thank you very much for allowing us to have input and come up with these wonderful plans. I'm happy to report that last weekend, as far as utilization of that park is concerned, last Saturday at 9:30 a.m., there were cars lined up waiting to get into the park to use it. However, it was still locked, and nobody could get in. And it was the same way Sunday. It was a very late opening for the park. So it does get used, and I've recently become a member of a gardening succulent club in San Diego, and I would love to bring the members to Williamson Park to do succulent swaps and introduce them to our lovely neighborhood park and not hear those all-terrain vehicles that are running down in the ravine now. It's very sad. People are abusing that ravine area in the park, and there's... People are abusing that ravine area in the park, and there's still homeless problems there. So hopefully, we can get that taken care of, and we'll have a lovely neighborhood park to enjoy for many, many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Brad McGee, followed by Mark Leugman, followed by Vanna Leugman.
I'm Brad McGee, also of 1577 Grapevine Lane. And I also support a lot of the proposed changes and the upgrades of the park. I think it's on the right track. But I do support some modifications to it. The one that was presented currently, and I mainly want to focus on the trails, not the paved kind of sidewalk trails on the perimeter that need some work, but the trail in the ravine and through the wooded area. And it was more than 20 years ago. Somebody from the city, when I was at a meeting here, told me that there were plans already made to develop that area and to put walking trails and a bridge in, and I was excited about that. And here it is 20 years later. And in the presentation, it's listed as a potential Phase Two. So what I wanted to suggest was that that, rather than wait for a Phase Two, that the current plan get modified to include those trails now. Maybe it's not, you know, the budget might not include it, but if the dog park got omitted and that area just opened up with a walking trail, and then it would save some money there, and then there would be some funds left to develop the walking trails. And so we've mapped it out, the proposed area. This would be the regular park with the sidewalk, but it could have an entrance down here on Ravine and Ruby, the one that's already proposed on Huff. And then these would just be dirt, nature, walking trails. Right now, they're a mess. There's garbage down in there. There's sometimes homeless people. There's a lot of overgrowth. It's not taken care of, and eventually, the whole thing's just gonna burn if something's not done pretty soon. And the encroachment, this is just under a lot of stress from the encroachment of the new homes coming in and stuff, so it just needs to be taken care of, and I'd suggest sooner rather than later. There's no reason with a little effort, it couldn't be made to look like a regular walking trail, like in other parts of the city, instead of this overgrown mess that it is now. So that would be my suggestion. And also, I do agree that the park shouldn't stay open too late, but I think the effort should be, the time's right now to put an effort into developing nature trails. It would be good for the neighborhood, good for the school, good for just people in general to have a trail on this end of the city, a nature trail to walk on. There's nothing on the west side for that either right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mark Leugman, followed by Vanna Leugman, followed by Ken Lo.
Mark Leugman, 566 Collin Street, which is adjacent to the riparian area and the natural land that we're talking about. In the immortal words of Yogi Berra, "It's deja vu all over again." The difference this time is that we failed to see the humor in the situation. We are sure that you are all just as frustrated and tired of the constant need to protect and clarify our position in this issue. It is out of that frustration that I will be blunt and direct, as well as respect that is due. When will the voices of the neighbors and citizens that are directly impacted by these proposals have a voice that is heard and taken to heart? We have listened to city staff, elected officials, and consultants consistently and repeatedly misrepresent our wishes and our words time and time again. It is past time for this neighborhood park to be the priority and become what it must be: a safe and secure place for our residents and children to enjoy nature and amenities that suit the immediate surrounding and adjacent environment. There is no consensus regarding the most recent plan proposed by the city regarding an off-leash dog park and the overall design of our Bub Williamson Park. We are not convinced that any of the required due diligence has been accomplished by city staff, assertions, and statements to the contrary. We do not have faith or confidence in the work that has been done or the designs proposed, both from a needs or suitability perspective. These proposals do not meet our needs, wishes, or intentions. The idea that all funding earmarked for Bub Williamson Park will be allocated to another site in retaliation for us speaking our minds is reprehensible and beneath your consideration. If this park safety is paramount to your desires as it is to ours, where have the priority solutions and improvements been all these years? You have had numerous opportunities to improve this park and have failed to act in the community interest. Now is the time to expose the hidden agendas, false statements, and half-truths, and take action that is in our best interest. We have spent hours of our time and energy on this matter, and we will not be silenced or ignored. We are in this for the long run and will not rest until our concerns are answered and our needs met. I will not repeat the other speaker's fine words regarding ideas for nature trails, passive play spaces, or safety measures, nor will I repeat the dangers of dog waste and disgusting current conditions of the easements and riparian areas that you and the city of Vista have a responsibility to clean up. Rather, I will reiterate and implore you to listen to these residents-
Your time is up.
...and community members, and make a positive difference in our children's lives before it's too late. Thank you.
Vanna, followed by Ken Lo, followed by Christine Lo.
Hi, I'm John Leugman at 566 Marine Drive. I'm sort of at a confused place, being new to the city of Vista and listening to numerous meetings. I have a few things I want to get to that are a little bit different than everybody else. I know I've listened to Mr. Green a number of times on different issues, and one of the things I've always respected about him, except in this instance, is that he seems to listen to the public and takes what they want in needed hand. I'm not so sure why, in the meetings I've been to, the dog park thing, which was number eight on the list, and it was never mentioned in any of the three beginning meetings, and this is old stuff that we've been through over and over again at the meetings we've come to. Most recently, we were at a park commission meeting, where this was on the docket, our park, and everybody went through hours and papers and papers of the bacteria and how the water needed to be treated, and why this was a danger to our school, and the support that we had from the principal at the school, and so on and so on. When it came to a vote, and I got up to speak about my vision, there were a couple people on the council that said, "We need to have something for the kids to do, and we need this, and we need that." And my view is what we, what my opinion of we need in our world, and what Vista has an opportunity in front of them, is to create a Tory pines, to create an educational, relaxing place where people have a chance to unwind and unplug from all the stuff we do in the world, and actually watch the hawks as they nest, and the falcons that come, and all the other birds, and the plant life that is so rich there. There's a way we can use this opportunity to educate our children, and to become part of the school system, and to become part of something lasting that, once you put the money and invest in it, will basically take care of itself. It's a beautiful, and serene, and peaceful place. But at this last meeting, after all of the dog park stuff with the park commission, it came down to a vote. I think I was one of the last speakers. And one of the people who lives in my neighborhood, but was not representative of that, said that she wanted to vote for the dog park because of, not for her, but because of all the apartments there. And she looked at Tony because of some of the things that he had said. After my husband spoke, being diligent about wastewater treatment-
Your time is up, so wrap it up quickly.
Okay, so basically, she looked at Tony, and he had said before that he had that handled, that he had done the studies, that he had everything-
You need to wrap it up.
Okay.
You're pretty well done.
Well, basically, they were lied to. We were lied to. And this particular woman-
You're done. I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, in making her vote, she-
That means stop.
-voted on his words, which were-
You have to stop. Yeah. Okay, Christine, Ken Lo, followed by Christine Lo, followed by Grimes. Is it Veronica?
For the record, I'm Ken Lo, and I live at 558 Collin Street, and the riparian preserve that we're talking about is my backyard. So anyway, Mayor, city council, and staff, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. After the last design workshop and the parks and recreation, we still really basically have no answer on the mitigation of the wastewater and how it's handled. And there are numerous experts that I spoke to, including my next-door neighbor, Mark, who is in the business, and also Diane Nygaard, who could not be here tonight. We still have no answer. After the meeting and after speaking to them, I did some research of my own, and I've come to the conclusion, and this is personal, but I've concluded that a dog park should not be constructed next to a creek, especially one that runs out to sea. The first person on the council I expressed this to was John Aguilera. Then further research brought me to the fact that dog waste is, in fact, a hazardous waste and cannot be within a quarter mile of a school, like Grapevine Elementary, which is right next to it. The proposed dog park would be, was a school directly above it, and a creek directly below it was not a good idea. So I decided to contact California Fish and Game. I spoke to the person that Virginia Green spoke to during the soccer arena matter, and Eric told me he had never heard that a dog park was to be proposed or located near a creek, and that I should contact the California Water Board with my concerns. The Water Board said they also had not heard of this. They contacted Fish and Game back, Cal EPA, Army Corps of Engineers, and within their own staff, and concluded, "Nobody knew about this dog park." Their conclusion was to file a formal complaint with the EPA, and they sent us a link to do likewise. They also wanted, they also wanted to know when this dog park was even planned by the city. And I told them, in March of 2017, I called the building department to see the status of the park, and they said a building permit had already been issued to construct the dog park amongst, with the soccer arena. Then I looked back on our paperwork to see the earliest I found any information on the dog park, and it was a letter from the mayor to Deb McGee, April 30th, 2015.
And your time is up.
Okay. I just want to read, and I'll quote from the city council agenda report dated November 10th, 2015.
How long?
During the design phase, TB Bennick will explore the possibility of a bridge across the creek and extending the loop trail around the creek.
Thank you. Christine Lo, followed by, I think it's Veronica Grimes, followed by Sonia Sotio.
Hello, Mayor. I'm Christine Lo. I live at 558-
Speak right in the microphone so we can hear you there.
Excuse me. Hello, Mayor, Council. I'm Christine Lo. I live at 558 Collin Street. I want to thank the council for authorizing and holding three workshops for the Bub Williamson Park redesign. The process moved forward, and progress has been made in developing a workable plan to activate the park and to serve the needs of the neighborhood for recreational space. However, this review and design process is not complete. Many residents believe that any final plans and decisions made by the city have been restricted from public view. A number of requests have been made for accurate information to be made available to them, and we have received instead assurances and half-truths. Neighbors for Bub Williamson Park are promoting a plan that supports passive recreation and multi-use open space while preserving the wildlife habitat for generations to come. We believe the final design must address the recreational needs of families, the grammar school students from Grapevine Elementary, and the seniors who live in the area. What is not acceptable is the exclusive promotion of the interests of one group, in this case, dog owners, over the needs of the immediate neighborhood. Neighbors from Bub Williamson Park are a passionate group, whose search for creative solutions that address the needs of this neighborhood park is ongoing. This effort includes pursuing possible grants for habitat cleanup and restoration, as well as creative, positive educational experiences for the children of Vista. We welcome the commitment and participation of the staff and principal Olavete of Grapevine Elementary School, as well as the members of the Vista School Board to this effort. We are asking for a transparent process and interface with the city to make this a reality. Open sharing of information increases trust and an effective partnership to accomplish our shared goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Veronica, is it Veronica?
Yeah.
Okay, I got it right. Okay. And then Sonia Sotio, followed by David Rios.
So I'm Veronica Grimes. I live at 440 Grapevine Road, and I just wanted to thank you for allowing us this opportunity. It's been, actually, I've loved the process of working on this park with my neighbors and with the city council. We've made a lot of progress. I agree with most of the concept that we have going on right now. The one, there's a couple things that do still concern me. Number one is the park hours. 10 o'clock is too late. Between the hours of eight and 10, our families are getting ready for the next day. You know, I wonder what people would be down there in this passive park between the hours of eight and 10 at night. You know, you're not enjoying the sun, you're not reading. What are you doing down there at those hours? Admittedly, our neighborhood has a bit of a crime problem, so we're concerned about I love the concept of the totlot. Thank you so much for presenting the nature playground. Love that. Safety issues. Like I said, there's a bit of a crime problem in the area. And I think, you know, I talked to a lot of my neighbors, and there is a perception that this area is unsafe. How did we get to that point? We don't have murders happening down there. We do have graffiti issues. There are problems with litter. You know, we can see that people are drinking down there and doing drugs. You know, why is this an attraction to those people? It's because the park hasn't been maintained all these years. We have fenced-in areas, weeds growing, you know, five, six feet tall, garbage back there. And so the good people of the neighborhood are afraid to go down there. You know, you can make this park as beautiful as you want on the outside, but if we don't get it cleaned up down there, that perception will still be there, and we won't activate it. So, you know, I think that we need to consider just getting that place cleaned up, the riparian area. We have homeless people who've been living down there. Cleaning it up, that should be the first thing before we move forward. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sonia Sotio, followed by David Reese, followed by Maria Gonzalez.
Hi, my name is Sonia Sotelo, and my address is 1638 Robin Road, and I live right next to the school. And we reject this project. We love to have the park, but not especially for dogs, because it is, we have some issues about that, because it is too close to our fence from our schools, and it is visible to just direct to our campus, and that's a big distraction for our kids. And we have, there are the playground operations for our kids, and all the, when they go to break or whatever, they're doing pee, and that's all the, we would like to have all the urine smells to the kids, because now we have a fresh breeze coming from those trees, and after that, it's gonna be like a big bad smell for kids around school. And we also have an after-school program there, so the kids spend a long time in school, and we will- in school and we would like, like to have that. And also it's a big distraction for them because they are gonna be dogs barking all day long in the park and that's a big distraction for our kids. Also comes insects coming from that, also the flies coming to our lunch areas or to our kids also. It is all about our kids because it is right next to our school and also that, that park's another option for evacuation area for in case a fire comes in our school, that's an option that we have for, for evacuation. And I think that's, thank you.
Okay, thank you. David Rios, followed by Maria Gonzalez, followed by Sarah Spinks.
Good evening, thank you for letting me be here. My name is David Rios, no Rios. I live in 601 North Emerald Drive. I agree with all the projects, far as you guys talking about children's, for children's, I really like all that. But, we don't, we don't need to be science to understand that dog park, children's, school, disease, unsafe, it just doesn't match. So, I don't agree with the dog park, thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you. Maria Gonzalez, followed by Sarah Spinks, followed by Catalina Garcia.
Can I translate?
Pardon?
Translate, yeah.
Oh, okay. You could translate. Does she need translator?
Do you guys have one?
Does she speak English? You speak English? No? Okay, hey, translate.
Hola, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Maria Gonzalez, yo vivo en el 1244 Bluegrass Road. Yo tengo un estudiante en Grapevine y no estoy de acuerdo con el parque de perros. So, um...
Yeah, come in the microphone so we can hear.
She, she has a student, attended to Grapevine School and she does not agree with the part of the, the part for dogs.
That's it?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Sarah, followed by Catalina Garcia.
Hi, Sarah Spinks, I live at 243 North Citrus. I don't live in this neighborhood, but I think I got roped into this at one of the City Council meetings, talking about public art. So, I would still love to see some murals happen in this park, maybe celebrating the natural wildlife that's happening behind the park. I used to play bobby socks here when I was a kid and it was really sad to go there a couple of months ago and covered in graffiti. So, we know that murals are a deterrent for graffiti, so if we could maybe think about that. I know some of the residents are not that keen on the dog area and I think there's an opportunity here to partner with the school with a wildlife habitat area. My son's school, Casita, they have a habitat area at his school and it's amazing, the kids are out in nature. I think that that's really beneficial for them. There's so many benefits, so I think that, and then you have that community activation, you have people coming in and loving on their park and watching it and activating it and I think that was a big issue at this park is the lack of activation and that would help, you know, there's some community ownership of the space and beautifying it. And then, I think the hours, I mean, I don't really think a park needs, in this neighborhood needs to be open till 10, so, that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And then, oh, and I have, these are like packets about wildlife habitat, the information
Okay, okay, Catalina.
Good evening, everyone.
Speak right in the microphone so we can hear you, okay?
Good evening, everyone, thank you for allowing me to speak, I'm a little bit nervous, but I just want to mention three things. The first thing, it will be, I will oppose the off-leash dog park and also the second, second will be the Huff Street through gate. Mainly because, the main concern is because we are directly affected and with, along with 18 other neighbors who are directly affected and because of the safety concern. It was closed before because of the crime, it facilitates the crime if that is open. So, we oppose that to be open with pedestrian, to vehicle. And the third, what was it? Oh, and please keep it morning to dusk, no late opening, thank you.
Thank you. That's just the last of our speakers. Thank, thank all of you for staying around for so long to hear us, so we can hear your voices heard. And I will go to the Council now, Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I also wanted to say thank you for everyone who stayed this late and to speak to this issue and to staff for all the work that you've done on this project. I do have a couple of questions. I wanted to know, what was the history with the closure of Huff Street? Was it open at one point and then closed with the gate or has it always been closed? And if it was closed after the fact, what was the history behind that?
The history, as I understand it, was that the gate was closed in the late 80s as a, at the request of some of the residents that lived along Huff. I believe that part of the impact was the overflow parking that was occurring at that time as a result of the two softball fields being in use. And that's, that's about all we know on the history of that.
Okay, thank you. And then, some of the discussion, or a lot of the discussion, has been on the dog area that ended up on a list with no discussion or input at the community meetings. Even I was kind of surprised to see it on the list and much less as high on the list as it seemed to be when there had been no comment on it. But, in your comments, when you did your staff report, you talked about, there was some mandate that we had to do some kind of treatment for the waste and the water because it is a creek that does go into the ocean, it rides, rides all along. In what manner will this water treatment happen?
So, once a design has been finalized, then we will have our project team go forward and design the engineering solution for the stormwater runoff. There are a number of different options that they could consider. One might be a subterranean drainage system underneath the dog park. But, the bottom line is that none of the stormwater runoff from the site can actually exit the site. So, that is mandated by the state of California. So, similar to the other project that you heard tonight, the city will be required to abide by those regulations as well.
Do we have any idea what that budget item might be? How, how much would that cost?
We don't currently know.
Not even a ballpark figure?
No.
No? Okay. And then, the hours of operation, this is a neighborhood park as outlined in our general plan as neighborhood parks. It is identified, listed on the list of neighborhood park versus city park versus regional park. So, I wanted to ask, what hours are the other neighborhood parks that are specifically identified in our general plan as neighborhood parks? What hours are they open until?
Councilwoman, we're not aware of the park hours. If we had known ahead of time, we would have found that, we can provide it to you. Typically, passive parks would be dawn to dusk. The extended hours at this park were originally proposed because there were the lighted arena soccer area that would be going on later. And at this, at the moment, the off-leash dog area proposal is to be lit and whether or not it's open to dusk or later, the, the thought was people who are at work all day may want to take their dogs, if their dogs have been in the house or in the apartment all day long to the park after work. And as we know during the winter, dusk is 4:30 and 5:00 and maybe they would like it to be able to do that in the evening. Whether it's till 10 is up to the Council's discretion, but that's one of the main factors that went into extended hours of the park, is that it would be lit for people to enjoy the dog area into the evening.
Okay, thank you. As for the dog area, it was not discussed at the community meetings, the neighbors didn't bring it up, I don't know how it made it onto the list. And tonight, we had one person say that they're neutral on it either way. Nobody else tonight spoke in favor of the dog area. And at the community meetings, very few people, once it was on your list, that last meeting, talked about having it there. And the people that I talk to when I go out into that community and that neighborhood, nobody has asked for the dog park to be there. And what we do have there is very sensitive natural habitat. We have this riparian area back there that I think instead of having an off-leash dog park, which honestly, in my opinion, would ruin the habitat area and significantly change the natural environment there. We, we just allowed off-leash dogs at South Buena Vista Park during all hours, which they've been doing all hours anyway long before that. And then, there's areas that the dogs aren't allowed to go off-leash, but the dogs are off-leash in those areas all the time anyway. So, and having been a dog owner for many, many years myself, I, I don't have a lot of confidence that 100% of the dog owners are gonna manage their dogs and that their dogs will not be going places that they're not supposed to be going. At times, they're not supposed to be going there. So, I do worry about the natural habitat that we have in the riparian area and how it will be negatively impacted by having off-leash dogs. And I think instead of doing that to this community and to this park and particularly this habitat and, and everything that lives and thrives there, we should take this opportunity and open it up, as has been suggested, not just tonight, but at every community meeting and every discussion we've had, open this park up and that habitat area to become a science and nature destination for not just the schoolchildren, which I think would be fabulous, and I know in speaking with a couple of our school board members, they would really like to see that happen as well. And there are three schools right in the vicinity of this, this area that would utilize that. But also, make it a destination like we have at Alta Vista Gardens and some other places where people can come and see the natural habitat and the flora, the fauna and the critters and their natural environment and learn about these things. Make, make that a destination, not a dog area. I'm opposed to the dog area quite adamantly. I, I don't, I think it would be detrimental to the natural environment of the park. I am absolutely in favor, I was looking for Sarah, the murals, because we do have a serious graffiti problem in the park and murals tend to be respected and not graffitied over as much as blank walls, which are just basically a canvas begging to be painted over with something. So, I am, I, I love the idea of the mural and I know that you've been talking with the community about ideas for what the mural should be that reflects that neighborhood and the community, so I'm in favor of that. And when we talk about the gate, I'm gonna go back to the gate at Huff again because I know that the fire department, as you mentioned, Mr. Winnie, the fire department has said that they are not supportive of a wall there, they want to keep it as a gate so that they can have a way to get through. And I understand that and I had talked with fire personnel about that as well. So, I, I think we, we have no choice but to leave it as a gate because it can be an emergency access when necessary versus the wall. But, we did have a petition that was given to us, I saw it a few weeks ago and it was brought up previously. I think every single resident on Huff Street, save one person that you weren't able to get a hold of, signed the petition asking for that gate to not be open to vehicular traffic. So, I would ask that we not open the gate to vehicular traffic at the end of Huff. And then, we did hear from a school board member about not only wanting to preserve the habitat for a science and nature destination and perhaps a joint use with the school, but an absolute opposition to a dog park, no matter what, dog area there, no matter what. And in his letter, I think we all got the same letter, talked in great detail about why they are opposed to the dog area. So, I thought it was important to just point out that we did receive a, a letter from one of our school board members on that issue. And this, as far as the, what your conceptual plan in your presentation, the playground equipment, the exercise equipment, the shade sales, all of that stuff, all, all of the amenities that you've included in there, I actually really like that. And I think that a lot of those things, the play area, there's no play area, play area right now and I think having a play area itself is a way to activate the park. Having a program for school kids to come through or just people coming through because sitting out in that park, we see a lot of different things going on back there that are very interesting and I'm talking wildlife, not the other things that are going on back there. But, like the types of birds that are back there, I mean, I, I think a bird watching group would be, would be fascinated by some of the, the natural habitat that's back there. But, cleaning up the homeless, because there is a homeless issue back there, is gonna be something that we need to address in the security of the park. And when we, we activate this park and we're gonna have more families and more children back there, I want to make sure that we are still getting back there and doing the maintenance to that back wooded area on the other side of the creek where the homeless people are right now with their king-sized mattresses. So, I want to make sure that we are gonna be keeping on top of that. The only, the only amenity that I saw that I wanted to ask a question about or make a comment on was the sensory part of it. Can you go back to that slide for me, please?
Is this the slide that you're referring to?
I think so, I think this is the one where you were talking about one of these would be a sensory. Is one of these pictures depicted as a sensory or no?
No.
I didn't think so. Okay, because that was my question. I wasn't sure if, if one of these was that or not because I know that for, for sensory garden and sensory playground, it has multimodal and texture and things, so, so some of these we can get into the weeds on when we approve the concept, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, I, I like the concept of what you have here, except for the dog area. I am not in favor of the dog area.
Mayor, if I could just provide a point of clarification, and I know said with a number of the speakers tonight, as well as on the dais, the dog area or dog park has been discussed for the past at least 15 to 18 months as the Council's action was done on February 14th of 2017 when you approved the negative declaration. So, I just wanted to make that point of clarification.
My point was that at the community meetings, the neighbors that attended the community meetings never brought it up. So, that, that was my point on that one.
Councilmember Green.
Sorry, having problems with the microphone on/off button. First of all, thank you guys all for staying and showing up. Also want to make sure Grapevine Elementary School knows they have a great principal in Raphael over there. Raphael reached out to me at a meeting and was concerned. Given the, you know, flyers that I received, obviously I would be concerned as well. You know, our biggest thing with this park is that we want to activate it, all right? I've lived in Vista for 30 years, I have four daughters, my oldest is 19, she played softball at that park when we used to use it for the bobby socks and I think like Ms. Spinks says, it's kind of sad to go over there and see that it's not being used anymore. The fact that we haven't done anything with this park since 1980 is a real letdown and I apologize, I wish that something would have been done prior to now, but we are here now, so what are we gonna do? In regards to the dog park, I think the reason why it's still on the list is because when we presented the dog park with the, you know, the soccer arena, nobody really balked at the dog park, they were just like, hey, let's just get rid of the soccer arena, let's just get rid of the soccer arena. So, you know, we got rid of the soccer arena and then it was like, hey, now we don't like the dog park, get rid of the dog park, you know? And for that riparian habitat, it was my understanding that we weren't supposed to touch it because of the falcons and because of the watershed and all that and I don't know what the environmental impacts would be of a riparian walking trail. Let me tell you, 100%, I, I support the riparian walking trail. I've been out to Casita Elementary several times, tried to get my school, my kid in that school every single year, never won the lottery, that's another issue we'll talk to VUSD about later. But anyways, it, it's great and it does activate the area. You know, I spoke with my wife about this, I've spoken with a lot of community members about it. Now, I understand that people are used to a park the way that it is in their community and, you know, changing it and bringing in more people and more traffic, you know, that, that's never good. But at the same token, we want to protect our kids, we're not here to, you know, hurt our kids in any way. and Tony Winnie, you know, the major concerns were, number one, the smell, number two, the distraction. Kids do get distracted easy. It made me feel good that we were building a fence, it looks like, because that fence was a bigger hazard, in my opinion, behind your school than any dog park could ever be. It's rusty, it's sharp, it's dirty. I wish they would have given you a new fence sooner, but hey, we're going to, we'd get a new fence, too. No matter what, I think we should get a new fence. What really concerns me about this process is the way that the community feels. And as elected officials and as a city, we are listening to you. Your concerns are heartfelt. We have changed this process and this project several different times to get to the point that we are. Now, there were some comments about staff lying to us and deceiving us and taking our comments out of context and stuff like that, and you know, I'd like to see exactly where we were lying. I mean, that's a big claim. I don't want you guys to think, you know, the city staff is lying, or that the council approves the city staff lying. There was also questions about hidden agendas. I have no hidden agenda on this at all. I don't own a dog. I will never bring a dog to a dog park. I will never own a dog at my house. I walked 10,000 doors when I got elected a couple of years ago, and a lot of people were like, hey, we have one area for off-leash dogs, that's South Buena Vista. We would love another area. We kind of put two and two together and thought this would be a great area for a dog park. With none of the water actually leaving the dog park, I don't see any, you know, jeopardization per se of the watershed down there or the riparian habitat, if it's done correctly. I also think that if we build a new privacy fence where you can't see down there, and it's, you know, lower, and we're constantly changing the mulch and taking care of the sentence stuff, it wouldn't be as big of an issue. So the main concerns from the, you know, parents' perspective of, hey, I don't want my kids distracted, I don't want them putting the fingers through the fence and getting bit by dogs, nobody wants to get attacked by dogs, the evacuation strategy, we walked by your evacuation strategy, we're not affecting your evacuation at all. That's still open, it's still there. So I don't think that it's going to have as big of an impact as, you know, the entire community is saying. However, I do want to listen to the community. I do want to make sure that we take things into consideration, but I want to make sure, you know, that we have also done our due diligence. You know, I don't think the school board as a whole, the school district as a whole, I don't believe they've taken an official stance on this or notified us that they don't want this. Am I correct in saying that?
You're correct. The school board has not taken a position.
And the, or the district either, correct? I guess that's one and the same. Okay, okay. So I haven't actually gotten, you know, anything from the actual district saying, hey, we don't want this. I do understand you guys are the ones who are inevitably immediately affected by it. I also understand that Councilman Rigby has put in more work than any of us probably, sitting with the community members, meeting with the community members, and I do definitely respect her opinion. When I sat down here tonight, I was going to, you know, 100% go through with this dog park. I'd like to listen to my other colleagues to hear what they have to say. This flyer right here that I received that says, "Please, City of Vista, allow Grapevine Elementary to activate Bub Williamson Park. The National Wildlife Federation will help us make it a natural learning experience." That's a fantastic flyer. Has anybody spoken with the National Wildlife people, and have they said that they're going to give us money for it? Somebody?
Yes, if I can answer that.
Please.
We do have some members of the community who have been searching for that and then are in contact with them to work on getting a grant, yes.
So that's my thing, I don't...
That's an active...
Yeah, and I don't want to take away the ability, having an outdoor habitat for your students to learn in and for our children to learn in is priceless. It would be a great aspect. I didn't know there was anybody else marching down the door to give us money to help out with this particular park. A dog park is needed within the City of Vista, and that's why the dog park is on the list. A dog park will be installed somewhere in the City of Vista, hopefully, within the next four years while I'm still on this council. Will it be here? Who knows? We're going to find out tonight. If it's going to go in at Bub Williamson Park, like I said, I'd like to talk to my other council members, hear what they have to say about it. But if we can really get the National Wildlife Federation to help make this a natural learning experience and add another aspect to this, and Grapevine Elementary can also say, hey, and VUSD, you get them on board to help maintain it, help activate it, help keep it safe, help keep homeless people out, help make it a real area that people are actually using, because that's a lot of responsibility to put just on our city. So if we're really saying, we have an entire elementary school, an entire community, an entire school district behind this, that's good. You know, show me who they are, and let's make it happen. Other notes, 326-2018, feces, gate on Huff Street. Somebody want a direction on that? I understand the gate can't be a wall due to fire restraints. However, there was also, and this is a question for you as well, Councilwoman Rigby, is it's currently proposed that there's a pedestrian gate allowed on Huff Street? And I know that when I had spoken with some of the residents as well, they didn't want the pedestrian gate to be open. It's my understanding it's not currently open on Huff Street, is it?
That's correct. There's an existing sidewalk, however, there's fencing that, you know, blocks it off from the park.
However, there was another gentleman who was in the group who said, look, if we're going to do this riparian habitat and this riparian trail, we should open it up so that it could be a loop around the entire thing. So, you know, we obviously can't make everybody happy with that. And I'm going to kind of defer to you on the, you know, pedestrian access. You know, it sounded like there was a lot of anti for it, but at the same token, if we're given there and it's going to be more active and people are coming from all areas to learn, is that something that you're open to, is keeping the pedestrian access open there?
Well, the concern with that is Huff Street is actually a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
And if you, I don't know if you've ever driven onto Huff Street, but it's, and I live on a cul-de-sac, but this is a cul-de-sac where it looks like they just took a house out and put a gate there. It really is not, it doesn't lend itself to become a huge parking lot for park access. And I think that's the concern, is that you'll have this cul-de-sac inundated with cars on the weekends or for special events or something, and that would impact that neighborhood and the kids who live on and play on that street, as well as the other streets around there as well. So that was the concern that's been brought forward to me from the community.
Yeah. And around a lot of our community parks, neighborhood parks even, we have multiple access points. I mean, we want our neighborhoods to be able to get into them. So for me, you know, I guess if parking's the biggest thing, I would hope that people would take advantage of our, you know, parking lot there as well. But again, we're trying to activate this and get people to come in it, and people who live over there, you know, probably won't walk all the way around if they don't have car access to use this park. And if it's really a neighborhood park, there's some people who, you know, live around off Huff Street who might want to use the park, their kids might want to use the park, and walking a quarter mile as opposed to whatever the difference of the loop is, is not going to help us have good families using that park. So, you know, I'm definitely open to hear what my council has to say. I'm not 100% sold on the fenced off-leash dog area at this point, as much as I was when I sat down at this chair this morning. So thanks for speaking, community, thanks for showing up, and let's hear what my other council members have to say about it as well.
Councilmember Franklin.
I'm going to suggest that I would second a motion if Councilwoman Rigby wanted to make one, where we would leave the Huff access as it stands right now. We nix the dog park unless, what was the input on the dog park? Is it coming from up here, or, I don't remember it. What, yeah, let's have a, just a real quick on the dog park. What was the public input?
Do you want Tony to, who are you asking?
Yeah, he was in charge of that.
Excuse me, John. If you want to do something like that, you need to ask. You can't, you aren't running the meeting.
Okay, Madam Mayor, can we have the consultant who was in charge of the public input come up and address us?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Councilmembers, I'm Andrew Reese. Excuse me, got to catch my breath. I'm the consultant who was great privileged to work with the community and the city to help develop our concept plan. So let me shed a little bit of light of history on the dog park. So it was part of the RFP, part of the original project program elements when we came on board, and we knew the soccer arena wasn't in favor. So when we came to have the meeting, there was lukewarm, kind of a mixed reaction at the first workshop we went to, because everybody was focusing on many different program elements and getting excited about the overall park. During the meetings, more conversation, more development happened about what these impacts would be and about your concerns about activating the park and what the community wanted. And I can go into a lot of detail, but I'll summarize it for you. As our community meetings went further and further on and we got more and more active, the support for the dog park dropped less and less and less. So that happened both on our surveys that we did in the ranking and as a general, you know, flavor in the consent. And so when we were wrapping up our final workshop, I believe, if I'm not speaking out of turn for the community, that the off-leash dog park was very, very low on the priority list, if not wanted by most of the people attending the workshops.
So we don't have any written correspondence from anybody asking for it? Nobody came to the meeting?
Well, there was a few people who were either lukewarm, and there was a couple of people who approached, just a few, who said, well, I would like the idea because we'd like to accommodate some people somewhere sometime.
Thank you very much for giving us that input. I think that closes the matter for me.
Councilman Franklin?
Yeah.
Just to add input, on one of the November meetings that was held, there was a show of hands on who supported the dog park. There were seven people against, five people for it. And I think that was at the first November meeting, is just an FYI.
Well, it sounds like the dog park's going to be very expensive. We've got about 10 four-letter agencies involved in it now, and I just don't see why we want any part of that. So I say, again, I'm offering to second a motion here, which is, we leave Huff alone, we nix the dog park, we keep the park open till dusk or 8:00 PM, maybe 7:00 PM, whichever's later, because you don't want to close the park at 5:00 o'clock in the evening. I mean, this would be some reasonable time. There's also the whole idea of having people there later who are following the rules. Remember, you make a rule, only the good people follow the rules. Okay? The bad guys are already breaking the rule. So you might want to think carefully about being so opposed to having people there who are following the rules until later, because those people are displacing, they're intimidating the people who would be there to break the rules and do crimes. You know, you and I, we follow the rules when they're posted. The bad guys, they don't follow the rules. So just a thought. Anyway, and then I would go ahead and accept the security upgrades, the upgraded restroom, the mural, the pedestrian access improvements, new furnishings, children's playground, shade structure, open surface turf area. We're nixing number eight, the new fenced off-leash. We keep the drought tolerant landscaping and irrigation. I think we nix number 10, even though I know there's a lot of people have asked for it. I think it's too expensive, and getting into all the environmental stuff is going to be a nightmare. I think we're getting, I think this is going to make 80% of everybody 80% happy. And then we keep the exercise equipment. So that's what I'm offering if there's a desire. I think that cuts the gordia knot.
Tony, can I ask you, what's the estimate of cost to put the trails and clear the invasive species in that area?
We got an estimate from one of the landscape maintenance companies that the city regularly deals with about removing the non-native species. It would cost about $100,000. The trail system would necessitate a installation of a bridge to span the creek area that's there. The cost of the bridge would be about $200,000. And then whatever improvements to the trails, and then whatever ADA upgrades that would be necessary to also allow for other folks to access those trails. So we're looking at anywhere from $250,000, $300,000 possibly.
Does that include compliance with all the agencies we get into that sensitive habitat area?
Well, we really won't know what that compliance looks like until we file those environmental documents and have those reviewed by these agencies.
I think that'll cost as much or more than the improvements.
Deputy Mayor.
I think that estimate's super low. I think you're looking at half a million plus, probably. But anyways, I think the hours, I mean, I think we can lower the hours to, I think it's fair to lower it to 8:00 PM, and it can be monitored, and if it becomes an issue, we can bring the hours down to 7:00 PM or 6:00 PM. But I think the idea of a park is you want to be active at night, and people want to walk their dogs after work and that type of thing. So I think we need to, I'm okay with 10, but if the neighbors don't like that, I'm listening to them right now, so, you know, I'm okay with 8:00 o'clock. Definitely in favor of, you know, better gates and fences, whatever we can do to keep people out after hours. And we are having separation from the school, right? We're building a new fence for that.
That's correct.
I would be in favor of doing whatever we can to stop the ATVs from going up and down the, I think that we have an obligation to do that. I mean, I hope that the neighbors would call the sheriff, though, too. They should be coming out for that. And if we did do some kind of a walking trail, which I'm not saying we should, because I think it's going to be too expensive, you can put turnstiles or something at the end so that bikes can't come in. And I would be in favor of more information on the cost of the drainage system for the dog area, because I think we can't make that decision. You've said that you don't have an idea what that's going to cost.
There will be a cost for the drainage system for a dog area, but any of these improvements are going to trigger stormwater mitigation requirements.
The entire park improvement will have some component based on the new laws as they stand.
So, but what would the dog area, just that, what would that cost, just for that dog area? I mean, would that add to it? Would that be the...
We can find out. We can identify recently constructed dog areas and find out.
Yeah, because I think that's important. I think people are making some valid points here. We need to be able to assure them, and I mean, obviously, we wouldn't move forward if we couldn't assure them of the waste going into the creek, but we need to know what that's going to cost before we approve that. You know, as far as Huff Street goes, I go either way. I could open, you know, not the whole gate, because I know that's not what the neighbors want. But I think having access, again, we're trying to activate this park. To me, that's not a deal breaker. I think it's a good idea to open the gate to allow people in that neighborhood to have easy access. We have 55 or 58 parking spaces in there.
58.
I just don't see that people are going to, I just don't think there's going to be 30 cars parking on Huff Street. Softball's over, we're taking the soft, we're, it's not going to be an active park anymore, so the games aren't going to, there's not going to be any overflow parking with 58 parking spaces. I think we would be hard-pressed to fill all those parking spaces at times, so. I just want to make sure that we activate this park for the neighborhood to make it safer. The more people we get to that park, I know that's not what everybody wants, but the more people we have going through that park day and night, less attractive it is for the bad guys. And that's really how this all started, is we wanted to, we had a lot of complaints from neighbors. I'm not sure if it's the people sitting here or not, but, you know, we're just trying to make the improvements, and it is kind of stunning to find out that there hasn't been anything done since 1980. And so I do think something needs to be done. I'm definitely in favor of the tot lots and upgrades to the bathrooms, all those things are givens, I think. Improved disabled pedestrian access, new site furnishings, you know, all that, the shade structures, I think are important as well. So that's all I've got.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you. Just to go back to the cost of the trails and things, the answer to your question is yes. A couple of people in the neighborhood who want this bad enough have been searching out for grant monies to do these things. And my understanding is that there had been three grants that had been identified by one of the community members, and one was for the riparian area to become an educational area where the grant money would come in. And actually, my understanding is that they would also, there's a group of people or this organization that comes in and helps you do that, working in tandem with the city oversight. So that's something that has to be a conversation, but there has been a grant... And actual, my understanding is that they would also, there's a group of people or this organization that comes in and helps you do that, working in tandem with the city oversight. So that's something that has to be a conversation, but there has been a grant identified that they're going, they want to apply for once this part of the process is done, and we decided that's what we're going to do. The second one, and I meant to mention this a minute ago, was for the sensory play area and sensory garden area. There has been a grant identified that could be used for that if the grant is awarded. And again, we have a community member who has identified that and should be contacting you or working with you to get that done, to make sure we get the application in once this part of, you know, once it's approved through this process. And then there was a third grant that had been discussed and identified that we could use for this park. And I apologize at slipping my mind, but the point of it is, that's how motivated this neighborhood is and how these community members are, that they're willing to do the legwork and give us the information so that we, as a city, can pursue these things. So that's out there. And then when we talk about the upgrade to the bathroom, when you're looking at the bathroom, there are two walls that protrude out from the actual structure. And my understanding in conversations with the community members is that it's between those two walls where people can hide, or even on the side of it hide because of that wall, that some nefarious activity can happen. It's a very old building. It was built way back in 80-something. So I don't know what the purpose of those just two protruding walls are, what the purpose of them are, but is that one of the things that we're going to be talking about? Because I'd like to see that building not have places to hide. I'd like to see those walls come down.
We can certainly look at removing those. The existing walls that you're mentioning are for privacy. That allows you to leave the doors open for ventilation and access without having a direct visual to the interior of the bathroom. But there may be other solutions that we could look at other than those.
If we could, look at the different design, if we can just take those off or, you know, do something with different doors or add a window or something. A very small window that nobody can climb through. But, so that would be, yeah, that would be it. So are you looking for a motion or are you looking for consensus?
There's a motion on the table from Councilman Franklin, but I don't believe there's been a second.
I seconded it, I didn't offer it.
I would offer that motion. So we can read, the motion again would be to include the elements of the design as the conceptual plan is presented, taking out the off-leash dog area, noting, when you keep calling it a dog park, as has been done tonight, that becomes the identity of this area. It becomes a dog park, not Bub Williamson Park. So taking that out, and then including all of the other amenities in your concept, understanding that some of these might be contingent on the monies that are available to do this. Is that enough of a motion?
Councilwoman?
Yes, sir.
I wanted a second one that did not include the loop trail.
The loop trail?
If we can find the money for that through a grant or through a Phase 2 of this project, I think that'd be great, but I think right now we've got...
Well, that's why I said contingent upon finding the monies to do it.
Very good. So you'd call that a, can we, can we, kind of consensus that we agree to do that if we can find the money, but just to get a formal thing? Is that, are you all right with that?
Well, that's why I put in there, to do it if we can find the money.
What we would look for is clarification on whether or not you would like the next iteration of the conceptual plan to include that loop trail, which just adds more to the design work done in the contract we currently have underway. It is not on the existing concept plan, so even if you were to just remove a portion, this would be adding a new element to the concept. So while the construction of it may be contingent on funding, there is also an element of modifying the contract to include additional elements, which this would be one of.
I'm okay with doing that, because I think that, I think it's important to include it and to have it in the design, even if we're not able to do it straight away. But I also think that, I do believe that there is grant money out there that can help us with this, and I will be as aggressive in pursuing that as anybody. So I would like to still see that in there, but contingent on whether we get funding to do it. But just so that it's identified in the beginning that that's something that we want to try to do, that we want to do. Did that answer your question? Yes?
Yes, and I did want to let the council know that by pulling in that riparian area to the larger project, there are possible cost ramifications that it would then kick the entire project up to a different level of environmental review.
Yeah, that was my concern and why I didn't want a second emotion with that included in it.
Even higher review than having the dog area there and requiring us to do water treatment and storm drainage?
Correct, and the reason being is, a couple of things they look at are, is the square footage of impervious area touching, but then another threshold limit is, are you encroaching into areas that have not already been disturbed? So in the current design, it is all taking place within the existing footprint of the park. And so by venturing outside of that existing footprint, it does bring it to a different environmental review level.
Okay, well, then I'm okay with not including it at this point, but I do think that we should look at that, and it should be included at some point, or at least have us, I'm sorry? You were saying?
I was saying we can allow great fine elementary.
So I will take it out of my motion at this point, because I want to get started on this process, and I think what we have right now is good, and we're not having the dog area in it. But I do think that having the trails and having that is important to the park and to the community. So I would like us to continue to pursue that in whatever manner that we need to. Does that make sense?
And John, you second that?
Can I ask one clarification in terms of the Huff Street? Are you proposing that the Huff Street access be closed to vehicular, pedestrian, or both?
I would say vehicular, because I do hear from constituents who live over there to the neighbors, not the ones on Huff Street themselves, but neighbors who live on the street coming into Huff or the side streets. And they do talk about the fact that they don't utilize the park because they have to drive or walk a long way to go all the way around it. And I do think it is a neighborhood park, and we should allow the access to all of the neighborhood in that area. So I'm, Emma, I want to say open it to pedestrian traffic, but not vehicular. I just really would hate to see that cul-de-sac become a parking lot, and I don't know how we would address that.
Well, one possibility would be if you install the pedestrian gate, you know, it is a gate, you can close it and lock it in the future if, in the future, there are issues on Huff Street that we want to resolve.
Can I ask a question? What if we were to put a code lock on it or make it a key lock and make up 100 copies and distribute them to 100 households or however many it is? No, I'm serious. You sell the house, pass the key on to the next owner. That way the VHB don't have a copy of the key. Very unlikely that the drug dealers are going to acquire a copy of it, because you're not going to give it to them, right? So, I don't know, is that, seems to me like it's technically feasible, I don't know if...
Something like that would get out of control. We have a hard enough time with just nonprofits daisy chaining our gates, and then all of a sudden it, five different locks get on there. I do have one question for Councilwoman Rigby, because she's making the motion. Did you want to address hours of operation? And while that sounds like an operational issue, actually, from a design perspective, if the hours were till 8:00 at night, let's just say, even during the winter hours, that would affect lighting and other amenities on the site that we would have to account for. So I didn't know if you wanted to clarify hours of operation in the motion as well.
Listening to the community, listening to all the comments about it, I'm good with dusk, or dawn to dusk, especially if it's not going to have the dog area, there's no reason to light it up for an hour or two after sunset for people to walk their dogs. So I, my motion, I would include dawn to dusk.
You wouldn't go to at least 7:00 on the times of the year when it's...
Why? I mean...
Well, because, I mean, during the winter, there's probably still enough light out to be safe in the park until 7:00. I mean, I guess it depends on how you define dusk, but, you know what, I'm okay with it, because really it gives more discretion to the sheriff's department. So I'm okay with that.
Okay, dawn to dusk.
And which way are we going on Huff?
Pedestrian.
Open for pedestrian.
Open for pedestrian. And then, as Tony Winnie said, that if there are issues, we can close it again like it is now. You know, if we have identified problems with people parking there or too much traffic on the cul-de-sac. So I'm good with that.
And your second, yours?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Councilmember Green?
My only concern was the pedestrian access, which you addressed. I support that. The hours are my concern. I was thinking 8:00 would be acceptable. I mean, people normally get off work 5:00, 5:30, they live in San Diego, they don't get home till almost 6:30 or 7:00. They want to take their kids to the park for an hour before bedtime, you know? Like, I have four kids, you know, people playing in a park till 8:00 isn't a big deal. And 8:00 isn't like a late night. If somebody's there up till 8:00, that's cool, you know? 10:00, I get it. 9:00, I get it. But I would think if we did, you know, 8:00 AM to, you know, 8:00 PM or 7:00 AM even till 8:00 PM, that would be acceptable. I mean, the school starts at, you know, I think 7:30, they probably open their gates. By 8:15, they got kids butts in the seats, you know? And I would say that when parents are coming home, that they would want that time to take their kids to the park. So I think if we shut it, you know, at 6:00 every day or whatever we're proposing, even 7:00, that's really not allowing for the entire community, the entire neighborhood per se. So I mean, the only thing I would want to change to that is just say, hey, let's keep it open till 8:00. And if that becomes an issue as policymakers, you know, later on, just like the pedestrian access, we can alter it. But if we're going to try to, you know, make something happen here for the community, you know, get rid of the dog park, you know, do the other stuff, but 8:00, in my opinion, as a guy with four kids, is something that I would like to see, and I would think we'd be able to get support for that from a majority of the community as well. So that's my two cents on that.
I would add to that, because I think about, like Wildwood Park, we have lighting on in there to keep the homeless away, and so when you close it early, that, you know, the security enhancements, it opens it to crime, because who's going to go in there if it's closed to everybody else? And if, I don't know, is there lighting? Are we having lighting in the park?
I think we should have lighting in the park.
I think so, too. And so I'm thinking, if there's lighting, then people will go there till 8 at night or maybe even 9, I would say, you know, families.
I would say...
It's security lighting, not activated lighting. So it's not like enough light that you could do stuff. Am I, because it's the security lighting.
Have you seen Wildwood Park's lighting? It's like major lighting. It lights up the whole park because...
And the lights in Wildwood have been recently installed as in an effort to keep that park secure and safe after hours. As City Manager Johnson indicated, depending on what the council's desire is in terms of the hours of operation, either park lighting that would be used when it is dark would be installed so that people could safely use the park until whatever hours were selected to turn it off, those would be incorporated into the design. If the council's desire is to have this park be open from dawn to dusk, then you would have security lighting and some low-level lighting around some of the, probably the entrances, but you wouldn't have actual lighting that you could use so that it would be safe in the areas to play until the hour, until the park closes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Doesn't sound like the neighbors want that kind of lighting anyway, so no sense paying for a bunch of big lighting if they don't want it. And if we're only going to keep it up until 8:00 anyway, I don't know what the point of putting lights in is. So I'm okay with dusk to dusk, because it gives the sheriff discretion.
Councilmember Aguilera, Deputy Mayor Aguilera is next.
Mr. Green was done yet?
No, I was just, I think 8:00 is kind of a good number, and, you know, if you put an extra light, I mean, there's not a whole lot of space to really light now. We don't have to light a big dog park. We have active passive open turf and a passive open turf space and a couple little tot lots, which I think there's already, you know, some electricity over there somewhere, if I'm not mistaken. But anyways, I would just say, I mean, I understand you don't want light blazing in your house, but if we're shutting them off at 8:00 at night, every night, 8:00 at night, they go off every single night, like, 8:00 at night, they go off. I think that's acceptable, and I think we don't have to light it up like it's a big stadium. We just want to light it up so that a dad taking his kid to the, you know, park to kick the ball around can see the ball going back and forth until 8:00 at night. Maybe that requires one extra light, so, I don't know. That's where I'm at with it.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
So if we are to approve this tonight, to move forward anyways, for the design concept, what happens to that area that's fenced off leash dog area?
One option is to leave it as is. That is currently just a natural grassland area currently. It is fenced in as well, so we could leave it as is.
Another option might be, as I think Councilman Green alluded to, maybe he was joking, but approaching the school district and finding out if they want it for a habitat area for students. Originally, that was school district land. It was given to the city in a swap a number of years ago with multiple properties, but perhaps the school district's interested in it, and if they want to have habitat land for students and research and learning, then maybe that would be an area for them.
Madam Mayor, can we have the design team come up?
Sure.
May I come up, please? We have some questions.
Andrew Reese, again, yes.
What would you say, I mean, how do you design, like, a blank spot?
Oh, it's not. Just to give you guys a little bit of background, it's a fantastic idea about engaging the school district, a wonderful idea about having that as nature conservancy area or a nature area. One of the alternates that the community brought up, because the riparian area is a difficult area, one of the things before we put the dog park here was a nature area for trails and an overlook, where people could come down and look down into the riparian area. So there was already some community desire to have this be more enhanced as a natural area, and not as a passive open space area, but more trails, more nature, more open, and more learning or educational oriented. So it really goes hand in hand with what we're talking about.
You know, I'd be willing to support this if, but if it's at 8:00, there's just no way. I mean, the whole point of this is to activate the park.
You know, you guys also could consider doing dusk to dawn, because it's lighter out in the summertime later than 8:00, and then doing a trial with a later time period in the wintertime to accommodate the kids, so maybe you have...
Yeah, because I mean, it gets dark at 5:00.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's just a suggestion from our point, maybe doing some lighted hours in the wintertime and doing dusk to dawn in the summer.
I would be agreeable to amending my motion to include maybe 7:00 or 8:00 on a trial basis, or to see if there are issues with it, we can come back and revisit it.
Well, let's do 8:00 then. Then we can be unanimous.
Okay, I will say, I will put in my motion for 8:00, but to come, if there are any issues, we will revisit it and we can close the park earlier. So I'm...
Do you have any more questions for me?
I don't.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for a great job, by the way.
Hey, one more real quick question, if I might. Did we add anything else? We only, I only intended to, okay, good, right? All right. Otherwise, it's all as was proposed. We just eliminated some things.
Councilmember Rigby, did you want to say something again?
No, I just wanted to say thank you to the design architect for your input and the work you've done on this, and to the community for being here and speaking to us on this. And I know the hours are an issue. We'll see how it works staying to 8:00. It's not 10:00, it's not 11:00, it's 8:00. So we'll see what happens with that, and if there are any issues, we will just be on top of that, Johnny on the spot. So I want to give you my word on that. So Ms. Valdez, did you get all of that motion?
We haven't.
You haven't? Okay, this...
Yes, I think we have.
The city manager says yes, so thank you.
We understand.
Okay, thank you.
We will call for the question. I see no more speakers. Motion passes unanimously.
So do we need another five-minute break? Are we going to do a five-minute break?
I guess so.
I guess so.
We're leaving off, please.
You're under that. We've got one more public hearing before that. What's the last one? We have three more items. But the minute we get into that habitat, they're going to be all over us. And the Army Corps of Engineers is going to be all over us, trust me. We don't want any part of it. We'll come back if we get the money, we'll come back and do that. But I think for right now, we've got to do something. People are mostly happy with what we did, right? Okay. And you guys ought to give Tony a break. He's really not that bad of a guy. Yeah. Five. Two of them left already. That part of it is a big piece. Come back and do that when we got all of our ducks. And we'll ask the staff, because if Mammy's interested, we'll ask the staff to give us a full understanding of what's involved there. I don't think we had all the information.
Wow.
Yeah, we'll figure it out. Patrick's going to give us more information on what it would take for the trail. Hey, can we table?
We don't afford the trail.
Can we table the last two items until a future, until our next meeting? The two financial items? Do you need them tonight, or can you take them?
Oh, yeah, no, we need them to balance the budget.
You need them?
Yeah. The third quarter report.
What about the capital outlays? Can we punt that until the next meeting?
Just take it. Do you have any questions?
Well, I didn't want to rush through it because it's important. Right. I wanted to spend some time on it, but.
Well, we did it because.
But if you, I mean, if you need it, though.
Report it to the 22nd. We're supposed to get back to you on the 12th.
Right.
With the final.
No, if you can't do it, you can't do it. I get it.
But the third quarter report has to go.
It's fine.
Double time.
It's fine.
Double time.
Okay. Yep. Okay, group, let's go.
Make a motion and keep going.
No, that's only with the public hearing. Not for discussion.
Okay, moving on here. D2, proposed zone change for the southwest corner of Hacienda Drive and La Tortuga. Community Development and Engineering Director John Conley will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for a zone change, a preliminary review of a zone change request. The project location is shown on the overhead. It's two parcels located at the southwest corner of Hacienda Drive and La Tortuga Drive. It's about 5.2 acres in size. It's adjacent to the LA Fitness off of Hacienda and adjacent to the courthouse and jail facility off of La Tortuga. The general plan designation of this property is currently commercial services, and the zoning is C1. Pacifica Companies is a developer that has submitted a preliminary request to develop the site with a self-storage building and a new vehicle storage lot. The proposed use would be consistent with the general plan designation of commercial services, but would require a zone change from C1 to C2. This is the zoning shown above is the existing zoning, and shown below would be the proposed zoning. The lighter pink that surrounds the site is the C1 zone. The purple is a civic activity zone that applies to the courthouse, and the yellow is a multifamily designation that applies to the property to the west. Just for note, the CHP facility is built adjacent to this site on the existing C1 zone property to the south. Zone change requests are at the discretion of the city council. They require a formal recommendation from the planning commission. Since 2016, we've been bringing all preliminary requests for general plan amendments or zone changes before the city council for discussion, before we accept an application. And so staff is requesting direction tonight related to acceptance of an application for the subject's zone change. The applicant, Pacifica Companies, is here and has a presentation that gets into more detail about their proposal, which I'll hand it off to them right now, if that's okay.
Talk right in the microphone so we can hear you, if you would. Maybe it's not on.
How about now?
Now.
Okay. My name is Abby Hawkins. I'm with Pacifica Companies. We are currently doing the Stanton Optical Building, which is over on East Vista Way. And I don't know if you guys are aware, but Pacifica Companies is an investment development company, and we have a variety of different asset classes that we develop: hospitality, retail, senior housing, multifamily, and self-storage. What we like to do and specialize in is difficult sites. It allows us to get very creative and beat out our competition. So one of the sites that I would like to, that we're talking about tonight, is one of those difficult sites. Which one is it? Okay. Okay. So our site that we're talking about tonight is located on Hacienda Drive and La Tortuga. It's located across from LA Fitness and the Vista Detention Center. And it's also right next to the California Highway Patrol. Some of the challenges that we are facing with this particular site, if you take a look at the top corner, well, the one on the right-hand side, about a third of our site is currently within a floodway and a floodplain. And then the southern portion, about a third of our site is located, has a grading challenge of about 50 feet, which gives us about one-third of the site that is actually buildable. Some other challenges with this particular site is that there is a lack of visibility from the creek that runs directly to the north of our site. There's also an access challenge from 78, and not to mention, it is located right next door to the detention center. And there is also an access challenge from Hacienda Drive. Hacienda Drive currently is a one-way right in front of our site, and there is no curb cut, so there's no access from Hacienda. The only access is through La Tortuga. So we have, we visit our site often, the Stanton Optical, and we started noticing that there's lots of new cars that are parked along Vista Village Drive. So when we brought it up with some city council, or sorry, some city members, it was brought to our attention that there is currently some issues with the dealerships not being able to park their new car inventory. So we thought that that was kind of an issue that might need to be addressed, especially if they're considering leaving Vista, and they do generate substantial tax revenue for the city of Vista. So we looked at this as an opportunity to do something impairing with the dealerships and the site that we have. So what we wanted to do is we wanted to meet with city leaders and community leaders about ideas for this site, and we received some very valuable feedback, some of which was that there is a lot of traffic congestion located on La Tortuga and Hacienda Drive. So we would need a very low-impact use because there was a lot of high density that went into this area, and the community was still very scarred from this. Another concern of the community was the lack of green space, and again, the car dealerships potentially leaving Vista. So with that in mind, we proposed doing a just-in-time new car inventory parking for the dealerships to park their new car inventory on the portion of the site that we cannot put a building on. A three-story, three-level storage facility with a green roof, is a low-impact use, as well as a solar panel field, which would make our building a net-zero energy building, as well as a community park located in the back portion with the grade change that we also are unable to develop. So what Pacifica likes to do, it's very important for us to go into communities and gain as much feedback and input and support from the community before we do a project. So what we did is we reached out to some of the community stakeholders to gain their feedback. And some of the feedback that we've received was that there is a lot of traffic congestion along La Tortuga and Hacienda Drive, and that self-storage is a low-traffic-generating impact use. Another concern of theirs was the visibility of the cars. So what they suggested for us to do was to mitigate that visibility by adding a screen wall. And I would say the major, the biggest concern of the community stakeholders was the park. So the park that we had proposed for the back portion of the site, they thought that it was a potential to, I'm sorry, to attract homeless and detention center releases because it used to be, I guess, part of the detention center to take them back home. And now it's, that's not a part of, a part of it. So they were concerned that the park would turn into a hangout area. So with that in mind, we removed the park. Another concern of the community was how we were going to address the cars getting in and out of the site, again, with the congestion. So what we were going to do is limit it to a one-time drop-off and one-time pickup for the dealerships to use. Another concern was the aesthetics of our building. They didn't necessarily match that of the community. So what we did was we addressed two different styles and suggestions for what to do with the aesthetics of the building. So we wanted to include these renderings because people typically have a really negative idea of what self-storage looks like. So what we did was, this is one of the contemporary styles. As you can see, we do more of our buildings to look like office buildings or some sort of office use. They're not that ugly, closed-off, cold-looking buildings that they used to be. So here's a couple more renderings. And then the other suggestion of the style was an early California style. So there's just a few more. So then finally, just to kind of touch on this, the reason why we're proposing self-storage is not only that it is a low-impact use for this difficult site to build on, but it also benefits the small businesses within the community of Vista by providing them immediate access to any extra inventory. This is also good for military families. It gives convenience for military families that are deploying or relocating or just need extra storage, which Vista is made up of a lot of military families. Another particular reason why we thought that this would be a good use for the site is that it provides a buffer zone between different uses, such as detention centers and residential developments. And then another reason why we also propose it is that self-storage is also very good for access-challenge sites. And currently, Pacifica is an owner and operator of five different self-storage facilities within San Diego. And with that being said, I just wanted to see if we could gauge your support about us moving forward with our entitlements and open it up to any questions that you might have.
I have speakers. So do you want, you have one of the questions of her first? Anybody? Well, here's speaker, well, the speakers are, so kind of stay close, and then when we get through them, they have questions. So, okay, so Abby Hawkins? Oh, that, you're Abby, right? Okay, hold on. Then the speakers are Lanell Sorana, followed by Leonard Finkel, followed by Darla Nyren. Nobody's here?
No.
Those three aren't here? Okay, hold on, we'll go. None of them? Okay. Karina Contreras? Is Karina still here?
She's coming.
Oh, wait. What was your name? Give you a name and your address.
I'm Darla Nyren at 1180 La Tortuga.
Okay.
And thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thanks for the opportunity to speak of this project before I get started and like the, I guess, the car wash people. Our community has felt a lot of impact from different developments already with the two different apartment buildings. And one, we don't even know what that's going to do to us yet. We're already over, there's overparked, and there's been a lot of more trash and more crime, it seems like. So I strongly want to ask you to oppose this zoning change. We deserve something that would be, add more value to our community than, you know, I think you talked about an identity, and kind of the identity of our community is a warehouse and a car park. So we deserve something a little better that would be there, that would add value to our residents that live there and our families. And that's basically all I wanted to say, and I did send you an email as well, but I wanted to be here to strongly ask for your no vote.
Okay, thank you. Karina Contreras, followed by Val Brown.
Sorry you have to hear me again. So my name is Karina Contreras. I don't know if I have to state my address again, 1228 Lagan Avenue. And one of the things that's going on right now, just throughout the city, not even just looking at this particular area, there's a lot of development. And it's not that Vistans are against development, it's just a lot getting thrown at them at once. And it's not just because of change. I know that change can be difficult for some individuals, but it's really because we're losing an identity, and we have a lot of Vistans that have been here for such a long time, and really, it's, their voices are being shut out by this kind of like developer's playground that's happening. So again, we're looking at a site in a community that has gone through so much change that, you know, they really have seen negative impacts. So looking at what can add value to this particular community, I think if you tell anybody, well, we're going to park some new cars and have some more storage, I don't think people would agree that that's adding the type of value that's necessary for this community to feel like they're being heard, like they have, they're part of Vista, and that their government is listening to their concerns. You know, I don't have too much to say on it, but this just, this does not look like it's adding any value or creating any kind of identity for this community that they would be proud of. So let's really listen to the people and figure out how we can create long-term value. You know, I don't think it's, I don't think we're going to be losing dealerships. I mean, we're just getting a Honda, and we just gave them a turn lane, so I don't think that it's a big concern that we're going to be losing dealerships because they can't park all of their cars. I don't know if maybe they can manage their inventory a little bit better. But definitely, we don't want to place that on the backs of this community where, you know, if, this meeting has gone on for a long time, so unfortunately, a lot of the speakers have left, but this really does not fit what their idea of being, you know, part of Vista means to them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Val Brown.
Val Brown, Job Hill Drive, Mayor, council members. I'm here on behalf of Vista Point to share our concerns about this proposed zone change. Also would like to say thank you to Abby. think people would agree that that's adding the type of value that's necessary for this community to feel like they're being heard, like they have, they're part of Vista, and that their government is listening to their concerns. You know, I don't have too much to say on it, but this just, this does not look like it's adding any value or creating any kind of identity for this community that they would be proud of. So let's really listen to the people and figure out how we can create long-term value. You know, I don't think it's, I don't think we're going to be losing dealerships. I mean, we're just getting a Honda, and we just gave them a turn lane. So I don't think that it's a big concern that we're going to be losing dealerships because they can't park all of their cars. I don't know if maybe they can manage their inventory a little bit better. But definitely, we don't want to place that on the backs of this community where, you know, if, this meeting has gone on for a long time, so unfortunately, a lot of the speakers have left. But this really does not fit what their idea of being, you know, part of Vista means to them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Val Brown.
Val Brown, Joplin Drive, Mayor, council members. I'm here on behalf of Vista Point to share our concerns about this proposed zone change. Also, I'd like to say thank you to Abby for making time to speak with us. And here are our concerns. I'm hoping that you receive the letter from South Vista Communities that opposes this project, as well as from other people in the neighborhood. I don't know if you got those letters or not. I will echo what Katrina said. Katrina, excuse me, said about it's not adding value to our community. I think you're all well aware that we spent nearly a year and a half fighting to save our neighborhood shopping center, which was demolished to build high-density apartments. We're already seeing effects from the other apartment unit that has been built there, and the other one's not even done yet. So our concern is the loss of the last opportunity to restore some value to our community after losing our commercial shopping center. A vehicle and huge public storage facility located at the north entrance, this is the entrance to our community. The east entrance to our community is now all cars and apartments. It doesn't add value to the character of our community, the scale, and the aesthetics of this project, set-bath, sightlines, landscaping, maintenance of landscaping, which was something that come out. The BMW dealership has trees that have died in front of it that haven't been replaced, so I don't know who to talk to about that. But this is really a scenic area. We're all talking about the detention center and everything else. Buena Vista Creek is across the street from us. This is a wooded street when you drive down the street, and this is not. This is a very large building. Would have been nice to have green space, but we can't even control the homeless and the transient population there right now. So, you know, this is a place that could really support true smart growth. It's a zone for commercial uses that could restore some value we lost when we lost our shopping center. The population increase in the area from the high-density apartments and our improving economy could support true neighborhood-serving commercial. And this site was previously offered as an office space prior to the recession. It was, there was a project up there where they were selling lots. If parking is an issue for new cars, I know the city owns a lot of land around the city, maybe they could work with the dealerships if that's an issue and sell them some property. You know, we did just approve two other storage units. I'm going to specifically ask Councilmembers Aguilera and Franklin. I met with you many times over the Breeze Hill project, and you both looked at me, shook my hand, and said you would do whatever you could to help us, but your hands were tied. Your hands are not tied right now, and I'm asking you to please don't put another, don't create a car wash project. Please. Our neighborhood's been through enough, and we will have to fight this project again. So let's, let's take a minute.
Your time is up.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I've been here since 5:30. Just, can we take the time to have some vision for this piece of property, please? And do something that's right.
We've been here since 5:30, too. So your time's up.
Thank you for considering my request. I appreciate it.
Okay, so back to the council. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you to those of you who are still here. I do know that there were many people who were going to speak to this item that were not able to stay and did leave, but I did see that they were here to begin with. I have a question for you, Mr. Conley.
Councilmember, there's only three that weren't here. There weren't a lot. We had all of them, but three.
Well, there were several people from the community, from the neighborhood, who were here. So I can't speak to how many filled out a card. I just know they were bodies in the seats. It was brought up by the applicant that we have dealerships that want to leave Vista. We have a dealership that wants to leave Vista?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. And I'm assuming, since the BMW and the Ford dealerships are quite successful, from what I understand, they are already parking their cars somewhere sufficiently?
I don't know the answer to that. I know they have some storage needs, and they do have some sites in Vista, but I haven't talked to them specifically about storage.
Ford has the off-site lot on Vista Village, or over by Lowe's. And BMW has a lot that I think they rent right now from SDG&E off of North.
That's correct.
So my point is their storage needs are being met at this point, and they have not contacted the city saying, hey, we're thinking of leaving because we don't have enough storage.
No.
So that has not happened. Because I'm over at the Ford dealership, I have a high-mileage Ford myself, so I spend a lot of time over there, getting to know them very well, and they've never mentioned it. And I do talk to them about stuff going on in the community. So I don't see the need for that, to have a car storage here. And I have to say, this is a neighborhood. This isn't a big commercial park, this isn't the industrial park, this isn't even a main thoroughfare. This is a little, teeny-tiny, one-lane street, Hacienda. And then La Tortuga is actually a residential street that the Highway Patrol planted their little facility at the end of, I mean, next door to houses. And this is a neighborhood that has all, and literally, this neighborhood, this group of streets right here, has been so negatively impacted by Avalon, it's unbelievable. And the negative impact has not been absorbed by the community, as was suggested at the time that that was done, that the neighborhood would absorb it, the city would absorb it. Well, it hasn't done that. Avalon is a nightmare in that community, and it has been so detrimental. And then to have lost our shopping center, where we had a lot of things there, that I used to go to that shopping center every day and do things over there. The hair salon, the nail salon, the stationery store, the restaurant, the pizza place, the subway store, there were a couple of other things over there. That was demolished, and now we have another high-density apartment complex going in over there, which is going to be impacting our neighborhood even more. And as I say all the time, and I've said it earlier tonight, what does this do to enhance this neighborhood? What is it going to do to benefit the neighbors here, the community here? What about this project is going to help this community to thrive? What is it adding to for us to do there? Nothing. I am so sorry. I don't see the value added for our community with this. And I said this the same exact way when I met with this group way back when they first proposed it. And they proposed this, and they proposed a senior facility in another location in town. And I even said, start with that, because this is not going to go over well in this community, and let me tell you why. And I did, and it fell on deaf ears, and I'm sorry to hear that. Our community has been decimated the last few projects that have come into our community. People have left. People, neighbors of 25 years, multiple neighbors of 25 years, have sold their houses and left because of what's happened into, what has happened in our community, in our neighborhood, in Alta Vista, in Vista Point, in Hacienda. And that's really very sad, when this neighborhood is changing so much, and not for the better. We want something added to this community that's going to make it a better neighborhood, a better community, where people want to stay living here, not where people want to leave. I love my neighborhood. I've lived here for over 25 years. I don't want to leave, but I want to see something better there that will benefit us. I want to go shopping somewhere. I want to go sit down and have dinner somewhere in my community. And we're not getting that. I am so incredibly opposed to this, as are the neighbors. This is going to be another negative impact in a small neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood, it's on a one-lane each way. This is not the right place to do this. And I do not see any evidence that our car dealerships have asked for this, or that they have intimated to the city that they're thinking of leaving because they don't have storage. And if they are having storage trouble with their cars, there are other places in the city that we could look, and that we have an amazing staff here that would be willing to work with them and help them find other places in the community. Am I wrong on that?
No.
Thank you. So I am very, very much opposed to this, and I would implore my colleagues on the council to think of what is happening into this neighborhood, and to think, would you want all of these different things happening in your neighborhood down the street from your house, impacting your families? And I would just really implore you to think about this and not approve this project for this neighborhood. Thank you.
As a point of clarification, councilwoman, just so you know, I don't think any of the dealers mentioned that they would be leaving Vista because they don't have storage needs, but I do know that the dealerships have said they wanted storage options, but nobody has said they would leave.
Okay, so trying to sell something, and I appreciate that that's the job.
I'm not trying to sell it.
No, 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 not you, that the applicant, I'm saying, I'm suggesting. But if they are saying that they have storage needs, we have other options that we can look at, and we can work actively with them to find other options in the city, is what I'm suggesting.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, just wanted to talk a little bit about the BMW dealership. I've worked with the past two general managers, and I know that has been an issue. Kevin Hamm, Economic Development Director, if I got his title right, has worked very closely with them to find a space, but it's pretty far away from their business. It's very inconvenient. This would be a lot more convenient. I'm assuming that's probably who would probably take advantage of this, because it's right down the street. So I know that there, that has been an issue for them, and speaking to the general managers and the previous owner, it was definitely an issue in consideration. I think that's been resolved by our staff temporarily, and hopefully that, you know, if this project goes through, you know, they'll be able to take advantage of this. My concern is, I thought the park was a good idea, and I understand what residents, their concerns in that. Have we consulted with the sheriff on that, though? I mean, what do they say about possible homeless issues and, you know, vagrants hanging out there, whatever? I mean, I know we have that problem in the creek right now, just across the way. So I'd like to find out from the sheriff what they have to say about that.
So we can call the captain down, if he's still here, and ask him.
Captain's asleep.
Probably sleeping.
We generally inquire.
I'm not, hey, if I was in the corner over there, I might be sleeping, too.
He wasn't sleeping.
Thank you.
So that is a real possibility, that as folks are released from custody, that they would make their way over there. It's literally right across the street, and it's convenient. So it would actually take extra work to make sure that's not occurring for it to be a park area.
Okay. All right. I know that when the Breeze Hill project was being, well, going through its meetings and that, I know that there was a couple of people that approached me, and was, they were asking if we could turn that area, and actually, the CHP lot into a park. And I said, I think there's other plans by the state for that. So I just know that there's other community members that were requesting a park, so.
Yeah, I just think the close proximity, that presents an issue, potentially.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Green.
All right, so we're asking, we're being asked to change it from C1 to C2?
We're being asked to consider accepting an application.
Got you, okay.
That's the question before you tonight. Do you want us to accept the application or just not go through this process?
All right. And the C1 uses, which we wouldn't have to change it for, would be things like what office buildings and restaurants and...
Correct.
Things like that? Okay. Also, Abby Hawkins, thank you for the optical building, by the way, over here off of Vista Way in Vale Terrace, right? Hallelujah. It's my neck of the woods, and I appreciate that. That is a beautiful building. Have any other developers approached? Like, do we have any other people looking at this? I know it's a really difficult site, and that's what I'm asking. Like, I mean, I understand that a storage doesn't benefit, like, nobody from La Tortuga's going to walk to the storage and be like, hey, awesome storage, thanks for putting that in our area. But have we had anybody approach us that would, you know, like a shopping center? Or have we looked for other people for this site also, I guess, is my question?
Mr. Hamm can probably address that better than I can. He's been working with the broker community.
Madam Mayor, would that be okay for?
Mr. Hamm is awake.
Okay.
And coming up.
Good evening, Mr. Hamm.
Good evening. Yes, I am awake. So we have talked to several developers about that site. There are several challenges in a typical retail site for that specific location. One is visibility, because you really can't see it, and the other is the location being near the courthouse. So it's very difficult to find something there that was for sale for a while. Someone was looking at maybe doing some residential there. We know that's something that wouldn't work. So this was one, when it came to us, we said, you know, it's something that you'd need to talk to the council, and that's why Mr. Conley's bringing it forward today. In talking to both Ford and BMW, they have approached us. We did find the location on North for them, and so we did suggest, in talking to Pacifica, that they talk to Honda, Ford, and BMW to see if there are any needs. So they may have had a more recent conversation with them to see if there are any needs for vehicle storage.
And if I would be allowed, Madam Mayor, would I be able to ask the Pacifica, have they had those conversations with the?
Sure. Have her come up, and you can...
So we have actually reached out to them, unfortunately, until we got a little bit further down. We didn't, they didn't want us to get their hopes up.
Gotcha.
So we wanted to get more of a solid answer about this kind of development before we committed to anything with them.
Gotcha. Thank you. I think the big question we always ask on every development is, what does this do for Vista? I'm into business development. That's one of the big things I want to do as a council member, is bring good businesses to Vista that Vistaans are going to appreciate that we bring to Vista, that do good things for Vista. I do think that there are several sites, you know, that are close. I mean, there's a few buildings over there on East Vista Way that, you know, haven't been used for a really long time. I think when I spoke with the Pacifica people, I actually suggested that side of the freeway as opposed to this side of the freeway, but it didn't go through either. So, you know, at this point in time, hearing from Councilwoman Rigby, who has gone through the wringer in that area, I mean, she is really the front lines of defense, per se, for our council in that area, that being her district, and the amount of, you know, contact that she's had with the community, I think they're all contacting you about it. And I've also seen a lot of information on social media, that it's just not something that the community seems to really want. I mean, I'd really like to have a development that we put in that people are fired up about. That sounds so awesome. I don't know what the perfect development is. The other thing is, I don't know what we can put in this particular site, and that's kind of my concern as well. I know that the community wants to be able to walk somewhere where they have retail. I do think that with the hall of the apartments we put in, I mean, heck, we've put in enough people over there, where they should be able to support some type of retail something or other over there, you know, whether it be a nice restaurant to sit down at or whatever. The parcel is, that's actually buildable, is over an acre, right?
Yes.
The actual usable, because I know you said it was only a percentage of it, so.
Yeah.
You know, I do see that it's low-impact. I do see that it's eco-friendly, which is fantastic. I do see a need for it, but once again, without having people banging down our doors saying, hey, we're, you know, I was under the impression that was a really big need, and it sounds like our staff has worked really hard to kind of solve the need for now. And I would prefer this probably in another area than that particular area.
Councilmember Rigby.
Would you mind putting up the picture of the final concept design from the angle of La Tortuga and Hacienda? It kind of just got glossed over really fast, and wasn't, it wasn't there you go, that one. That's what we would have in our neighborhood, looking at every single day. For a need that has not been identified as urgent, that we have other options in the city that we can use to pacify that need. And I remember when they were talking about the office building, and I remember when they were talking about the medical building there. And it is across the street from LA Fitness, and then you've got the Carl's Jr. and the Kinko's, FedEx, and the whole shopping center over here. And I do know that 2007, 2008, 2009, really bad economic downturn for everybody, including us. And we've come out of it. We're on this side of that, I believe. And I think, again, I am not one to just build anything anywhere because we've got space to do it. I think we need retail, we need some commercial here in our community to replace what we lost, because now we have to go outside of our community to go shopping, even just the most simple things. But I think this area will be identified sooner rather than later for something, because I see the market... I see the market coming back, I see the economy coming back with those types of things. And this is a community that is really hungry for something like that. And it's something that I would absolutely advocate for, and aggressively so. So I just, I, I think it's important for people to just look at this picture and imagine what this would be like for a teeny tiny, small residential neighborhood with houses just on the other side of the highway patrol building and across the street. And as it was mentioned by our speakers and by Councilman Green, with the incredible volume of apartments that we've put in there and are still under construction, I really believe that something else would be viable here in the future. And I'm just saying, share the vision with this community and let's expect something better and believe that something better is there and that will come here, because I do. So I, I really would like for us to not consider this and, and I would, I don't know, do we need a motion to not approve this?
I prefer to have a motion if there's not consensus among all five of the council members on acceptance of the application.
So my, my motion would be in the opposite, to reject this. I would move that we reject this application. I move that we reject this application.
Councilmember Franklin.
I had a couple more questions for Mr. Hamm, if that's alright, Madam Mayor.
Alright. Mr. Hamm.
Definitely awake.
I'm glad you are. My thought processes are slowing down. What's the, do you know much about the commercial vacancy rate there in the properties surrounding the courthouse? I'm aware of at least a few properties, for instance, the Melrose Law Center's, about three major buildings in that development that are way below maximum occupancy. In fact, I think they're down into the 40s, 40% occupied. I guess what I'm saying is, to my knowledge, and I'm asking if you have any better command of this than I do, to my knowledge, the office space surrounding the courthouse is really not anywhere near maximum capacity.
Yeah, I would say the vacancy rate as a whole, in North County and Vista as well, with regard to offices, somewhere around the 15% range, especially when the courthouse moved a lot of their services down south. That removed a lot of that opportunity for those attorneys and like services nearby. And so that's been a challenge in that area, so the vacancy rate has been very high. We have shopped at ICSC and other venues, this space for a number of years. I was thinking back when we actually used a lot of paper to market some of these sites. We had binders when we'd go to some of these trade shows to market this location. In the beginning, it might have been a viable location for office, but it's no longer a viable location for office.
Is the Cohen Group prepared to build a restaurant there?
You know, I've talked to them about several locations, I don't think this is one that they would look at.
You know, and I don't mean to make light of it, I mean, we're, we've lost a lot of our sit-down dining opportunities, just because that's kind of the way the restaurant industry's going. A lot of the small retail operations, I mean, I always look at the Kimco Center where Albertson's is on Melrose, it's way underperforming. There's not enough businesses that are surviving there. They've been working for years to rent some of their vacant spaces and it's a really nice center. The surrounding commercial centers have a great vacancy rate and there's not been desire to come back in and invest. Some, Kimco keeps their center really well, but some of the other neighboring centers, you know, right in that area, really have a lot of deferred maintenance and have not invested heavily. How many years have you been personally involved with working on marketing this property?
Probably 15 years.
Yeah. So, you know, here we are, we, I'm not waiting for boom time, boom time's here. I mean, this is it, it's probably not gonna get a whole lot better than this. Economy's roaring right now and, you know, I, I hope it gets even better than this, I really do, but, you know, I, I don't know that we have any right to expect that necessarily. I, I know the neighbors in this area don't probably want to see anything get built there, but there's not, but there's not a huge volume of correspondence from folks opposing it. You know, I, I guess my question would be, and, and I kind of feel like, I wished on the car wash, I wish we would have put one of those development signs up for the last 18 months and, you know, solicited feedback, may put, put the conceptual design picture up, you know, we've starting to do four foot by four foot signs now. I don't know, put a full color poster up of what the concept is, say developer, give us your best shot. You get one picture and, you know, that's what you have to put up a, a four by eight poster of. And, you know, I, I don't, I don't feel like we have sufficient input on this to oppose I hear some of the opposition, but I'm also looking at this, I mean, if we've been working on marketing this thing for 15 years, the owner of this property has got a right to use it for the thing that's the best and highest use. How many, I mean, it was what I would ask is, there's gotta be some reasonable limit. Whoever the woman is or man is that owns this property, probably not gonna live more than 70 years. What portion of 70 years does that individual have to wait in order to find that best and highest use would be my question. Is 30 years enough, half a lifetime? I mean, it, it's a fair question. If you own a piece of property, you have a right to use it for something productive that doesn't injure your neighbors. And I, I don't think this is an attractive proposal. I've seen the, the landscape plan looks nice, I even like the design of the building. Sight of new cars, particularly when screened and, you know, guarded, doesn't bother me. And I haven't been particularly aggrieved by the sight of these parking lots covered with solar panels. I don't think it's terrible. Wouldn't mind seeing you take the panels that are right along the roadway and put those on top of the building instead of right up to the roadway. Maybe if the panels aren't right up the roadway and there's some trees that are at the roadway, maybe that softens the, the edge of it, because right now you've got that solar panel stuff right along the edge. But I agree, I mean, this is low traffic, low in and out, you know, it's not gonna generate a lot of traffic and I don't think the neighbors want a whole bunch of traffic, so. I, I, I'm, I'm not prepared to oppose the project. I can't support opposing it right now, but I kind of feel like, I, I kind of feel like we should go through a process we didn't go through on the car wash, you know? I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not moved by three people, I got maybe three pieces of correspondence here, that's not enough to tell me that the neighborhood is wholesale opposed to this. And I, and I haven't heard logical, rational reasons for opposing it that are compelling. And so, right now, I remain open-minded to this.
Councilmember AccuLair, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would agree with what you just stated. I have a question. C1 is what it is right now? So I'm looking at our municipal code, we could put a dry cleaning plant there.
That's fairly unlikely, but yeah, there are a number of C1 zone uses that.
So, but I'm looking at car dealership, that's right, or car rental lot, a mortuary, I mean, I don't think we're gonna get that, but I mean, there's a lot of things that could go in there without, I mean, just dealership just came in and bought it and put cars, because the, the big problem is the flooding, right?
Correct.
And that's why they have the cars out front, because if it gets flooded, well, you lose cars.
Can't build a structure there.
You can't have a structure there without doing tons of remediation or whatever, right? So, I mean, that's the other option too, is a car dealership could come in there. So I think you end up with cars there probably regardless. Yeah, I'm not, I, I don't have enough information to oppose this at this point. I like some of the ideas that Councilman Franklin brought up, you know, maybe we can soften the, the, the street view there a little bit and look for trees of some sort to soften it up. But I looked at the, somewhere in the staff report, it said that we're looking at two and a half car trips or something like that, was that per hour or something?
The self-storage use generates a fairly low traffic volume.
Versus 20, was it 25 or 25 times for a restaurant?
They said a, a retail shop would be 25 times and a restaurant could be much more than that.
Okay. So, yeah, it's definitely low impact, so, yeah, I'm not ready to oppose this yet.
Well, I'm gonna jump in here, because I see everybody around again, but, but I would look at that, I know you said it's a neighborhood, but I, I'm looking at, you know, LA Fitness and the jail and the CH, California Highway Patrol across the street and Vista Community Clinic, and then up there, I don't know, there's, was an office building up behind that, so it's like a commercial corridor right there. It isn't like, that's like not a neighborhood, I know there's some houses up behind it, but it's kind of, and the lot's very difficult to develop, but, you know, we, we've been working on it for 15 years and finally we find somebody that comes in that'll do something there, so, you know, and I'm, I'm, I try to be business friendly and, you know, business is coming in, means jobs coming into our city and, anyway, so I, but I'll go with the two Johns and I'm not ready to make a decision, so I'll see what they want to do with that. So, Councilmember Green.
So this property is privately owned?
Yes.
And the guy's been trying to sell it for 15 years?
For a long time.
For a really long time, yeah. You know, one thing that I do, definitely want to do, is respect property rights. You know, I don't know if, you know, you've been looking for something else for 15 years and nobody comes to buy it for 15 years and you look at the traffic, I mean, traffic's a huge problem. You put restaurants in, I think it said 28 trips as opposed to two and a half trips. As far as impact goes on this community, it is a much lower impact than anything else. I think aesthetically, the, the picture that you have up here does look a little bit intimidating, so it's definitely softening the blow, you know, would, would definitely help. You know, I, I don't want to say that I am adamantly as opposed to it, as I was, I love hearing from my council members, thanks for bringing the property perspective into it, because since we don't own this property, you know, if, if I own this and this is my retirement and I want to sell it, you know, and this is the first person that comes that, you know, in 15 years that wants to buy it, and that's gonna be my nest egg, I mean, who are we as a city to tell a private property owner that he can't do that, especially because this doesn't butt right up to somebody's front door. It does butt up to a jail and a Vista Community Clinic and a California Highway Patrol. You know, if you did put a restaurant or something here individually, it would kind of be weird, it's on an island by itself. All the other restaurants, the Carl's Juniors, the, you know, I mean, what do you got, Hawaiian Barbecues over there, Philly Cheese Steaks at Jersey Mike's, I mean, you know, there are a couple shopping centers that are within walking distance, especially from that Avalon project that was a horrible project. There is some really good Thai food over there they can walk to, there, there are some shopping centers within walking distance. So I'd say definitely with some more research, I would be more open to it. I was not completely open to it at the start, but knowing that it's owned by a private property owner, our staff's been working on it for 15 years, that all makes a big difference to me. And also the fact that we've taken the, you know, traffic impact in consideration and the environmental impact in consideration, you know, for me, those are two really big things. So, there's your direction.
Councilmember Rigby.
I just wanted to follow up with something Councilman Franklin said, and that you only heard from three people. I think South Vista Communities represents more than three voices in the community and they did come out in opposition to this project as well. So I, I thought that was important, just to reiterate. But, and it even shows in this picture, if you look to that side of the project, it is butting right up against residential. So it's not an island that's not touching residential, it is touching residential and La Tortuga is a residential street, one block up here at Houses. So I think it is something that we should think about when we, we do something like And I understand private property, I, I'm huge with private property and we've talked about this a lot over the years. But I think commercial, I mean, there's a reason they're coming here asking for us to change something, because it's not what it's zoned to do. So they knew that going into it, that it wasn't zoned to do what they want. Hence, they're here asking us to change something that we already have in place, that we as a community have already determined what we want here. But with the, the shopping center across the way that has the Carl's Jr. and Jersey Mike's and all that, stretch it across the way, bring us some more stuff over there, bring us the little, you know, shops and stuff over there. I'm not, nobody's opposed to having the building, the development here as was suggested. Nobody's opposing development, we're just opposing this. So again, we are looking for something in our neighborhood that will help us, that will enhance us and help our families to thrive, and this is not it. And I don't see an emergent need from our car dealerships to have such a thing. And if there was, I'm assuming that they would have done it themselves instead of wait for some third party to come in and say, hey, I think you need a storage for your cars. I just don't see the need for it here. So I still have a motion on the floor to reject the application.
Was, was no noise, no second here, so, so then it dies, so then.
So what do you think, so what do we do now?
Give us direction.
Give you direction?
On whether you want to accept the application.
Actually, Madam Mayor, if I, if I could again, I, I think, going back to the earlier discussion on the car wash and all kinds of things that we've had in the community, put a stop on this for 60 days and put it, put a sign up, put the picture on it, put it out there for the community to have input. Because once this goes public, once this is, once this is done, because that's how the, how it happens, once this is done and it's out there, that's when the community gets involved. So can we put a notice up and say we're gonna revisit this at a meeting in June? Can, I, I would like to see us do that, is that something we can do, Mr. City Manager?
It's certainly possible.
Okay, do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Yes, I would move that we table this item for 60 days until after some extensive community outreach and notification and signage at the site be done.
Wait, you, you have to come up here and speak, please.
Our due diligence time period runs out for this property on the 23rd, which is why we wanted to get an answer before then.
I'm so sorry to hear that, but I still think the community deserves an opportunity to be heard on this project. So I, I would stick by and give us time for the community to be heard on this and to post notice on this project.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
I was gonna make the motion that we move forward with the project, taking the community feedback that we've heard, eliminating the park and some of the suggestions that Councilman Franklin made.
Is there a second to my motion about putting the notice out to the community?
I'll actually second that motion. I don't think that giving the community more time to look at anything is, you know, ever a bad idea. So, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to your plan by any means, but I definitely do understand the need to get as much community involvement as you can, because once we actually change things, you know, there's no way to really go back, so. I would second that motion, don't know what the support would be for, but I would definitely second the motion for more community input on this. But knowing that, you know, I'm not opposed to your project, I'm just, you know, willing to hear more from the community.
Councilmember Franklin.
I think it does need to be at least 60 days from today, though. And I think they need to have the sign up for 60 days, because then and only then can, you know, and we, have we gotten a letter out on this? Did we get a letter out to 500 feet and?
We did a 500-foot notice for this meeting.
Yeah.
You know what, it'll be longer than 60 days, because 60 days takes us into July You know what? It'll be longer than 60 days, because 60 days takes us into July, and we're done. Not, we're, we're dark in July. We won't be back till August. Does the project go away? Does it go away on the 23rd?
Come up to the microphone.
Yep, up the microphone. Sorry.
So the project actually has already been extended out, because we were meeting with the community members, and so this would be the third extension for the due diligence. And so we will need to cancel the, if, if we can't get a solid answer, then we will most likely have to cancel our contract.
But I have a question for you. So have you put down an EMD on this property?
Has it? Yes.
Are you going, you're going to lose that?
It hasn't gone hard yet.
Uh huh. Okay.
I, I need to check my records on that. I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, I, I just don't see you being in a position where somebody else is rushing to buy this property, given where, well, the conversation we've had about it tonight. So, I mean, been 15 years and all. So, I mean, and I, I suspect the guy that's trying to sell it, or the guy or gal that's trying to sell it probably wants to do this deal too, right?
I would assume so.
Yeah. So, you know, I mean, do you want to go forward with this wishy-washy answer you got in front of you right now, or do you want to get some clarity on this?
I, I would like a solid answer.
I think you would. Yeah. So I think, you know, I mean, I'd like to see a, a four foot by, I mean, let's, if we're going to tell the community, but let's stop, you know, him and haunting around with these nonsense, two foot by two footer nonsense. Let's get up a four, a four foot by eight foot sign with a nice color picture of it. And let's really invite people, and if you can't whip up more than four people to write letters and come down here on a four foot by eight foot sign and give you other 60 days, then I'm going to be for this, because I think that's fair. I mean, I'm willing to listen to community opposition, but there needs to be a, there needs to be a roomful of people here against it. Otherwise, I can't see on just a couple of people being unhappy about it. I, I can't, I want to hear some logical reasons why we're opposed to this. Because I'm, I don't have them in hand. I don't, I don't know what, I mean, I, I think, I think you really could wind up with something in the long run here that you wouldn't like as well as this. So...
We might get something we like better.
So can we call for the vote?
Yes.
How about that, so we can move on tonight?
Which motion are we voting on?
The one on the floor was for the signage and the notice for 60 days.
So, just so I'm clear, this would come back to council in August? Okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to D3. Draft fiscal years 2018, 19, and 2019, 20, capital project budget overview.
And Mayor, I know...
Dr. Conley's going to do it.
I want to say something, Mayor and Council. I know it's late. Unfortunately, these two items are items that need to take place tonight, so we can get direction to be able to prepare both the operating budget as well as the capital budget. So, sorry about the late evening. Go ahead, John.
Do you want the full report on this, or do you have, it was a fairly extensive staff report. You got all the project detail sheets. Are there any specific questions you wanted to ask, or would you like me to give the staff report?
What do you think, group? You want an extensive report, or do you want to, have you looked at it enough that you have a short report?
I'd make a motion to accept the, to accept the item next in order.
Is that a motion?
I second that motion.
Draft CIP.
Any discussion? See none? Please cast your votes. Okay. Councilmember Rigby, did you want to say something?
I, I did, just for the benefit of the people who are still in the room. If you hadn't read it, these are all really important projects you're going to really love us doing in the city. It's redoing the roads, it's infrastructure sidewalks, all of that stuff. And yes, we did read it and have meetings on it. So we're not going to have a report on it, but it's all good stuff.
Just for the council's information, we will be bringing back the final CIP budget at the end of June, and we'll provide some more detailed information at that time.
Councilmember Franklin, did you want to say something?
I was just going to make a motion that we accept the third quarter financial report.
There a second to that?
Second.
Okay.
Yeah.
See no other speakers? See no speakers? Please cast your votes. Okay, we have, oh my gosh, I don't believe he stayed for this.
Move to adjourn without further comments?
No, no, we have a speaker for...
Oh, we do? Oh, okay. Move to adjourn after this public comment.
And oral communication speaker. He's waited all this time. He's going to get his three minutes. So Rick Morse. Rick Morse?
Hello?
Did he go home?
Yes.
Okay, then, you gotta be kidding. Nope.
Move to adjourn?
In that case, okay. Well, I have mayor's comments. I'm trying to hear my comments.
Isn't that a privileged motion?
Okay, with that, I won't give my comments, so we're adjourned. Was that okay?